You want me to start or you want to?
I have to start. Good evening, folks. I'd like to open the planning board meeting for November 3rd, 2025 at 6:30. Our first hearing is six. Continued open public hearing for special permit application for 488 Main Street, map 241, parcel one, scrap metal recycling.
Do you want me to read these?
Oh, we have a thing to read.
Before we begin, welcome everyone to the Leominster Planning Board meeting. This is an official government meeting. We would like to explain the procedure for this meeting before we begin. Public hearings and open public meetings will be open per schedule on the agenda. Once a hearing on or open public meeting is open, the applicant will have an opportunity to make a presentation to the board. Once each applicant has presented, members of the planning board may have questions or comments before we invite members of the audience to comment in regard to any applications. Prior to inviting your comments, however, we will read into the record all written comments from individuals who cannot be present this evening. Do note that all letters that have been received with no return address and no name are not required to be read. However, we do provide copies to the board for them to take into consideration. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the podium and must state their full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a two-minute timeframe. Other than speaking at the podium, members of the public have requested not to speak out during the meeting. To avoid redundancy, if a comment has previously been made by another person, you can simply state that you agree or disagree with what was mentioned. Please only speak if you have a new matter to raise for the board's consideration. All comments are to be made through the chair and are not to be addressed to the applicant directly. If the chair would like further clarification, he will ask the applicant directly to respond. Once all public comments have been noted, applications will be discussed individually by the planning board. The board will then vote to either close or continue each respective public hearing or open public meeting. We will then open our regular planning board meeting. When we reach the applications on the agenda under the regular planning board meeting, the board will then vote on the applications. We would like to remind, ask everyone to ensure that they have silenced their phones. We also would like to again remind everyone this is an official government meeting. We ask that you be respectful.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Yes. You're on, gentlemen.
Yes. So again, for the record, my name is Donald O'Neil. I'm a lawyer in Worcester, and I'm here this evening with Ira Zelitzky from Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling in connection with our request for a special permit for the operation to operate at 488 Main Street. And we were before you last month, as we all recall, and had the follow-up site visit a couple of weeks ago. And we believe that at the site visit, the board would have had the opportunity to see the area of operation and also the existing setup that's in place, including the loading docks and the interior garage door at the back of the building, which would take the majority of the scrap metal would be, enter the building through that location. In front, there are the loading docks with the backend area. We feel that there's plenty of room out there for vehicle maneuvering in terms of getting in and out of the site. And that the board got an opportunity to see the containers that would be positioned outside the building. As we've indicated before, the material would first be brought into the building itself for sorting. And as accumulation develops, then it would be moved after separation to outside containers. The majority of the traffic would be smaller vehicles that would use the garage door basically at the back of the building with larger vehicles using the loading dock in front of the building. We did discuss with the board, and we can, I can ask Mr. Zelitzky to go through it with you again, just in terms of his normal operation. I don't want to necessarily repeat everything unless you want me to go back.
No, I think you're fine.
With that.
Do you have anything else to add to that?
No, I mean, we pretty much covered this last time, and then we covered it once again in specificity at the site visit, how things are going to maneuver and how there's enough room for everything. And we submitted plans for the exact route that everybody's going to take to deliver and get out of there, how we're going to accommodate snow, things like that. I think we've addressed as many of the concerns that were raised that we could and hope that we've made everybody comfortable with the idea.
Okay. I'll open it up to the audience.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, could I just say one other, one other thing? Just to reiterate, I think, because I think there was some confusion last time, and I think it was clarified at the site visit, but the situation with the request from the police department that the vehicles leaving the site do so with a right turn only. And there was, I think there was some confusion from the neighbors on the next street up who didn't understand that that was on the way out, not on the way in.
Right.
And so, and that was, you know, that was something that the police department was suggesting would be a good way to avoid issues with respect to, you know, the way that the road is set up. And we are, have no objection to that type of a condition if the board felt that it was necessary and wanted us to do it. But I think a lot, there was a lot of confusion on that.
There was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one.
Say, Carol.
Letter from a neighbor. This is dated November 3rd from Matthew Damar, 74 River Street in Leominster. The subject of the letter, the subject is the letter of support for Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling LLC, 488 Main Street, Unit E. Dear members of the Leominster Planning Board, my name is Matthew Damar, and I'm the owner of 74 River Street here in Leominster. I am a lifelong resident homeowner and small business owner, and I've had the privilege of watching our city evolve and grow over the years. Leominster has always balanced its strong community values with steady economic and industrial development, and I am proud to see responsible local businesses continue that tradition. I am writing to formally express my support for Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling located at 488 Main Street, Unit E. After learning more about the company and its operations, I believe that it represents a type of business that contributes positively to both our local economy and environmental sustainability. From what I have inquired and understands, the company plans to conduct its business in a responsible, professional, and safety-conscious manner. The recycling and repurposing of metal materials serves an important environmental purpose by reducing landfill waste and encouraging resource efficiency, values that align with the city of Leominster's commitment to environmental stewardship. I also want to note that I do not believe this business will create any negative impact in the surrounding area. The property is appropriately zoned for light industrial use, and operations are contained within the facility. Noise levels, traffic volume, and general activity appear to be minimal and well-managed, posing no disruption to neighboring businesses or residential areas. Additionally, Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling maintains a clean and orderly site, which reflects well on the professionalism of its management staff. As a longstanding resident and small business owner, I understand how difficult it can be for local entrepreneurs to grow and succeed. Supporting small, legitimate, and environmentally responsible businesses like Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling is essential to Leominster's continued vitality. Their presence contributes to local employment, promotes recycling initiatives, and supports the city's tax base, all while operating in a respectful and compliant manner. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the planning board to continue supporting and approving the operation of Massachusetts Scrap Metal Recycling LLC at 488 Main Street, Unit E. This business exemplifies this kind of balanced, community-minded growth that benefits both the residents and the city as a whole. Thank you for your time, dedication, and thoughtful consideration of my perspective as a lifelong Leominster resident and local business owner. Sincerely, Matthew Damar, 74 River Street, Leominster. I think that's the only letter.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Do I have anyone else in the audience, or anyone from the audience? Okay, do I have anyone? Last, once more time, do I have anyone in the audience? Last and final, do I have any? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Carrie Nosworthy, 95 Smith Street, Ward 5 City Councilor. I just want to thank everybody for a great sidewalk. It was my first time doing that. I thought we had a great conversation. I guess my only question was, I also wanted to thank the owner, Justin, for being such a gracious business owner, as was already discussed. And to, he let me know tonight he has ordered new lights, because on the site visit, we talked about how that was going into people's houses, and he's already taken care of that. So he's ordered new lights. I'm very appreciative of that. I guess my only question, and I don't know if it's now or later, we also talked a little bit about, you know, fencing, where the dumpsters would be placed, et cetera. So I just wasn't sure when those particulars would be discussed, but thank you so much for listening to the River Street residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Just for the sake of folks, we did have a sidewalk. We found that there was a question that I had because of the overhead lines. The power company does have an easement on that property. And checking further, that there were no encroachments on that easement, the only thing that the requirement they had was they had the right to pass or repass on that property. In essence, what that means, there's no permit structures can be put in there to stop that, which we're not anticipating, or there's nothing planned to do that anyway. So the question on the easement and the power lines were taken care of. I think we had some discussion as far as a possibility, and I think we'll make a request that some evervites, a similar decision, which said similar trees, evergreens, be planted around the boundary of that edge of the property, just to help in shading or help in the environment. Other than that, I think we had a very good discussion. As we had mentioned earlier, there was some discussion about the right turn, and that the right turn will probably require, at the request of the police department, and that is right turn only out of the product, not, you know, not into it. So with that said, anybody else on the board?
Yeah, you know, I have a few things to say. Thank you for your hospitality. I think most of the concerns and problems were addressed on the sidewalk by the people that showed up for the sidewalk, and it was certainly the people that were vocal and opposed to it at the very beginning. And the property owner and the new tenant that is applying for this, they agreed to really minimize any impact at all. The lighting was put in originally because they lost 20 catalytic converters in one evening. And the owner of the building was there, and he thought they went off automatically. So I think we, we had a nice visit. We had a nice talk with everybody. People that were upset about certain things, I think that's why we don't have many people talking tonight. They were made assurances that they would be taken care of, so my advice going forward is just keep doing what you're doing, because I think you got a neighborhood that's concerned and watching, and I think they're happy at this point. Let's keep them happy.
Okay.
Agreed.
Do I have any other comments? Okay, I'm all set then.
And make a motion to close the hearing for the special permit.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing.
Seconded.
Tommy. Any further, any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 635. Continued open public hearing, City Council petition 3-26. Glenn Eden, Executive Director, Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, request to amend zoning ordinance to replace Article 15 accessory apartments with a new Article 15 that complies with recently passed state law and make other changes to implement the new ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I am Joseph Boyle from the MRPC, here representing our executive director and representing the organization as a whole. We are the petitioner of record for this amendment. As your description states, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the legislature in 2024, August 2024, passed legislation creating protected use ADUs by right and requiring communities to treat accessory dwelling units that meet certain standards as by right allowed uses. In response to that, a number of communities, including Leominster, went to work to amend their zoning in order to bring it into line with the state requirement. I want to make it clear, this is not a zoning amendment to deregulate accessory dwelling units in Leominster. The state has already deregulated accessory dwelling units in Leominster and everywhere else. This is a zoning amendment to re-regulate ADUs to the extent that it's, that is allowed under the new law. So you have the proposed amendment before you. There is one outstanding question of policy, which direction the city wants to go in in regards to setbacks.
Right.
Which I believe we need to have a, will be a real conversation. I suggest before that we put that off until the end and see if there's anything else going through this, if there are any other questions or issues, then take on that big one that we know is happy for us.
Very good. Again, just a synopsis. In essence, what this new ordinance does is it allows any single family, actually, any, any home.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any home in the city to add another apartment, I want to say, for lack of another word, okay? Another apartment to their current structure. But that apartment has to be still within the setbacks that we require in our ordinances. So, but there's a caveat there, as Joe mentioned earlier, there seems to be a differential between a dwelling unit that's occupied, I mean, not occupied, a unit that's not occupied, such as a garage, and the setback, and a dwelling that is occupied, the bedroom where that setback would be. So there seems to be some discussion there, whether some, let's say mediation, some changes we have to make in our current ordinances to correct that. But there's a, I'm going to say, the clear, it's not clear from the state exactly what, what to do, let's put it that way. So I think at this point, we, it's sort of, that one's sort of left up to the city on what the setback would be for a accessory dwelling unit that is occupied versus a unoccupied building. Okay? Do I have anyone in the audience that has a question on this that, for us, would like to make a comment?
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
So what if somebody had a garage in back of their house?
Tom, your microphone needs to come down.
If somebody had a garage in back of their house, and it didn't meet setbacks, but it was done 60 years ago, and what if they wanted to do that, is that building grandfathered to the setbacks?
Yes, yes. It's explicit in the law and the regulations that existing accessory structures, garages, sheds, whatnot, are, need to be by right allowed to convert into an accessory dwelling unit. That is, and that includes ones that do not meet the current setbacks.
These are 900 square feet.
Just, that's just existing, correct?
Existing.
Existing.
That is the whole point. That is the whole point of this, of that particular regulation. The classic example is going to be one of those 1920s or 1930s detached garages that were built right up on the sidewalk. They don't meet current front yard setbacks. Yes, existing structures need to be allowed to be converted to an ADU by right, even if they encroach on the setbacks.
How about, how about modification of existing structures?
On the same footprint, yes. They need, yeah, yeah, you need to be allowed to convert those, go, but.
I want to put a dormer on my shed. About my garage, my garage doesn't meet the side setback. I want to put a dormer in front of my apartment's front.
15.
It still qualifies?
Yes, and you could not do something that extends the non-conformity. For example, say yours only, this structure's only four feet off the lot line, you couldn't make it larger so it's two feet off the lot line. You probably couldn't even extend the length along the sideline at which it's only four feet away. That would probably be considered a, an expansion of a non-conformity, too, although that's a bit of a judgment call by the, by the building inspector. It varies a little from city to city, but I think that, that, the point is you can't extend the non-conformity. You can only build on the existing footprint. Your question about a dormer, let's think about heights, okay? If the accessory structure is already at the maximum height, you couldn't put on a dormer that put it above, things like that.
How about if somebody comes in with a plan to build a two-family on the right-sized lot? Can they add a, can they make it a three-family?
Yes. Well, they cannot make it a three-family.
Can they add another apartment onto that two-family?
Yes, they can add a protected use ADU. A protected use ADU meets certain standards, maximum square footage is either 900 square feet or half the size of the existing structure.
Right.
But yes, every principal residential structure, every principal residential building is allowed by right to have one accessory dwelling unit on it.
Which is 900 square feet, one bedroom.
Or, or 50% of the size, whichever is lower.
Okay.
Yes, one of the funny things about this, we, it was, everybody thought it was going to apply to single-family homes, and only single-family homes, and that's what everybody thinks of. But when the regulations got written, they said principal residential building. So technically, one of your converted mills with 86 units on it could add one ADU.
Okay.
To be clear, a one-family, single-family home with an ADU is not a two-family home, and somebody who does that does not have the right to replace what they have with a two-families home.
Another question in regards to that. So you have a single-family home with enough yard to build a separate structure.
Mm-hmm.
That would still be one property, so to sell that property, couldn't sell one house and sell another house.
It's not a condo.
Unless you, I mean, it does not have to be attached. You cannot, they do not have to be attached, they can be detached.
But it's part of the, but it's part of that property.
So you basically have two homes on one property.
Yes, you have two homes on one.
You cannot separate them and sell them separately.
The only, you could not do an A and R and split the lot and sell one as a single-family home and sell the other as a single-family home. Zoning isn't allowed to distinguish between ownership and rental, so somebody could build an ADU, and instead of having it be a rental unit, they make it a condo unit. And so in that sense, they could be sold separately to two, there could be two different, two different owners there. There'd be generally one, generally probably two different owner occupants. That wasn't, that wasn't the vision. But they can't split the lot. It's, and they can't split the lot, the accessory dwelling unit is an accessory. It is not another principal dwelling unit.
So if it was the condo example, like you said, they can't A and R, separate the lots and sell one and not the other?
No, sir.
It's a one sale for both of them. It's still considered one property.
It, the, once again, in a condo situation, you, technically, the way condos work, each owner owns a port, owns a share of the entire property and is given an exclusive use right to one of the units, the one that, when they buy. But technically, all of the condo owners own the condominium in common. So in this weird scenario where somebody builds a condominium ADU and sells it, the owner of the home and the owner of the ADU would in common own the whole property.
So they could, they can't split the lot.
They can't split the lot.
Can't split the lot.
But in commonality.
Mm-hmm.
Condoized.
Condoized, okay.
All, all together.
Right, yep. Okay.
Joe, you gave us two alternatives.
There are, there are actually three. That's getting into the Section 37, the setbacks. When we go into, into that, that portion, I'll lay out exactly what the issues are, exactly what the alternatives I've identified are, and answer questions on that. But yes, there are, you, there are options there, and I really need you to think about which one you want to go with and how hard you think the city should push.
Yeah, one option is you can build up to five feet. I like the other option.
There are a couple of other options, yeah. I figured that one would be, wouldn't be, wouldn't be favored, but I wanted to lay out everything you've got. So are there, so any other questions about what ADUs are, how the law works?
I think one of the problems is this hasn't gone through any of the courts yet.
No, it has not gone through any of the courts yet.
So we don't know there's some interpretation?
That's, that's right. And the town of Townsend really got on the ball, and they passed an ADU amendment in December of 2024. The, they didn't even go into effect until the subsequent February, and the state didn't issue all of its regulations. But they passed theirs very early, and if you remember, unlike cities, towns, when they pass a law, pass a zoning amendment, they have to send it to the AG and get their sign off before it was, before it goes into effect. So I was eagerly waiting and was hoping to use, because none of it has been before the court, hoping to use the AG reviews of that, and it took forever, and it took forever. They're supposed to have a 90-day review. They generously granted themselves a second, a 90-day extension to the 90-day review, and then at the end of that, they granted themselves another extension. And so I'm afraid that I didn't have their feedback on that before this, before this was considered by the city council. And a couple of things came up based on that, that feedback. So yes, we are, we are flying a little bit blind here, and we still will be on this question about the, about the setbacks, to a certain extent, flying a little blind.
Are we being, well, are we being proactive, or are we, are we going, should we wait for the state to clarify some of this stuff?
I don't think you should. I think that.
Has anyone built one?
I've had people come by my office to sign off on ADUs, probably three.
Anybody in the state built one yet? Anybody in the state built one yet?
Built, I don't actually have built information, but I think that yes.
I mean, the case, the case they're talking about.
They've been coming in since February. And they've been coming in since February, and so I think people have, I know the city of Lowell has received, has issued approximately 20 ADU permits, so I imagine that at least some of those are in existence.
So I, I just have two questions. So the one, the, if you have a separate structure that's already in existence and it's non, and it's nonconformity, they don't need a variance, just as of right?
As of right, you can use an existing structure, accessory structure.
But in your other example, if they wanted to extend a non, an existing nonconforming structure, they could arguably apply for a variance, could they?
Yes, they could apply for a variance. If there was absolutely, yeah, it's really tough.
If it met the, I mean, they could apply, they have to meet the high standard of its criteria.
Yes, that's right, that's right. You cannot, and it's written into this proposed bylaw, cannot extend a nonconformity.
But you can, you can build new construction, but you have to go by setbacks.
Yes, you can build new construction, but you have to go by the setbacks. The remaining issue that I've been talking about is what are those setbacks for ADUs?
And the state hasn't come back with a clarification on that yet?
They haven't been presented with it. There, there's, there's, there's nothing, there hasn't been a mechanism for that. So it was present, so the question was presented to your, to the city of Leominster's city solicitor, and I believe you have your opinion. As you saw, his opinion was that it's not clear, but he thinks they'd go this way. That's, he's clear, there isn't clarity on this. I was in another town and discussing ADUs with their town council, and his take on it was that it's not clear, but he thinks the state would go in the other direction. It's not clear. So it, it, it might, and so the question is, does, should the, should the city try to push a little bit? Push the bounty a little bit to get something, or should it settle a little bit? Are we ready to go into that portion of the discussion, or is there more general ADU, more general ADU questions?
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm ready to talk, because my, to my point about the variances earlier, I, I tend to agree with Attorney Perata, because if we make them more restrictive, I think the argument's going to be, it flies in the face of what the purpose of this is, then they're going to have to apply for a variance, which is, as, as we, as you know, is a, it's a difficult, it's more, it should be more difficult than it is to obtain a variance in, in, in reality than in, in concept. So I think that's probably the challenge that we have. But then, of course, they're going, there's going to be neighbors who are going to be like, I have my own accessory use, and the, and the person I have in there is looking for an additional 30, you know, they want the 50 feet, not the 20 feet. So that'd be kind of interesting if there's two accessory uses who are. Well, I know, well, the example that Justin used was 20, so that the 20 would be more realistic than the 50.
We're talking about setbacks.
Yes. So I, I'd be, you know, I would rather have more, but I don't really want to go through the, the challenges if, if we made it more restrictive.
One small, almost administrative matter. The town of Townsend did not include language in its bylaws for the parking requirement, which providing the exception for within a half mile of a train or bus station. The reason they didn't do that is because the town of Townsend isn't within a half mile of any train or bus stations. Everybody thought it was unnecessary. The Attorney General, when she finally got back to the town, struck their parking requirement for their ADUs on the grounds that it needed to include that exception in case somebody builds a train to Townsend someday. So they went back and in their most recent town meeting, put that language back, put their parking requirement back in with that language. So in pursuing, I was working with them on that, and in pursuing that, discovered that they want certain language. And to sum it up, the version that was submitted, that we submitted, states that it's within half a mile of a train station. I believe it says the Leominster MBTA station or an MR, or a MART bus line. I would, I would request that in your recommendation, whatever it is, you recommend changing that to the more generic language, a bus station or a train or a bus station. So.
Yeah, I think we had had discussion on that before.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because a bus line.
Right.
Can be anywhere.
Right, oh, it's no longer a bus line, by the way.
It's a bus station.
Once upon a time, the state was talking about interpreting that requirement. You can't require a parking space within half mile of a bus station as applying to the entire bus line if it has flag-down service. That is no longer the regulation, they canceled that. It's now, a bus station is a bus station.
So it is a bus station, so like downtown is a bus station? At the, of course, at the train station, there's a bus station?
A fixed bus stop is a bus station? A fixed bus stop?
A fixed bus stop.
Yep.
Like downtown.
Yes.
And, okay.
Okay, so.
Is there a clarification for a fixed bus stop? Because like over, I want to say, I know, one on Route 13, they, they have a bus, the bus stop there where they actually have a, a small enclosure for people to sit in.
Yes, it is my understanding that they're going to apply it to, to that. That counts, at a, the pickup routes for a fixed bus stops.
Right.
But the language the state requires is a train or bus station, and so I recommend you just adopt the language, a train or bus station. And if someday the city and the applicant want to fight over whether they're close to a bus stop and that counts, then.
That's within a half a mile?
Yes, half a mile.
It's a long way.
Frankly, I don't think that this is actually a, on the ground, a big deal here in Leominster. Who's going to build an ADU and not provide it with any parking? Who's going to build, you know?
You have to.
Arlington, they might do that, you know? Alston-Brighton, they might do that, Leominster, no one's going to do that.
It's going to happen, yeah.
Yep. So, okay, with those aside, if you can turn to Amendments 12 and 13. Okay? Leominster's?
Yeah.
No. I'll start with the state. The states.
Which, which page do you want? The last page?
It's Amendments 12 and 13.
Okay, 12 and 13, okay.
The state language about dimensional standards is this. Any requirement considering dimensional standards, such as dimensional setbacks, blah, 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 blah. This is an example of noncompliant language. Any requirement concerning dimensional standards such as dimensional setbacks that are more restrictive than is required for the principal dwelling or a single-family residential dwelling or accessory structure.
Which?
I am reading from the state law.
Oh, from the state law.
From the state regulation that we need, that we need to follow, okay? So I, so, so, so I, I want to, so pay attention to what the state is requiring. What is not allowed, what is noncompliant language? Any requirement concerning dimensional standards such as setbacks that are more restrictive than is required for the principal dwelling or a single-family residential dwelling or accessory structure in the zoning district in which the protected ADU is located, whichever results in more permissive regulation. So we think of three things. A principal structure, principal dwelling unit, a single-family home, or an accessory structure in these zoning districts. Whichever of those has the most permissive regulation, that has to be our setback for the ADUs, okay? So what is, now, among those three, the one that we want to look at is your setbacks for accessory structures.
Right.
Your setbacks for accessory structures are split in two in your existing zoning, okay? You have one setback that applies to accessory structures used for human occupation. That would be an accessory dwelling unit, that would be, somebody just has a bedroom on the upstairs of a barn, okay? She shed, which are becoming more popular. Accessory structures used for human occupation, including ADUs, they are required under your current zoning to meet the dimensional setbacks in the district. Accessory structures that are not used for human habitation, there is a diminished setback. If they're two stories high, they can be within 10 feet, and if they're one story high, they can be within five feet, okay? So, the question is, this three-part test that the, that the law states, we look at three different things and pick the least restrictive one. Your least restrictive one, it is bifurcated. That is not addressed in the law. Your least restrictive setback has two, oof, has two separate sets of setbacks. There's nothing in the law, the regulations, that provides guidance on that. Is the city required to follow the, the least restrictive setback within the least restrictive setback? It doesn't say that explicitly. Is, so basically, the question is, is your bifurcated setback allowed? One for accessory dwelling, one for structures, you know, as it's written now. One for structures used for human habitation and a lesser one for structures not used for human habitation. Ones for human habitation have to meet the dimensional setbacks in the district. Ones not for human habitation have a five slash 10-foot setback. So, this was written, the zoning amendment that was submitted applies the, the dimensional requirements on your dimensional table for that district to ADUs, okay? That might or might not be allowed. This is the question. The state might come back and say, no, I'm allowing your, your accessory structure setback, you have to pick the least restrictive one within that and apply that five-foot setback, and, and apply the, those reduced setbacks to the, of the, those reduced setbacks to ADUs, to these protected use ADUs. On your question earlier about, does it bring it down to five, that means five feet? I'm pretty confident, I'm strongly confident that the five feet, if it's one story, 10 feet if it's two stories, that that would hold up. But, well, let me say this, if they allow you to use your.
Well, five feet.
Yeah, if they require you to use the, those reduced setbacks that are currently applied only to structures not used for human habitation, I'm pretty sure they'd still say that the five and 10 is okay.
So the five and 10 are the least restrictive?
Five, yes, yes, five and 10 are the least restrictive. By one reading, five is the least restrictive.
Yeah.
Okay? But I, I, I'm pretty sure that's not the reading they'd go for. But what I am worried about.
Yeah, because we've had, you know, on the other end of that is one of the reasons that we go to at least 10, because you're figuring 10 and 10, if you've got two pieces of property, is for safety in fire apparatus and things like that to get around a home. So especially in your, you know, in most of, you know, so that would be, we'd run into a safety issue there.
So I, yes, so the way I see it, you have three options to choose from. The first one is to recommend adoption as it is written and try to make new ADUs meet the dimensional requirements on your zoning table for the district. And your argument there is this, among those three standards that we're required to meet, we're, we're the least restrictive, among those three standards we're required to meet, they're all the same. You have to meet the dimensional requirements for a principal dwelling, for a principal structure. You have to meet the dimensional requirements for a single-family home, and you have to meet the dimensional requirements on the table for a, for an ADU. For an access, for an accessory structure used for human habitation. That's your option one, and you might, the AG might not like that, and you might, you. And, and somebody who gets a, a, a building permit application denied might fight it, might appeal that and fight it in court and say, no, they applied the wrong setback. Your option two is to give in and apply, and recommend that this be amended so that the accessory structures not used for human habitation setbacks apply to these protected use ADUs. That would mean the five-foot setback for one story and 10-foot setback for two stories. That, that's option number two. Option number three would be to get rid of the reduced setbacks for accessory structures entirely. All accessory structure, and make all accessory structures in Leominster, all new accessory structures in Leominster, meet the setbacks on your dimensional table. This would, you know, the downside of that is, that, the upside of that is that it would make all of your ADUs, all of, in newly-built ADUs, meet setbacks on your dimensional table, just like I was instructed to do by the working group and just like, you know, the, the city wanted to do. The downside of that is that you might get sued. The, okay? Applying the.
But that's only new structures, if they have an, an existing structure that's grandfathered.
So, so option one is to try to make your new ADUs meet the dimensional requirements of the table. Option two is to make new ADUs meet this five-foot, 10-foot setback for accessory structures. Option three would be to eliminate the reduced setback for accessory structures entirely. Problem with that, it would reduce the flexibility of your homeowners for where they want to put a shed, and it, on the merits, it actually isn't that important that a shed be 15 feet off a lot line. And the other downside of that, it would make a whole lot of existing homeowners, existing sheds and garages and whatnot, nonconforming. So it really is a, a policy judgment call here.
Does it seem like two is the best way to go?
I would not, well, I would not recommend three. I think that.
No, I don't think so either.
Taking away everybody's ability to build, to push a shed a little closer, I don't think that's the best way to go. Between one and two, boy, it's really a question of how, how important is it to you to keep these things from being five and 10 feet off of the lot line? And how much legal exposure do, do you want to put the city in? Do you, should, do you want the city to? You know, this is something we should try to stand up for and fight for because, because it's this important. You have to, you have to weigh those things. It's ultimately a judgment call that needs to be made by the city council, but it's your, but it's your task tonight to issue that with a recommendation.
Well, yeah, we're making a recommendation to the city council, and they can, they can take that recommendation and they can change it.
Yep.
So, okay.
Well, I can tell you that I would like to start with one and move to two if we have to.
Yeah.
I think that until that's adjudicated in some lawsuit that somebody files, maybe elsewhere, not here in Leominster.
Yeah.
That it's safer for. That it's safer for everybody to start with that and see if that sticks, because I think that's appropriate.
Yep.
You know? There's a big difference between a shed and.
Oh, and a dwelling, yeah.
And most sheds aren't anywhere near a feet and a lit for a bathroom.
Sure. In the interest of transparency and making sure that you have all of the information, making the best, most informed decision you can, there is, you have in front of you the interpretation by the city solicitor. Should this ever, should the situation where somebody challenges ability permit denial ever come up, one of the things they're going to have is that memo from your city solicitor.
Yeah, it's an if, you don't know.
It's an if.
Yeah, I mean, we could write if ourselves for that, too.
If you were a town, and you had to get all of this approved by the attorney general before it could go into effect, I would be much more conservative in urging you to adopt stuff you only know is going to make sure to be approved.
Right.
So that you don't get it struck down. Where you're a city, and it works the other way, you can adopt it, and if somebody wants to fight it, they've got to put in the effort to put in the fight.
Right.
I think that is a relevant consideration.
I think we're already giving a lot when we go to ADUs, and, you know, from what we were before, so, okay.
Now, two, another consideration here, five feet, think of that being your, the lowest possible setback. That's for a single-story ADU. Two properties next to each other, they both build their ADU five feet off the lot line near each other. That does still leave a 10-foot alley between them.
Yeah.
Okay? It's so, they're not, they're not four feet away from each other. A vehicle could, can get between them in an emergency if necessary.
If there's not a fence in.
If there's not, which chances are there would be if someone put them that close.
Probably would be a fence, probably a great big one, too.
Yep, yeah, this is true.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I'll open it up to the audience. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? I'll ask a second time. Do I have any questions or comments from the audience? With that, to the board, do you have any other questions that you want to bring up? Any other questions?
I make a motion to pause the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you. I am going to stick around for the rest of the meeting in case I can be of use.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 6:40. Continued open public meeting for a site plan application for 86 Orchard Hill Drive, MAP 386 Block 4 Lot, Block 4 Lot 1C, multifamily residential development. He knows what to do.
He knows.
I'm not sure what, I, I'll push the wrong button if I push it. Oh, yeah.
Robert, do you have a suggestion?
You got help?
Oh, no, watch out.
There we go.
Our DV expert.
Thanks, Rob.
There we go.
Here you go.
L-A-T-V.
L-A-T to our rescue.
We know where the pass.
No, LTV.
LTV.
Hey, Tom, you ready?
Okay, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Lambert, Managing Director for Wood Partners, here on behalf of the applicant, WP's Acquisitions LLC. I'm here with Matt Von Basie, our civil engineer, Spencer Holland, our attorney, here up front tonight. To start, I just want to thank the board for your involvement and your work on this project to date. It's been a difficult process for everybody, but we appreciate your working through it. As been, as been discussed at length, I just want to remind the board and folks that the project that we have in front of you tonight is an as-of-right project. We are not seeking any waivers or variances. We strongly believe that this is a good project, and we remain excited for our investment in the city of Lemonster. The city and the state are both in need of, are dire need of housing, and the way you do it is by building, and by building projects like this. So, we, we're excited to be bringing this one forward. I want to add that there's been some repeated assertions of, you know, by members of the public, that this project hasn't been thoroughly reviewed. Given the status as an as-of-right project, I want to say that the opposite is true. The project has been vetted fully. I'm going to go through a quick history of what we've been through to get here tonight. Way back in February, we presented an initial version of the project to the city technical review process, that is, all department heads that are pertinent to the project. We took great comments and feedback from that, that meeting, and made revisions to our plan that we submitted to this board in March. This is our fifth time in front of the planning board on this project. The project has been peer-reviewed multiple times, both the site plan and traffic. We diligently responded to the peer reviewers, to comments from the board, have made multiple revisions and changes that have come out of those good discussions, and we're here tonight to show you what we hope is the final version. Most recently, we've made some significant changes that we took direction from this board last time. Matt's going to go through those in a minute in great detail. Just to touch on those at high level, we've removed all the parking and the buildings from the 50-foot buffer, if you will, from the residential zone properties, as was directed by the board at the last hearing. The lone exception being at the back entryway, where there is a small section that is within that 50-foot area, but it does a butt, city-owned property that's undeveloped. We'll talk more about that in a few minutes. I want to point out that the zoning only requires that buildings stay out of that 50-foot buffer. We've taken that a step further, and we've kept all parking, drive aisles, and buildings out of that 50-foot area, just to be clear about that. And then, as a result of those changes, the unit count has gone down from 308 to 294, so a reduction of 14 units from the previous plan. As outlined in an email that I sent to the board last week, we are not proposing to install sidewalks along Harvard Street. Instead, we are proposing to contribute $100,000 to the city to use for a future build if they like, or for other uses. We believe that these changes satisfy the direction that was given to us by this board at the last hearing, and so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt to walk through those changes in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Jim, for the record, Matt Von Basie with Bowler Engineering. Since we last met on October 20th, as Jim noted, the direction we got from the board was to remove everything out of the 50-foot maximum buffer, so we did prepare an updated set of plans and drainage report, and submitted prior to this hearing showing that change. I can run through some of the changes we made to the plane, the plan, just to make that possible. So, as Jim mentioned, there was a 14-unit reduction to 294 units. That reduction occurs here, if you can see my cursor at Building A. That building was, unit type was changed to a smaller building type, which, in using the additional space, we added a parking and a garage space here. The places where there was parking in buildings inside the buffer was largely along this property line here, so we removed the entire row of parking along the side and squeezed in the drive aisles, so we provided a minimum 50-foot buffer here. The other locations were along this western boundary here. Again, we had parking, and if you remember, garage structures at the, at the intersections, which were within the 50-foot buffer, so we removed all of those, that parking and garage structures, too. The reduction in unit count reduces the parking requirement from the, for the development from practical standpoint and under zoning, so under the new unit count, 449 spaces are required under zoning, so in addition to losing the 14 units, we also scaled back the parking to meet the zoning requirement for the number of units proposed. We did make some other, other minor tweaks, but generally, the layout is pretty similar. So, the garage structures, we did adjust the locations here, there, as needed to, to make the updated layout work. We did take these buildings B through E in the center area here, shift them northerly and easterly to the extent possible, just to increase this buffer a little bit more from, from even the 50-foot. We did shift parking and adjusted, I mentioned, the drive aisles here to provide a 50-foot minimum buffer to the building and sidewalks and retaining walls here along the back of Building G, so we have the 50-foot buffer here. And as Jim noted, there is one small location here where the driveway comes off into the cul-de-sac, where we're just within the 50-foot buffer, that's within the, the area of the Lemonster Land Trust parcel, Conservation Land, which is this parcel here that's highlighted I think we showed a similar exhibit at the, at the last hearing. This text is pretty, pretty small, the scale. I'm just showing some of the dimensions from the improvements to the, to the property line. So, here at Building A, the parking and the drive aisle are more than 50 feet away from the property line, the building itself 105 feet away. Along this property line, on the left side of the plan where my cursor is, 58 feet to the proposed garage is 55 feet to the parking, and 140 feet to the proposed building. Along here on the top of the plan, 100 feet to the proposed building, 62 feet to the proposed pavement. And then lastly, along this kind of angled portion here where my cursor is, 92 to 98 feet from, from these buildings respectively, and 51 feet to the, to the parking at the closest location here at the parallel spaces. And lastly, Building, Building G, 50 feet minimum to the sidewalk, that runs along the back of the, of the building, and 58 feet to the building itself. So, again, along this entire area here, 50 feet earns, in a lot of cases, more from, from the property line to those improvements. In addition to the, to these changes, we did make some very minor utility and stormwater tweak, I guess called tweaks, to accommodate the layout, so those utilities are essentially the same, just adjusting for any areas where we adjusted drive aisles. For stormwater, again, I'd say very, very much the same. All the treatment practices are exactly the same, the treatment trains are the same, the bioretention areas, the subsurface areas, all pretty much exactly as proposed. Just 12,000 square feet less impervious under this, this proposal than the previous plan. So, again, less impervious going to those areas, and we did adjust their locations just to hear, to accommodate the layout, but the, the treatment mechanisms and methodology are all exactly the same as, as proposed before. That said, I don't want to be too brief, but I think that generally is the, the updates to the projects. Be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Do we have any questions from the board at this time? Okay, I'll open it up to the audience. Do we have letters?
We have letters.
Several.
Two letters. Chelsea M., October 31st.
From Chelsea Madison, 65 Harvard Street. Dear members of the planning, dear members, dear members of the planning board, my name is Chelsea Madison of 65 Harvard Street. I'm writing in response to the developers' October 31 letter regarding the proposed Orchard Hill Park project and their statement that requiring sidewalks on Harvard Street would exceed the authority of the planning board under the Lemonster zoning ordinance. The two Supreme Court cases I previously referenced make it clear that cities can require reasonable improvements such as sidewalks when approving developments. These rulings establish that, what are known as the essential nexus in rough proportionality tests. They confirm, they confirm that municipalities may impose conditions on a project when there is a direct connection to a legitimate public purpose, and when those conditions are proportional to the impact of the development, even if the Lemonster zoning ordinance were interpreted as limiting that authority. Federal constitutional precedent supersedes any local bylaw. In short, the planning board has every legal right to require sidewalk construction as a condition of approval when public safety and pedestrian access are directly affected by the project. The developer's offer of $100,000 if the city so desires, quote unquote, toward potential future sidewalks is also concerning. That amount would not come close to covering even half the cost of the required sidewalk work, leaving the remainder to fall on Lemonster taxpayers. The phrasing, quote unquote, "if desired," makes the offer appear more like an attempt to make the issue disappear than a genuine contribution to community safety. It raises serious questions about where that money would go, actually go, and whether it would ever be used for sidewalks at all. To be blunt, this is a clear example of corporate greed. Large corporations like this come into our city, profit from massive developments, and then try to pass the cost of public safety back onto residents. For a project of nearly 300 units, which will general, generate millions in profit, contributing $100,000 is a drop in the bucket. If this were true, being done in the spirit of cooperation, they would be funding the full cost of the sidewalk that their own project is making necessary. The developers claim that sidewalks would be too difficult to construct due to hydrants, utilities, or grading is not a valid reason to disregard safety. Every major development faces engineering challenges, and it is the developer's responsibility, not the city's, to resolve those, to solve those issues. Difficulty does not outweigh the importance of protecting the residents of Lemonster. Public safety must come before convenience or profit. If sidewalks are necessary for safe pedestrian access, then the developer must design around those obstacles. That is part of a responsible and professional site planning. Also, the current plans show an access road leading from the development down to Harvard Street, yet there are no sidewalks indicated along the road. This is unacceptable for a project of this scale, especially one that will generate significant pedestrian and vehicular traffic between the complex and Harvard Street. A road connecting to a main city street without sidewalks poses a clear safety hazard for future residents, visitors. future residents, visitors, and anyone walking or biking in the area. If the developers truly care about community safety, sidewalks should be included along every access route connected to this project. Furthermore, the city has a clear precedent for holding developers accountable for infrastructure connected to their projects. When Target and the Orchard Hill Plaza were built, the developers, not the taxpayers, were responsible for constructing the sidewalks and road improvements on Prospect Street. That was the right approach then, and is still the right approach now. The planning board's role is to represent the city, the residents of Leominster, not private developers. What possible downside is there to require a sidewalk that ensures pedestrian safety and connects community? This should be non-negotiable. I urge the board to reject the developers' claims and stand firm in requiring the construction of sidewalks along Harvard Street as a condition of approval. Thank you for your time and continued commitment to protecting our community. Sincerely, Chelsea Madison, 65 Harvard Street.
I'd like to make a few corrections on this. Chelsea, just for your information, and I was here, it was only the intersection of Stagecoach and Prospect Street that was tied into the Orchard Hill Project, and that was because of traffic that we saw at that intersection, because there used to be a right-hand sweep, as we say, and that caused a lot of traffic problems. The sidewalks on Prospect Street were part of another project. I think it was Bridle Cross and Saddle Brad Roads that were built by another developer, where they built a multiple semi, like 1,600 feet of roadway in multiple areas, and they, a trade-off was when the low-impact areas of the interior of the development did not require sidewalks, not as acceptable, where the high-traffic area of Prospect Street did. So, at that point, the engineer, the developer, put those roads on, the sidewalks on Prospect Street. So, it was two different projects. The sidewalks were part of the Bridle Cross roads being put in, and the only, the intersection of Harvard Street, Stagecoach and Prospect, where we moved it from a suite to a T-intersection, and that was because of the traffic impact study that we had done.
Go on, Carol.
That's the only letter I'm going to read, because the next three are from Haley Brady, and she says she's going to speak often tonight, so I don't understand, I don't see the reason why I should read these into the record if she's basically going to repeat herself, so...
Wait a minute, okay, okay.
That's the first line in her email, so I don't know why I'm going to read it, and then she's going to repeat it.
No, no. The other following letters on the different agenda, I...
Go ahead.
You got to come to the podium, Haley.
I don't want to argue about this. If you're here, you're going to have every right to speak on what you wrote in your email, so I don't know why I'm going to read them if you're going to speak anyway.
I will read them after, I'll take consistent. Yes?
Hello, Robert Tossi, 121 Scenic Drive, 30-year Leominster Ward 1 resident and current Ward 1 counselor. I'd like to make a comment on the sidewalks for Harvard Street. I really think they should be considered by this board. It's a very, very dangerous road. It's very narrow. It's very curvy, and the traffic is just getting very, very intense. I'd blown out a few tires myself, driving up the road, passing other cars, and having to pull into the gravel area. So, I would just strongly suggest that you consider sidewalks for Harvard, because where it currently stands, it is unwalkable. You cannot walk that road at all. Thank you.
Chair, can we defer to legal counsel on the matter of sidewalks for a moment?
So, what is the question? Whether sidewalks? So, if the question is whether you can, under site plan review, require sidewalks, the answer is yes, if it's in within the scope of the site plan. So, there's a hard line around that plan, which shows what the site plan is. As a function of site plan review, you can't enforce an applicant to do things off of that site plan the way you might be able to do with a special permit. That's the same opinion that I gave last time.
That has been our understanding all along. Okay, we might be able to require, at the entrance, maybe 50 feet on either side, a sidewalk, but outside of that site plan is, you know, I just say, Mr. Tossi, you know, it's on your shoulders, because I really believe that that's a city council, and I agree. I live on Prospect Street, okay, as most of you know, and that is a very difficult road, and maybe that should be a city project, go out and get the grants from the state. But to tie into this, I think it's outside of our purview of what we can do.
And to be clear, that's not a function of the power of the municipality, it's a function of the limited scope of site plan review, which is a very limited level of oversight that this board has.
Chelsea Madison, 65 Harvard Street. So, to your point earlier, you stated that a developer did have to still install sidewalks, regardless if it was Target and the Orchard Hill Plaza, it was still a developer that put those sidewalks on Prospect Street?
It was a trade-off.
Okay, it was still a developer that put the sidewalks on Prospect Street?
Yeah, he did, but it was a trade-off.
Okay, still a developer.
He did not put in 1,600 feet on, he put 1,600 on Prospect Street.
Because he agreed to it, though, that's different.
Okay, so I just want to add briefly to what was said in the letter just now. So, in the letter from Wood Partners attorney, Brian Falk, he wrote that, quote, "requiring sidewalk installation is beyond the planning board's legal authority," unquote. That simply is, that statement is simply not true. In three other Massachusetts cities and towns, Bolton, Wayland, and Marlborough, this same developer, Wood Partners, was required to include or fund sidewalk and pedestrian improvements as part of their project approvals. In Bolton, in 2022, they were required to build a sidewalk from their site driveway to the existing sidewalk on Main Street, and in Wayland, they had to provide pedestrian connections to nearby streets. And in Marlborough, they funded off-site public improvements tied to pedestrian access near the Assabet River Rail Trail. It is clear that these types of requirements are both legal and common across Massachusetts. The attorney, Brian Falk, also stated, quote, "The city's departments have not requested plans for sidewalk installation on Harvard Street because of the project," unquote. That statement is only true because of the removal of the special permit. When the special permit was removed, the city lost the mechanism to request these sidewalk plans. That does not mean the planning board cannot require them now. That opportunity just has not yet been reinstated. The claim that telephone poles or slopes make sidewalk impossible does not make sense. Prospect Street already has sidewalks where poles run right through them, and it works perfectly fine there. So, if it's possible on Prospect Street, it's possible on Harvard Street. The two United States Supreme Court cases established the legal framework that governs when cities may impose conditions such as sidewalks on development approvals. Together, they created two constitutional tests, the essential nexus test and the rough proportionality test. Sorry. The essential nexus test requires that a condition imposed by a city or town must address a legitimate public concern caused by the project, such as increased vehicular traffic or related safety risk. The rough proportionality test requires that the condition be roughly proportional to the impact of the proposed development, and it cannot be excessive in relation to the burden it created. These federal rulings set the national standard, and Massachusetts courts have consistently upheld the same authority for local planning boards. I don't know what that means.
We're doing a two-minute time.
Would you like me to come back?
It's up to the board, the board can make a decision.
I'll give you a couple more minutes.
In Murray versus Board of Appeals of Barnstable in 2007, Baker versus Planning Board of Framingham in 1999, and DeDario versus Cape Cod Commissions in 2003, the Massachusetts appeals court ruled in favor of local boards, confirming that cities and towns have the authority to require reasonable proportional conditions such as sidewalks or other off-site improvements when they are directly related to the impacts of a project. The proposed sidewalk requirement clearly satisfies both standards. There is a direct and legitimate public safety concern caused by this project, specifically the substantial increase in cars entering and exiting onto Harvard Street, where residents currently walk without safe access. Installing sidewalks is a reasonable, proportionate, mitigated measure directly related to those safety impacts, and therefore, it is legally permissible even if the sidewalks extend beyond the project's exact parcel boundaries. Furthermore, the Department of Public Works and the mayor are not the statutory authorities for imposing or removing site plan conditions. That authority lies solely with the planning board under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A. The attorney's correspondence from KP Law is advisory, not binding, and cannot override established statutory or constitutional precedent. Both the clear public safety risk and the overwhelming community consensus establish a valid nexus between this development and the need for sidewalks, and if this were truly something the planning board lacked the authority to require, the developer would not be offering $100,000 payment in lieu of building them. That offer itself acknowledges the city's right to impose such a condition. Let's be blunt about this.
Okay, we're starting around a little time.
Okay. I will come back up and repeat it again.
I'd like to ask Attorney Parada, who's...
Yeah, like I previously said, what a city or town can do under a certain set of guidelines varies based on what those guidelines are. Federal law. Federal, do you want me to, do you want me to?
I don't want to have any audience. Let him speak. We let you speak.
She made her point, okay? Go ahead. She made her point.
So, in fact, if this board were to apply a standard that weren't in the ordinance, that itself would be a constitutional violation. The Constitution only requires what the, only establishes what the breadth of the municipality's power is. Within that, it's limited to each board by the ordinance, right? So, if the ordinance says that we're here on site plan review, and yes, pedestrian access and pedestrian movement can be a function of site plan review, but it's only as to the actual area for which the site plan is being proposed, or which the application is made. In those other examples you gave, I'd be willing to bet that those were special permit situations, where a board had much more power than they do under site plan. The other thing to add is, certainly, a board can request an applicant to comply with any condition it wants to, but the board can't go outside the power that it has within the scope of whatever regulatory situation we're in. As I've said multiple times since I've been here, we're in site plan review. It's a very limited review, and there's only so many things that the board can do, and the ordinance is what controls what the board can do here.
Spencer Holland, attorney for the applicant. If I could just very briefly add on this issue of these Supreme Court cases, we did take the time to look them up, and they are inapplicable in so many respects, I'm reluctant to pull on the thread too much, but I will just point out, first, yes, they were discretionary permits, they were not site plan approval or those states' equivalents. Secondly, there were eminent domain cases, so they had to do with instances in which the municipality was actually asking the project proponent to convey a portion of the land as part of, again, that discretionary permit. In one case, it was actually the fee in a portion of the land, and the other, it was an easement. Again, this is just scratching the surface of all of the ways in which these cases have no bearing on this case here. And again, I would also just point out, lastly, on this topic, the most relevant Massachusetts governing case on this topic, which was in 2010, it was a decision issued by the Massachusetts Land Court. This decision came out well after those, at least one of those Supreme Court cases. The Land Court was well aware of federal law at the time that it issued its decision, but again, in that case, the Land Court was talking about site plan approval when it made its very specific decision that a permit-granting authority cannot condition site plan approval on some element that's outside of the applicant's control.
The, to make that clear is, the planning board has a set of rules that we have. They are set up in our ordinances. Right or wrong, they are the ordinances that we have to follow, okay? If, in fact, we said, yes, okay, we want sidewalks, the defendant, no, the defendant, the applicant, the defendant, okay, has all the right to say, you know, take us to court, and we would, we would lose, because it's not in our ordinances, okay, for site plan. So, I don't disagree that sidewalks would be great for Harvard Street, but to tie it into this project makes it, under my rules, that I have to deal with, okay? Then, that's what I have to do. But if I go outside of that rule, I'm just as wrong as anybody else, or anybody else on this board. We can't require something that we're not allowed to require. That's my problem today. I have someone else who'd like to speak.
Yeah, Haley Brady, 200 Harvard. The reason you are going to be hearing from me is because I wrote four separate letters, because you have four separate agenda items tonight, all separate. There's things that need to be spoken on, on each and every one of them.
You're speaking on them now.
Okay, well, this is only this agenda item. On this agenda item, you have the right to ask for 30 feet in between uses. Can you, can you ask for the additional 15 feet, so the new residents here don't have to look at the back of the loading docks at Target? You have that right, under this purview, to request that. Please do so. Secondly, maybe the sidewalks aren't in the site plan approval, you know, purview, but they are in the subdivision, so we'll get to that afterwards. But if this applicant is offering you 100 grand towards the cost, they're not doing so because they're nice and they, you have some standing there. Is $100,000 bribe worth a child's life?
I...
I just want to know if the applicant wanted to respond.
I mean, I'm sure I don't need to point this out to the board, but perhaps just for folks attending, mitigation payments, far from being nefarious, are so commonplace in every city and town across the Commonwealth. I mean, the word bribe is, you know, pejorative, to put it politely. They are a totally common part of permitting process. The intent is to contribute towards community concerns that, you know, relate or perceived to relate to a project. It's the cognitive dissonance in saying that the applicant doesn't care about community concerns on the one hand, but then also to attack the applicant for contributing $100,000 that it doesn't need to, towards those very same community concerns, is disheartening, but again, I don't think there's really anything else to add on that point.
Donna Mallett, 58 Sky Lane. Just wanted to revisit, there was a statement that said that the City of Leominster owns the one area where is conservation land that they elected to build within 50 feet of. Can we revisit that, please?
I don't, I don't think it's the City of Leominster, it's the Leominster Land Trust.
Yeah, I don't either, so, exactly. That was what I wanted to address.
It's a conservation group.
Right. So, it's not...
I was on the board, and we acquired properties.
Understood.
Just to clarify.
So, I was wondering if the applicant really knew that that wasn't, in fact, the City of Leominster land, when they erroneously stated that that was why they felt comfortable encroaching in that 50-foot buffer area, when in fact, it's owned by trustees for conservation, and that's the one area that, is that near that industrial road that was built on the back there? Is that, I was looking for that green swath that they're actually going to build within 50 feet of the Land Trust for Conservation intentionally.
No, that's just wetlands up there.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's wetlands.
What are you talking about? This area?
I'm talking about the...
Oh, this green? That's the Land Trust land?
Yep, sure is. Not owned by the City of Leominster. Direct assault, again, on the environment, on conservation land intentionally, ignoring the vice chair's suggestion slash recommendation that 50-foot be all the way around. They elected to take the one spot that needs it the most, and ignored it, and said it was owned by the City of Leominster. That's my point.
Okay, go ahead. Next.
My name is Al Wenning, and I live at 194 Ridgewood Drive, and I've been there since 2001. Sitting in the back, I can see you shaking your head at the $100,000 that's being given up, you know, it seems negligible, it really doesn't seem very, I don't know what the word is, but it doesn't seem like anything that's going to do anything for the city. You know, you're going to squeeze every little dime out of this space that you can with as many units as you can, and... as many units as you can, and I guess the concern is like water, you know, when we have, you know, odd even days watering the lawns, or whatever the case may be, we have water shortages as it is. The utilities, when it comes to any other public utilities that we're going to need to house all these other units, I mean, it's just, it could have probably, I don't know how to say it, but it's not, not my place to say what to do with your property, you own it, but, you know, maybe someone in the government could, could help us with that. And I feel like it's going to impact us. I don't know where you guys live, but I've, I've been there almost 20, 24, 25 years, and it's certainly going to impact any, me and my neighbors and my family up off of Harvard Street, and as you go further north there, you know, any, the traffic getting around U-Haul, that bridge is too small, you know, the on-ramp getting on it through to west, I don't know if you guys have seen it, anyone else here has seen it, you know, like you can't, you can't get around, like coming up on Thanksgiving and Christmas here, it's going to be awful. It's only going to get much worse with all these other units, and you're going to add another road coming into that. It's, it's just, it's going to impact us. Like I said, I don't know where you guys are from, where you live, but, you know, I get it, that saying, you know, you're not in traffic, you are traffic, that's what's going to happen, it's just going to get much worse. Moving around is going to be gridlocked.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks again.
Liz Macarillo, 75 Harvard Street. I wanted to mention that, you know, these, there are four topics tonight, as we know. The next one, about the subdivision application, we're all aware that it includes this parcel. You know, this site plan review should really be paused while that preliminary subdivision application is considered. Anything else is going to get very confusing very fast, and I think we're going to see that tonight as we try to discuss these things without overlapping. To address the plan changes, I've reviewed it as best I can in the short amount of time it's been available to the public. The buffer does help a lot, I'm glad to see it. I did not see that where it's shown everywhere, that it is also called out that all of the existing trees and vegetation will be maintained. I think that should be clearly stated on the plan, so that that is what happens. I also noticed at the perimeter fencing, the six-foot fence that the abutters had previously requested and had been on the plan, is now not on the plan. So they have put the buffer in, now there's no fence. I think that it feels a little retaliatory. There's no reason we can't have both. And this is really, if this is the best protection we can offer abutters, there's no reason to not require both the six-foot fence and the 50-foot perimeter buffer with existing vegetation. The road access, we previously talked in a different meeting, the, the road to nowhere that we have right now, that is going to become access for this plan, it's not included in the acreage. If it had been, we all discussed, it would have been over the 20-acre limit. It's been billed as a public road, it's listed on their plans as a public road. It's currently blocked off from the public. No one is allowed on it. So my question is whether that road's been accepted by the city? Does it meet all of the requirements of a road for the city? If it doesn't, it's not a public way, and it can't be used for anything, including this development.
That was two minutes. If you wanted to continue, it was two minutes.
What was that?
It was two minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, I think the road was built by the city.
The road was built with a state grant, using taxpayer dollars. And it is currently blocked off, but it is included in this plan as access and listed as public. And so, you know, you can discuss this when I'm done with the number of things I'd like to bring up, but that's one of the questions. The revised plan changes some of the impact to the wetlands area, some of that will get picked up by the Conservation Commission, such as the mailroom being moved much closer to the boundary, and right up to the edge of the certified vernal pools. They changed some of the replication areas as well. Again, COMCOM will look at that. The pedestrian walkway is shown as bisecting the two vernal pools on the site. That is not just a wetlands issue, that's a public safety issue. There's shown, what's shown is a five-foot gravel walkway bisecting that area. It's going to land in the back, behind the commercial development, and it's sort of a no-man's-land in the back of that parking lot. There's no visibility for that area, you can't add lighting, it's right next to the wetlands, so there are ordinances against that at least. But that strikes me, if that's your main pedestrian connection between this proposed development, and the Target Shopping Plaza is a five-foot gravel walkway through the vernal pools area, bisecting them, only to land in the back of a parking lot, where no one can see what's going on, that makes no sense. That's a public safety issue. The Harvard Street access road still shows the steep grade that I pointed out in the last meeting, where for the last 300 feet, from the poolhouse to Harvard Street, it has a 30, nearly 30-foot drop and an 8% grade, which only levels out to 4% in the last 50 feet or so. And some of that water at the bottom of that access road, we had previously discussed, will be going into the wetlands area down there. This has not been addressed by their plan revisions. This Harvard Street access road is really going to impact traffic on Harvard Street. As we, I won't rehash how dangerous this road is, I've lived on it for more than 20 years. It's inexplicable why the original Target Plaza did not extend the sidewalks through that intersection and around the corner. The road is extra wide there, there is plenty of space, there is no excuse to not have a sidewalk there. It could certainly connect without impacting any of the wetlands, just by using the surplus road area. But I would like to request that that road be considered as an emergency egress-only road, because even if it is a left-turn-only out, you are going to get a lot of traffic down Harvard Street from people who are returning home to this development, whether or not they take that access drive. It's a lot of, it's a lot of traffic for Harvard Street. I'd like to see it limited, I'd like to see that road as emergency egress-only. That still allows for emergency services vehicles to get in and out as needed, and provide emergency egress, but it would limit the traffic onto Harvard Street, and loop it around through an intersection with a traffic light that can handle it. The other thing I wanted to mention about the new set of plans is that they have a photometric plan at the last sheet, and that needs to be updated based on the new lighting layout. It's not currently current. The sidewalk piece, if we don't ask for some sidewalks on Harvard Street, it's going to crush the residents. We are already having this shoved down our throat, and regardless of how the applicant wants to say that there was plenty of time for public comment, we only became aware of this when you started to see us at meetings. If we had been aware of it earlier, we would have been here earlier, we would have been a more intrinsic part of the process. Part of our concern is safety, and that's not something to sweep under the rug. You have what your abilities are with your ordinances, and I understand that, but you can also have a conversation as individuals who care about people, and who care about children, and maybe want to see some safety improvements in this area. And $100,000 for the city to do whatever it wants is not going to solve this problem. If they really don't have, want to, you know, be told to put in the sidewalks specifically, they could at least do an impact study with a cost estimate and contribute the adequate amount of money, and then the city could pledge to build those sidewalks for us. So this is not an impasse. This is something we can achieve. Thank you.
Do I have someone else?
Hi, John Kane, 265 Harvard. I've been hearing all this stuff about traffic and so forth, and I've lived there pretty much all my life, so I can tell you about the traffic. It is bad, it's getting worse. Sidewalks are absolutely needed, and so forth. But there is another alternative, because it seems to be the problem here is speed. Everybody's speeding on Harvard Street. When I was a kid, we saw more tractors going down that road than we did cars. Now, the cars are going down the road at a rate of 50 to 1, 1 being the tractor, but the thing is, is the cars are doing 60 miles an hour. Okay? So the big problem is speed and traffic and so forth. And I'm surprised, you guys are developers, I'm surprised you're not aware of all this stuff, but I first have a question for you. The driveway, I'm just going to call it a driveway, but the cut-through that goes by the Target Mall, past, down Best Buy, and down, comes out the back, out on Prospect Street, is that a public road?
Yes, it is.
So, I'm sorry, what was that?
No, it's a different road he's talking about.
No, no, the road that, all the trail trucks.
That goes to Pioneer Drive.
The trucks, the trucks come through from.
That's the Pioneer Drive, that's correct.
Oh, that's Pioneer Drive? Okay.
On the other side.
Okay. So, the traffic there is brutal, too. And the speeds are brutal also. So I've seen these things done before, and I'm just surprised that no one, no one, with all these, all this brain power here, no one could come up with any of these solutions. There is a solution. With the, with the, cutting down the speed, and it's going to piss off a lot of people, speed bumps. You can put speed bumps in that you can take out. They make them so you can take them out, so when the winter comes, the plows can plow. But in the meantime, you're going to slow the people down that are coming down that road out of the, out of Target Mall.
That was two minutes.
The people are coming down Harvard Street and so forth, and even down to where you're at.
Uh huh. We've had, I hate to say it, I agree with you on the traffic, I go there as much as everybody else in this area. Okay? And as far as the traffic on Harvard Street, the reason, your question was the Pioneer, Pioneer Drive. That was a concession that was made way back when, when Harvard, when Archer Hill was developed, was to get traffic off of Harvard Street, we connected to, okay, Pioneer Drive in the back. So some of that traffic, and in fact, truck, most of the truck traffic, today does go out through, through Pioneer Drive.
That's turned into a major thoroughway now.
Out to Shelley Road.
Okay, without a doubt. And people don't stop, including the semis that come down out of the parking lot, oh, the light's yellow. Next thing, it's red, the tractor's only, you know, halfway through the lights.
Yeah.
All right? So, speed bumps, speed bumps work. I've been in, I've gone through towns that have them in the towns, going through downtown, okay? I checked about it. You can do, you can do it, you can put them in, you're going to take care of the traffic, you know, traffic won't be, you know, people won't go there.
Okay, number one, these generally can't put speed bumps in. That is definitely something that you could bring up to the city council, we have a number of councilors here, and put in a petition, and for speed bumps. And I, I don't disagree with speed bumps working places, because I've seen it. Okay? So, but for this project, to put speed bumps in, they cannot do that. Okay? Because that's, again, as it was mentioned before, is outside of the, the site plan that we can deal with.
Well.
Now we can make a request to the DBW.
Well, I probably will be making a request for.
That'd be great.
For the Target Mall, because that's insane.
Okay.
Okay?
If you make a request for speed bumps on Harvard Street, I'll sign it.
Okay, good enough. Sounds good. Excellent.
Well, I might be.
Well, hey, yo, yeah, you're right, that's why I said people won't be happy.
Okay.
Because they're going to have to go slow. But that's going to tell them, it's like, hey, you can go this way, but you better slow down. If you don't want to slow down, you could pay the, the repair bill for your car.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Howlett, 33 Sky Lane. Could we go back and address the fence? Because it wasn't mentioned as a tweak to the plans that were submitted.
I'll get a check. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to know about the fence, that it didn't go away.
I don't know. I didn't look to the fence, to tell you the truth, so I don't know. Did it go away, didn't it?
Mr. Chair, yes, it did. So the.
Okay.
Well, the fence was proposed when we were short of the 50 feet.
Right.
In most of the areas. So the board had asked us to look at mitigation, whether that was plantings or fencing, we did that. Now that we went ahead and did the full 50 feet, that wasn't necessary because we have the natural buffer there now.
Right, you got the natural buffer.
So I'm just going to say, if anyone drives down Sky Lane right now, and you look towards the Target Plaza, this is November 3, for the next six months, there's no leaves. You can, you can see the Target Plaza through all the woods, the lights, the tractor trailers, the whole thing. The fence, 35 feet of vegetation, which I appreciate very much, doesn't mitigate the noise, the lights, everything else that still comes with, minus eight apartments, you know, 1,000-plus people living there. So we still need the fence, the privacy fence, fences make good neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
So is it a possibility?
I don't know, we'll, we'll ask them, you just ask them. So, I, they don't have to make, you know, is it a possibility? It is?
It's this board's ability to do that, though, isn't it?
We'll discuss. We'll ask the questions.
Liz Macarillo, 75 Harvard Street. On that appointed clarification, it used to be before the zoning was changed, that the 50-foot buffer was a minimum, and it could go up to 100. And the zoning change, yes, and the zoning changed, I've seen it in writing, and now the 50-foot is a maximum. So it is not too much to ask to add a fence for the neighbors in addition to the 50-foot of trees. Please.
Do I have someone else?
You do.
Okay.
Brenda Moses, 8 Ridgewood Circle. We went to the conservation meeting last week, and they said it had to be continued because they didn't have a plan for you, from you guys, for this project.
No, I think.
They didn't have the rise plan that was provided last week, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. So I know there's a lot of head shaking and laughing going on over here, but this has, again, we didn't hear about this until July. This has consumed a lot of these people. I know it's your duty and privilege, I hope, to have our best interests at heart, but we have pretty much, except for stood on the top of the building and screamed that we don't want this, we don't want this. So I hope that you people recognize this.
David Rollins, 49 Brayburn Circle. I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit, and I would ask for your indulgence as I get down, this is pretty technical stuff, the zoning and how we got here, and I think it's important to get into the weeds. I want to go back to the discussion that I raised last time, which is the relationship between this site plan approval and the subdivision application. There was a comment made that, we don't want to combine them or relate them. They are related, not by me, not by you, but by the simple fact that this parcel of land is in the subdivision. And what I think is people are underestimating what is going on here in terms of the size and scope of this. And I could talk either in the subdivision or here, but I'm talking about the relationship of the two. The simple fact is that this is really phase one, and how do we know that? We know that because there was a zoning, the impetus for the change in zoning came from the Housing Committee. There was a document, if you look at the repository of documents for the Housing Committee, there's a document entitled MU2 Zoning Suggestions from G. LaScotti, 29th August 2024. And in there, you have a list of a bunch of changes, which I'll relate to in a minute. Then 13 days later, on September 11, we have a document here from, again, it's in the repository for the Housing Committee. This came from the Monticentos Regional Planning Commission, and it's a cover letter saying these are the changes, we, we've done an investigation as a Monticentos into MU2 zoning, and these are the changes that we think are important for housing, and it's almost verbatim, almost verbatim, every single suggestion that was asked for by the owner of the property. And there's two very relevant.
That was two minutes. If you wanted to continue, it was two minutes.
Go ahead, we'll go for it.
There's two relevant changes there. One is, there was a restriction on this original zoning that said no more than 1/3 of this site could be used for residential. This site is 120 acres, that limited to 40 acres. The owner asked for that to be removed, so we can speculate from that pretty clearly that he wants to do residential on more than 40 acres. The other change was a change relative to density. He was allowed by right 12.4 acres under the old zoning, per acre, 12.4 units per acre. There was a special permit that allowed 17.5 units per acre by special permit. The change that was recommended is 21.8 units per acre by right. Now, this first project, this first parcel of land of this subdivision is not using the 21.8 density, and that's brought up by a few people. But let's, do you. But let's, we know why. We built the pool, we built the clubhouse, we built the postal room, so we didn't maximize the density that's allowed by right. But you can be rest assured, in this 55-acre subdivision, there's 37 more acres for residential use. No longer restricted by the 40-acre limit. So that's gonna be built out with residential at the 21.8 units per acre. That means another 800 units are allowed by right on that subdivision. Meaning, we're talking now about 1,000 or more units to be going in here. We're not talking about a little bit of traffic impact. We're talking about a major impact to this city and to this neighborhood. So, you have as a right, under the site, uh, the subdivision regulations, to ask for a development impact statement. If you don't ask for a development impact statement on this subdivision, then where would you ask for one? This would, we're talking about the largest multifamily complex in the city of Leominster, by far. And if you don't ask for a site plan, a, 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 um, a development impact statement here, then where would you? You might as well get rid of the law. So having said that, and as I signed before, the details of the development impact statement are very thorough and detailed. That should be done first because that provides you with the details that you need, more than you'll need to make a site plan approval. Now, there's a speculation that they're different people and different owners. Doesn't matter. You're taking them separate, and you're moving one first, and you're delaying one a month, two months, by the time you go through the approval for the development impact statement. It doesn't matter. It's pretty interesting also, on the development impact statement, section 21, uh, I'm sorry, 12.2D, says the planning board requires that a citizen participation component be incorporated into the development impact. And it goes on further. So the neighbors and the impacted people can add to that. That is a crucial document that will talk about lighting, and noise, traffic, schools, whatever you want. It's part of that. That should be done first. Then come back to the site plan and reapproval, and you have the information. And I didn't combine them, they combined them when they put that application in. The only reason not to do it is because we're talking about a one- or two-month delay. To me, that's the biggest insult. These people have, some of these people have lived there 10, 20, 30, 40 years. They have their life savings invested in this neighborhood. They've committed their entire life in Leominster to do that. And we're saying now that we can't wait one or two months? It's wintertime. Is the profit that important for these guys that it trumps the consideration for having a more thorough and detailed report? I suggest not. Briefly, I have a second statement which I disagree with, which is the legal interpretation of why, uh, this statement says here, let me read this. For any project, for any proposed project greater than 20 acres in size, an informational meeting with the city council must be scheduled prior to the filing of the application for site plan approval and our special permit. The ruling was, and I disagree with this ruling, the ruling was that subdivision approval does not require a site plan approval, does not require a special permit, therefore it doesn't apply. That's not what this is saying. What this is, this is a, a, a definition of order. You, if it's bigger than 20 acres, you must go. All projects bigger than 20 acres must go before the city council. After you do that, then you can do B, apply for site plan approval or special permit. It doesn't say that B is, is required for A. In other words, this doesn't read, for any project that requires a site plan approval, or any required, project that requires a special permit that's above 20 acres, to go before the city council. It doesn't say that. It says, for any project greater than 20 acres, it must go before the city council. Then you have to do other things. But it's just a matter of ordering. This project is 55 acres. It's the largest, gonna be the largest multifamily project by a mile in this city. It's gonna destroy the traffic in Ward 1. It's gonna impact these neighbors dramatically. Believe me, a one-month or two-month delay is not a big deal. And we should do that first before we go with the site plan approval. Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Brady, 214 Harvard. Reviewing the packet that I received from you, Elizabeth, thank you for sending that. There's a little letter from Mark Pemmarini, our DPW engineer, I believe. I'd just like to read that into the record, just so everyone's aware of it here. It said, "Good afternoon, Elizabeth." This was dated Friday, October 31st, 1:51 PM. "Good afternoon, Elizabeth. The revised plans for 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive dated October 30th and received this morning, October 31st, have been substantially revised, and we will require more time to review them thoroughly and accurately. Therefore, we will have no comments for you, back to you by Monday afternoon."
We, we did receive comments this, today, November 3rd. They're new comments that weren't in that packet that the board has. That we will read into the record.
How's a citizen supposed to know this?
It came at 2:25 PM today. And it's being presented tonight.
Okay. Could, could you read them into the record, please?
It said, do you want me to read it, or do you wanna read it?
We usually do that at some point.
It says, "Good afternoon, Elizabeth. The Department of Public Work has no further comments on the site plans. Regarding the proposed sidewalk, a new concrete sidewalk with granite curb from Orchard Hill Park Drive to the development would cost approximately $150,000. Any further questions, please give us a call."
You might as well, I mean, we, there's a process to this, so I'll read the rest of it.
Go ahead.
Because it's the department heads, we usually do this at the end, but, um, then there's, um, police, correct, Elizabeth?
Two comments from police.
"I looked over the revised plans and appreciate the added buffer zone. It should help mitigate noise complaints and quality of life issues. I wasn't aware of the sidewalk issue. I feel a minimal, I feel a minimal connecting sidewalk would be a benefit, but we defer to the DPW on that. The police department has no further comments on this." On, um, there's a second, um, from the Operations Division Commander of Leominster Police Department, John Frer. "Everything under the police department purview is satisfied. The sidewalk decision is for the mayor and DPW." Fire. "After reviewing the changes, the fire department has no further comments at this time." Is those all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening. Joseph Boyle, Monticewissus Regional Planning Commission. I wanted to step up and address this question of the development impacts and the offer that the applicants are making. This is very generous zoning you're building under. You've got a, almost 300.
Please speak into the mic.
You've got an almost 300, they, they have an almost 300-unit project. It is appropriate that they offer a, that they, uh, make an offer of mitigation, but it works out to $335 a unit is what their mitigation offer is. This is a very, this is a very nice project that they're producing. What, what are you going to do if they issue a, a, a permit with a condition that you're not, that the pedestrian safety conditions on Harvard Street not be worsened by the project? I think it would be appropriate for the applicant to reconsider the scale of what he is offering for the mitigation. $335 a unit is, not, I, I believe that the project can be plenty viable and plenty profitable with, with a more appropriate mitigation number.
Anita Milliard, 145 Sacramento Drive.
Hey, please speak into the mic, yes, sir.
Anita Milliard, 145 Sacramento Drive.
Thank you.
Um, we've lived in Leominster for 31 years. Um, I have not been following too much of what's been going on. I've just sort of recently gotten involved. So all I really wanna say is, I 100% agree with what everyone is saying here, specifically what Mr. Rollins just said, and I respectfully ask that we get that development impact statement. I am very concerned about what this is gonna do to North Leominster. Um, I'm a big environmentalist, and, and I like to walk, and I like to be outside, and traffic is bad. So I just feel like this is all a rush, and I don't see what this is, how this is helping people like us who have been here for decades, have made North Leominster our home, and I just feel like it's, it's, I can't see the good. I can't see the good, how this is helping any of us. That's it.
Thank you.
Stephen White, 35 Scenic Drive. I'd like to understand what the reservations or hesitancy is on the site development review on the part of the developer. I can assume that's because it's gonna slow things down. It may affect their future development of that whole parcel up there. But, you know, as we've said, this, the impact just from this is gonna be significant. And I know it's being downplayed, well, it's only so many additional minutes at the lights, but then you extrapolate that out to 1,000 units plus up in that area, several thousand people. I sat at the light down at Prospect Street in Maine at 5 o'clock today. I had to wait three cycles of that light to get out because it was all backed up. So another 2,000 people plus living up in that area, it's just gonna be devastating. So I don't understand, you know, they're offering $100,000. Why don't you take that and do a site development of what's the impact of this whole development's gonna be? Or maybe the city needs to pay for it. I don't know. But somehow, it really needs to be done. And it sounds like the way that this parcel's being split up for the advantage of advancing it in pieces, it's just not accounting for the total impact.
That was two minutes.
So, you know, I just, it doesn't, it doesn't add up, except for the fact that the developers, to the advantage of the developer, and not the city, and not the residents.
Okay, thank you. Do I have someone else? Okay. I'll ask a second time. Do I have a second? Second time? Do I have someone else which wishes to speak? A third last time?
Hi there. Sorry, John. Sue Shalafuzef, City Councilor at Large, 25 West Street here in Leominster. I'm just going to agree with what former Ward 1 Councilor David Rollins had to say earlier. A development impact statement is very, very important for the two preliminary subdivisions that are also on the agenda tonight. And you really can't separate them, as he said, because the landowner included this parcel in one of the preliminary subdivisions. So, you know, in looking at the overall impact, this is a mult, this is almost, I don't know, 80 acres or something in total. I don't have the exact number. But it's a huge potential development. So, I would encourage all of you guys to be very thoughtful, very deliberate, and think about, you know, the potential downside, and what could be accomplished by doing a development impact statement. We'd get lots of good quality information, and then could move forward with something that, you know, the neighborhood hopefully could get behind, city council could get behind, and the planning board could get behind. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was, uh, to the board, please?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I, you know, I'm a big proponent of, of families and neighborhoods in Leominster. And I don't see the problem with getting a development impact statement done. I'm not against the project. I just want it, wanna see what, what's going on as well. We need to look at it as a big picture. We're supposed to plan for the future of this city, and we've been real good. I mean, we've been doing this a long time. We've got very, uh, good members here, unlike some of the social media is talking about. And that's another thing. We need to stop being civil with each other. Maybe if we talk more, we'll be able to come out to more commonality and get this thing fixed and over with. Nobody wants it over with more than us. So I would like a couple-month delay on it. I would like to do a sidewalk on it with all the parties and go over these things. And I think that would get away a lot of the animosity that this is a backdoor project or process. And I think it would be good for relationships. That's what I got to say.
We're into talking with the board now. I had asked for three times for people from the audience. I'm sorry. No, you can't, no, you have to sit down. We're into the board now. Okay? I mean, just a, I'd asked three times for people to say something. I gave plenty of pause. Okay, I'm trying, trying to process this. Do I have any other comments?
No, I'm good. Okay. Yeah. Motion to continue the hearing. Back there, there you go. Continue the hearing. So we have more information, development, impact statement, and a sidewalk. It's only one of the two.
We're into discussion on that. Yes, you have a comment?
I do, just in response to, um, the question and the motion about the development impact statement and the timing of this. So, I, I know I mentioned this, um, at the last hearing, so at, at the risk of repeating myself, I do just want to point out again that Wood Partners is here on a site plan application. So it is not the owner of the land subject to the preliminary subdivision plan. It's a prospective buyer of an existing 17-acre lot. So, again, just.
I don't think there would be any reservation with some of the other parties that are involved in this. Have the discussion, because otherwise, I'm not voting for it.
Can we defer to the solicitor and make sure that everything is within our?
Right, go ahead.
Just to be safe?
So, if you're asking for an extension, we've talked about this before.
Yes.
They have to agree to it.
Yes.
You're well past the 90 days. They would argue whether it's called constructively approved, in which case it would be approved without any conditions. As the chair explained, when he opened the hearing on this, this is an as-of-right project. If the board denies the project, and it were appealed, the board would almost certainly lose. And they would get their project without any conditions, potentially, unless the court remanded it back, which sometimes happens. The court may remand it back to the board to consider conditions. The other way conditions work on as-of-right site plan projects, if there's a condition that renders the project in effect undoable, right? Then that's another reason why the court would say, you in essence disapprove the site plan, and you can't do that. Where to draw that line now is impossible. Conditions could also be appealed if it's, the applicant says, well, we can still do the project, but it's simply outside the scope of what you can do, or we don't like the condition because there wasn't a factual basis for it, or something like that. And sometimes conditions, um, get appealed. In that respect, the site plan still gets approved, but conditions might get struck from the site plan. That's a general, I think you all, but I was asked to explain that, and, and that's, I'm telling you, that's the way it works, and, you know, you're free to.
And we've been here, three years. I've been sued many times here. Um, John has been sued. Most of us have been sued many times. But we're trying to do the right thing for the future. And I don't think these gentlemen are gonna have a problem with that, because like I said, I'm not against this project. Um, I just want it to be upfront, so nobody can say anything about anybody else. We can get rid of this. You, you didn't tell this person, you didn't tell this person, you didn't follow this procedure, you did this behind back. There's a lot of this going on. Let's get rid of the doubt. What's two months cost? Not much. I mean, you know, you're not building yet anyway, it's winter. So, I know you'd be doing maybe work and stuff, but I don't see what a little delay is gonna do in asking for that extension. I don't see it as a real big issue. I know the gentleman, I know they're gonna carry this through. So let's, let's do it in public, and let's do it right.
So, before we entertain that motion, can I, I just wanna ask them a couple of questions. So I think two of the major things that I heard tonight, well, number one, that the sidewalks might cost 150,000 as opposed to 100,000. And the fact that the fence removal might not be the greatest thing. Are you guys amenable to the 150,000 in putting the fence back on the property line?
Yes, we would be.
But where does the 150,000, where does the sidewalk stop?
That's what the DPW.
Yeah, you're not, you're not gonna run the sidewalks all the way to Prospect Street.
No.
No.
They gave us a figure, and I'm asking if they're amenable to meeting that figure,
which they said they would. I think it's still in our purview to request the development impact statement on other items that are-
Well- That's what I want to question.
I don't know.
I have a question on the development impact statement.
Well, let's see if they're interested in giving us an extension.
Let, let, let that, Larry.
It's two separate projects.
Separate projects.
Well, that's a matter of opinion. I think it's two separate projects.
They, they, they were submitted to us as separate projects. We have to deal with them. It's, they, they coexist, they're on similar property. They have similar, yes. But at this point, is it came to us as one project. The project we're looking at is a 17-acre project. End of story. Okay? Extended to say it's over 20, yeah, if you add the others. But, but those, they came to us as separate projects. I can't see how I can legally combine them. So I, you know, I can't-
Well, I believe that, I mean, that's your opinion. I don't know the opinion of the other members of the-
But I had, I had a question of our attorney on the, on the impact statement. Is that doable? Is that something that we can require for this 17-acre project? I know we can for the, for the, we do the other roads, but-
Again, go back to, if you look at the ordinance and look what it requires to get a site plan approval, it doesn't list that developmental impact project. So I don't believe you cannot approve this plan based on their unwillingness to do that.
Okay.
Could you add that as a function of a further, in other words, to the extent that one of the subdivisions covers this project, you could certainly allow it as part of that, in my opinion, as part of that preliminary subdivision review, or as part of a definitive subdivision?
So that was-
Again, that's my opinion.
Okay. So that was a clarification that I got.
Just a, when they submit definitive, you can require it?
That's the way I read, that's the way I read the regulations. It, it, it requires it as a preliminary, but the board can waive it.
Even on this proposal?
No.
No, not on this proposal, on the subdivision, on the preliminary subdivision.
On the preliminary subdivision.
Or, the way I read it, it also could be required, required at the definitive stage.
Thank you. I'm still wondering if you'll give us the extension.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so if I could just, yeah, respond squarely. So again, as has been stated many times, many ways, this project is not contingent upon the approval-
I know that.
-or implementation. And so I, just to be clear again, if the owner of the land subject to the preliminary subdivision plan decides, you know what, I've had a change of heart, I don't want to go forward with it, this site plan application is going forward completely unaffected. So for that reason, we would respectfully decline an invitation to extend in order to wait for some speculative impact statement for, you know, a preliminary subdivision plan that we have no control over. It's not part of our application. We're here on a 17-acre lot-
I'm asking if you'll provide an extension so you can have that discussion with the owner, landowner.
Again, we are here on our site plan application, and so respectfully, we would like a decision to be made on its merits.
That's not answering my question. Okay. You are answering my question. You won't extend the timeframe.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Do I have any further discussion?
Excuse me, there's a-
No, no.
Yeah, but it's a factual, it's, but you're-
No, doesn't matter.
The $150,000 is not paying for the full area. Just review the letter and what it meant.
We've had the opening for the hearing. I'm trying to-
I know, if you're basing your decision on something that's factually incorrect, then it's not valid.
Go ahead. What do we stand?
Sidewalk. Can we put it to a sidewalk?
They want it.
That delays it.
They didn't want to continue it.
Oh, they can't, that's right. They don't give us any extension.
Okay.
Yeah?
So, so, okay. Here, here, no further discussion. A motion is ordered to close the hearing. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have one day.
Next meeting.
Okay. We'll be, this will be discussed later on in our heating, meeting. Open public meeting, preliminary subdivision application. Orchard Hill Park Drive extension, proposed road extension map 38, 369, block one lots, 2, 3, and 4, map 386, block 4 lots, 1C, 3, and 5, map 463, lot 11. Do I have a presenter here?
All set for us?
Okay. Are you ready?
All set? There we go.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So just making sure the microphone works. For the record, Chris Ranier from the law firm of Gulston and Storrs, on behalf of LaScotti Development Corp. this evening. I have with me Greg LaScotti and Matt Bombesi to present the preliminary subdivision plan for Orchard Hill Park Drive extension. I just wanted to give a couple opening remarks. I'm going to turn it over to Matt for this approximately 440-foot linear, linear foot roadway. The purpose of this subdivision is to create approximately seven marketable lots within the boundaries of this subdivision application. This also cleans up some lot lines that were affected around some of the takings when Orchard Hill Park Drive extension was laid out and constructed by the city. Mr. LaScotti has tried to market this land as a larger parcels unsuccessfully for years with his broker, and his brokers advised that some smaller lots will facilitate marketing. I know that the land in this subdivision does include the parcel that was just heard for the site plan approval, but I think it's important to realize that a subdivision plan process is really a lot creation process. The actual proposal in front of the, of the board this evening is the 440-foot linear foot subdivision roadway. And there are no other projects proposed on the remaining lots in this proposed subdivision. There's also been some statements made about the development impact statement that I'd like to address. I think it's important to review the entire subdivision regulations in concern with the, the development impact statement. Section 12 talks about the process of when the planning board may require a development impact statement. And what is supposed to happen first procedurally is what has happened here, is the board, is the applicant submits a general statement, and that general, general statement has been presented to the board as part of our, our application. Upon review of that, the board may require a development impact statement. And we would submit to the board that one is, is not required, because no project is proposed on the other lots in this subdivision, other than the Wood Partners project, which has already been subject to rigorous review, as the board has seen over these many months. We can understand the, the purpose of a development impact statement if this was, for example, a 25-lot, single-family subdivision that was in a residential zone and was otherwise allowed as of right. There may be no other review of that project. But in this area of the city, in the mixed-use-two zoning district, almost any zone, almost any development on the future lots in this area will be subject to site plan review, and it'll go through rigorous review as, as recently happened, which can include peer reviews, and can include changes to the project. So I think with that, and also looking at the other materials in the application, which, including Appendix A, in the subdivision regulations talks about that a development impact statement may be required. Again, here, the LaScotti Development Corporation does not have any proposed plans to develop the other lots. So requiring a development impact statement first requires a guess at what may be developed in the future on those lots, and there is no proposed project on those lots at this time. So with that, I want to turn it over to Matt, who can review the, the project that's in front of the board, which is really the limited project of the 440 linear foot subdivision roadway that extends off of the, the road built by the city, Orchard Hill Park Drive extension. With that, Matt?
Good evening. For the record, Matt Bombesi with Boller Engineering. Christian gave a good, good intro. I can highlight the proposed road and location and the preliminary design of it. It's this area cluttered in red here. This is Orchard Hill Park Drive, Pioneer Drive down here. This is the recently constructed extension of Orchard Hill Park Drive. It's off to the right here, behind these lots, the front on Pioneer Drive. It's 440 linear feet and designed with a cul-de-sac turnaround. The proposed roadway has been designed to meet all the dimensional requirements of the, of the subdivision regulations. So as far as pavement width, 28 feet, right-of-way width, sidewalks proposed on both sides of the roadway, vertical granite curbing along the edge of the roadway. It'll have proposed lighting, landscaping for the ordinance, completely by right. Christian had mentioned that the, the plan creates seven marketable lots. All those lots, again, completely compliant with zoning as far as front edge lot area and all the other zoning requirements.
Is that a big hill going up?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, there's quite a bit of topo on the hill as you come up, yep.
What's the grade on that?
On the hill or the road?
On the road.
On, on the road, it is, I believe, 4% at the intersection and no greater than 8% throughout, I'm sorry, 6% on the roadway. The grade on the, the property varies. I'd say portions of it are 3 to 1, portion of it's a little, a little shallower, but it's got a good slope to it coming up. In addition to our, our layout, our preliminary layout, we did provide a preliminary utility and grading plans, and it's a requirement required in a general manner. We did meet the, the proposed grades as required under the subdivision regulations for, at the intersection and along the roadway itself. There is sewer, water, and drainage infrastructure in, in Orchard Hill Park Drive and section. We also did provide a preliminary drainage design for water from this, this roadway to stormwater basins on the, the planned south side of the plan here. As part of a definitive plan, we provide a full drainage report, calculations like we did with the, the previous application. Lastly, I'll just note that there was an ad-rat for this property, for the wetland delineation and the, the road and all work associated with it. Off-grading is completely outside of the 100-foot buffer zone from, from wetlands. That's it. Happy to answer any, any questions folks have.
Okay.
How many acres does that cover?
The, the whole property within the whole limits of the outer is just under 54 acres.
What was that?
For that, eight lots?
No, no, no.
Oh, for the, for those?
For the whole.
I'm talking about these.
These, adjacent to, for this road?
Yep. The lots created in total are 54 lots. They encompass the, the whole area. The road itself is only 44.
Some of the lots are quite large, correct?
Lot 5, 7 and 1/2 acres.
So, so the entire property is, that we're, new lots being created is along the perimeter here. That's the 54 acres. The, the roadway itself is only the-
So it was roadway in these, these, these sections, right? Yeah, that's 54.
54, the whole, the whole outer boundary is 54.
Of just that subdivision?
Correct.
Is the 54 acres just the subdivision? Or is that including the apartment?
It includes that parcel as well. That's part of the preliminary subdivision application, that parcel.
Correct. The, just to quick, I'll get to hang of it soon. Just to clarify, the, Mr. LaScotti, through his affiliates, owns the land in that area. The land has not sold to Wood Partners, and so we thought it prudent to include all of the land holdings of, of Mr. LaScotti in the subdivision plan, so to show a comprehensive view. But it is, so that, that does include the 17 acres for the Wood Partners project that was just reviewed by the, by the board.
Okay.
Well, that would be a better use than 300 apartments. So 54 includes the 17 for the project.
Right.
That's what we're reading, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is like 28? Development impact statement? I'm sorry.
Okay. Do I have any other, do you have any other comments, sir?
I know, Mr. Chair. That's our presentation. Happy to ask, answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll open this up to the audience.
Hi, Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street. I understand under site plan review, you cannot require the applicants to extend if they didn't want to. Totally understandable. Under this, though, Mr. LaScotti does still own the land, and you could just ask him. It's contingent on permitting. If he's willing to, he could withhold the sale to allow for the development impact statement. He's a local guy. He might be, you could just ask him. He's right here. Just-
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other comments on this?
Yeah, how about an answer?
Yeah.
Come on, Rick.
You want an answer?
Come on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can, can we ask for an answer?
The, the land's under contract, and we don't have the ability to extend or change contractual deadlines like that.
Okay.
Dave Rollins, 49 Braverman Circle. I just want to clarify my, I did not say that one of these projects was dependent. They're independent projects. All I said was delay one and get the information on the other one, and then go back to that. We're not making it a relationary thing. And the other tactic that I, I remember using on the city council is very simple. Either I give me time to get the information I need, or I'm not voting for it. You know, that, you can say that in however term you want, but that's how you get an extension if you really want one. In terms of the site, the, the, the development impact statement for this subdivision, let's be clear that this is 50, 55 or 54 acres. He has the ability by right to generate 21.8 units per acre. Take out the 300, the 300 or 294, whatever he is, that leaves 37 acres. That's 800 units by right. This is going to be 1,100, 1,100-unit project. The other subdivision across the road that you're going to talk about is 27 acres. If you don't get a development impact statement on this, and you don't need a whole develop, you don't need to know everything about all the other lots. You have enough with 294 to get a development impact statement. You can say waive the others, or you can say, you know what, the developer handed his suggestions, what got taken verbatim and changed into zoning laws that expand the, the 40-acre limit that he had before to be now full. He got an extra 42 acres to develop residential. You can imply from that, that what you see on lot, on this parcel that we're here now, is going to be replicated on the others. And the density's going to be even higher because there's no pool. There's no clubhouse. It's going to be all units. They're going to share the clubhouse. You're talking another 800 units potential on here. But even if you don't want that, just do a development impact statement for what you have, 300 units. That's enough. And get that. Now you have that information. You can go back and make a more thorough understanding of what the impact is of this site, and use that to make your decision on site plan. I don't understand the downside to that. I, I would ask reconsider closing the hearing, and put up a vote, and, and decide to say, hey, we're not going to close the hearing, and have that discussion, or do whatever. But to allow 1,100 units to be picked off parcel by parcel in this city, and end up with 1,100 units in the most congested ward in the city, and allow it to be done 17.95 acres, 12.5 acres, a little bit at a time, is going to be really, really damaging to these neighbors. They deserve better than that.
Do I have any other?
Liz Macarello, 75 Harvard Street. To the point about this somehow being a very rigorous process, I would just submit that from the point of view of the residents, it has not been. When the zoning was changed, and we lost the special permit process, we lost our ability to really look into the impact of the development that's already proposed for the 75, for the 17 acres. So in order, you know, even if for that project, you don't want to delay it, or we can't delay it, and in order to get the development impact statement on the subdivision first, we should at least get the development impact statement for the 17-acre project that is in front of us, that we do know about, that is not hypo- of us, that we do know about, that is not hypothetical at all. This is our second opportunity to go in and really understand the impact to North Lemonster that this project is going to have, and it will give you information that you can then extrapolate from should another project come down the pipe, you know, miraculously suddenly down the road. You'll have some more tools and some more data at your disposal without funding it from the city coffers. This is something that if we do not require, if we do not require the development impact statement, it would be irresponsible. It's saying that we don't have any ability to look into this any further, and everyone sitting here who has concerns just needs to kind of deal with it. And that's not how this process should go. We welcome the back and forth, we welcome the transparency, we clearly want to be involved in this process, and I want to make it clear that we are not anti-development. We just want the development to be responsible. We understand that the city is growing and that we need housing, and we are not anti-housing, but we don't want things done behind our backs, and we want a very transparent process that really looks into the impacts, that impact all of us every day as we live here. We want to continue to call this place home and be proud of it, and if we are miserable, stuck in traffic, worried about our public safety and our kids walking down the street, if we don't know if our new neighbors are going to get a slot in the school because they don't have space, and how are we going to pay for it, and what's going to happen to our taxes, and oh my God, the noise and the air and the light pollution from these new developments is horrendous, our quality of life really suffers. So this is a tool for all of us that we really need, and we cannot afford to skip. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else which is to make a comment on this project?
Hello, Haley Bish, 219 Harvard Street. I just have to say, highly agree with what Liz Macarella said and what everyone who's come before me has said. I just have a question as to if they were to propose any developments on this preliminary subdivision application, would it be grandfathered in with the current zoning ordinance, or would it change at the time of a site plan approval for, or a site plan application for that development?
Can we defer to the city solicitor?
Whatever ordinance is in effect at that time.
Just an answer.
Are you on it?
Once a preliminary subdivision application is filed, if a definitive plan is filed within seven months, then the zoning in effect when the preliminary plan is filed is what controls. So no, a change would not govern, assuming those steps were met.
Okay.
There's two different subdivision plans. There's a preliminary plan and a definitive plan.
Right, yes.
So, once a preliminary plan is filed, as long as the definitive plan follows within seven months, zoning is frozen as to when the preliminary plan was filed.
So would be as of the zoning where we don't have the special permit currently for MU2?
Correct.
Is there any way to put like an order of conditions on a preliminary subdivision application?
Preliminary subdivision application really doesn't do much. It can be approved, and then the board can deny the definitive plan. It can be denied, and the board can approve the definitive plan. It's really an opportunity for the board and the applicant to discuss it, and the real purpose of it is to get that zoning freeze for developers. That's really the intent of the preliminary subdivision.
So it's all pre-planned in that instance?
That's the, yeah, that's the intent of the freeze. So the zoning statute has certain freezes to protect owners of property when zoning changes, and one of them is a preliminary subdivision application.
Exactly what I wanted to clear up. Thank you.
Do I have any other comments?
If you'll, let me speak again, sorry, Haley, 200 Harvard Street. I'll just give you the reasons you can deny this. Geotechnical survey yet to come. Not, like, the stormwater calculations aren't there, incomplete data. There's a lot to this that would give you a basis for denial, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Bill Brady, 214 Harvard. Through the chair, if I could ask Mr. Scotty directly, because it's a seven-month window. Greg, do you have any plans to develop this yet? I mean, honestly. Through the chair.
Through the chair.
Through the chair.
I'll ask another question.
Sorry, Greg LaScotti, 83 Orchard Hill Park Drive, Lemonster. From understanding the question, is it to develop this off of this cul-de-sac? If I have any plans, is that the question?
Yes, this one.
I don't have any plans right now, no.
Actually, my question, just for clarity, because he misunderstood it, is there any plans drawn up already by your engineers to do any development on these parcels?
No.
Could you say it again? I'm sorry.
I can hear. You said no.
No, no. Okay, thank you. And I've got the mic just for clarification on the...
Go ahead.
The development impact statement, and as it relates to, you know, the Wood Partners, has nothing to do with Wood Partners. Development impact statements fall under subdivision regulations, so that's what we're talking about now. Nothing to do with Wood, completely separate. And as Chris had pointed out, there is no project being proposed right now. It's simply a road cleaning up some lot lines. When the time comes, as I've done in my 30-plus years or so before this board, we'll submit supply, site plans, traffic plans, whatever the city requires, peer reviews, it'll all be handled at that time. Development impact statements are not handled during preliminary subdivision plans. And to the comment earlier about Haley's comment, that stuff is not required for preliminary, that comes later, as you know, during a definitive subdivision plan, not now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
How are you doing? Just question, can the city, like, I wasn't aware of all this other development yet, but the city can handle like the sewer and the water requirements for all this development?
Yeah, you've mentioned water a couple of times. My best information right now, the last time I, I had checked with a DPW a few years ago. I was actually told, I don't know, it was four, five years ago, so, you know, don't take it for today, but they said they actually, the use today is lower than it was 20 to 15 years ago. And primarily, we don't have the factories. Okay, I think at one time Foster Grant was taking like 3 million gallons a day, okay? And that type of water doesn't, that doesn't exist today anymore. So in essence, the last, I mean, it's not today, I'm just trying to give everybody sort of an information, is that our water condition in the city is, DPW has never mentioned that as an issue, okay? As far as storage and anything, I just don't know. Go ahead.
That's okay. I just have a quick question, real simple. If there's no problem with the water, why are there signs out downtown Lemonster all the time that there's a drought and you had to conserve? If there's no problem, what's, somebody's not, somebody's not legit here.
I can't answer that question. I'm talking about total usages, I guess. Go ahead.
Carrie Noseworthy, 95 Smith Street. Try not to be repetitive. I haven't heard it brought up in a while. I don't know where we're going to educate these children. We pass net school spending budgets every year, meaning we spend, you know, what the least amount that the state says we have to spend, but we have to follow special education laws, and I just want to bring that up to your attention as well. I don't know where these children are going to physically go, and I don't know how we're going to have the money to educate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments on this?
Sue Shalafuzefra, City Council here in Lemonster. I have a question through the chair for Mr. Scotty.
What's your question?
My question is, in his application for the preliminary subdivisions, he did ask for a waiver of the development impact study.
Yes, correct.
Why?
We'll ask that question.
The council answered that question, it was one of his first statements.
His question, their statement to that was that there was, they had no plans, so it was difficult to make an impact statement when they had no plans on anything. And that's, so if they don't have a plan, again, the only other way would say, okay, what's the max out for, I don't know what the number is, 400, 500, 800 apartments? It could be other apartments, it could be, so that's a presumption, okay? And what is the case? I don't know. And maybe, and we may say, okay, do an impact on the worst-case scenario, a total impact, and then we could do that. But we haven't got to that point yet.
Or do an impact on the plan that you have in hand, which is the 17-acre site...
No, that's separate, no. We can't do that. We cannot.
It's part of the preliminary subdivision.
We determined that the 17 acres are separate.
It's part of the preliminary subdivision.
No.
Application that is before you. It is. Mr. Attorney Parata, the 17-acre site plan is included, that parcel of land that has all of the detail that we've seen presented here is part of the preliminary subdivision that is now before the planning board, correct?
As far as I can tell from their plan, yeah.
Okay, right. So that detail...
Well, physically, I mean, physically it is.
Right.
I would say if what you're asking, if a development impact statement were required of some form for this subdivision, if the site plan had already been approved by the point the board made that decision, certainly the existence of that project could be taken into account in that development impact statement.
Of course.
But there has to be, as the board is saying, some basis, and I don't know the development impact rules from A to Z, but there has to be some effort by the board to recognize that this could be an industrial project. There are other projects, right, that are allowed in, on these site plans. And I don't know the answer, how the board would file that, but I solve that. But I certainly think if the board ultimately did require one for this subdivision, certainly you'd have to take into account the project that had already been approved by site plan, approving the site plan.
Right, right, that is detailed.
But having said that, it, the site plan would have been over at that point, right? It wouldn't retroactively have anything to do with their already having approved the site plan.
No, I understand that. But what it would do, it would be informative for the rest of the build-out.
That is correct.
And, thank you.
If a development impact statement would require, include that. But what I'm trying to say earlier is the original subdivision that came to us is a standalone at this point. Now, we could, if we, if on the preliminary, we have to define the differences. If on the preliminary, we do in fact determine, okay, that we want an impact statement, okay, then that would be part of it, okay? They'll say, okay, here's a part, we already got so many apartments here, it's already approved, we know what the traffic is, we know what the drainage, we know what the water is, okay?
That's right.
Then we say, okay, what's the balance? What's the current ordinance that exists today? And take that ordinance and take it to the maximum.
Yeah.
Okay?
Absolutely.
The maximum build-out. Say, here, this is what my maximum build-out is.
Right.
Now with that, we say, okay, fine, and maybe that's something we don't want to do, or maybe it is something we want to do. I don't know at this time, I can't, I can't answer. Or they might say, it might be a combination of, because we allow commercial in there also.
We do.
Or we can allow homes on second, you know, apartments on the second floor, and so we could come in with a plan for a village.
Right.
Okay, and it'd be totally different. And so, I mean, there's, and that's the problem I have, is how do I ask for an impact statement that could be pie in the sky? And so if I ask for, if we, no, I, if we ask for it, it's going to have to be the worst-case scenario, and I'm not sure if that does anybody any good.
Well, it doesn't have to, I wouldn't use worst-case scenario, I would use, using the information that you have in hand, using the specifics that you do have in hand.
It would include it, yes.
And also, absolutely. But also keep in mind the zoning changes that were proposed by the landowner that ultimately came to the planning board and the city council eliminated any requirements for further commercial, you know, there were the percentages, and I can't remember them, so I don't want to say 30%, 40%, whatever, but those are all gone now. So I think you could say, based on that change to the zoning, looks like it's going to be a lot of residential, right? A lot of housing.
I hate to say it, I'm not in court, and I have a problem going back to somebody's, you know, statement, say, oh yeah, because this is similar, is the same, okay? A lot of, excuse me, I was at, I was in some of those meetings myself. There was a lot of discussion back and forth for a lot of people. So I don't see, I can see how some of the information given by a developer, how, you know, first thing we have to deal with is how do we develop, you know, more housing for the city? And that was the focus of the housing group. What can we do?
Absolutely.
And so with that on the focus, a, some of these things came up. So I can see where the, in one case, in the discussions, Mr. Scotty was there sometimes, and he made some input to it. And then other people said, yeah, that's not such a bad idea. Is that collusion? No, it's not. Did he have ulterior motive? I have no idea, and I'll never have any idea. So I don't know. So to make an assumption, okay, that there was collusion there is definitely wrong, and I'd be, I can't, I can't help that.
I certainly did not make any kind of assertion that there was collusion. What I did say was that the developer's notes ended up in the zoning change, and one of those was to eliminate the percentage requirements in MU2 for any commercial or any industrial.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, so my point is that in looking at a development impact statement, the planning board would have a lot of information. You have the site plan, all of that detail. You have the zoning changes and how, you know, what is in those zoning changes. So you could, you know, make reasonable guesses about, or, you know, reasonable projections about what that build-out might look like.
That's correct.
Good. So I think that's a very important, so I just want to reiterate what other people have said about the development impact statement. I think it's really important, like other folks have said, you know, if you don't do a development impact statement for the, this particular project, which could end up being the largest residential development in Lemonster, why would, why does it even exist? So, thank you.
Thank you. No, excuse me, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's all right, you can...
There's a couple, a couple words used in the last couple comments, and I think they're very helpful to keep in mind because it's very easy to get the site plan review process that was very detailed and just ended, and is something different than a lot creation process for a subdivision. It's very difficult to keep them separate, but we need to. Those words were assumption and guess. That's what people are saying about Mr. Scotty's remaining land off of this 440 linear-foot subdivision roadway. That's what's before the board this evening. It's a 440 linear-foot subdivision that our civil engineer has drawn out to comply with all requirements. To require a development impact statement on a guess is improper. Projects, if and when they move forward on the lots that we are seeking to create, if they trigger the requirements for site plan review, they will go through site plan review, which we've seen is a very thorough process. It involves peer review, it involves project changes. But right now, Mr. Scotty has represented, there are no plans for those remaining lots in the next seven months, there is no drawings for those plans. So to require a hypothetical development impact statement when we're talking about lot creation, when the owner of the land, the developer, has said there's no plans for those lots, I think is really premature. And what we did in our application was follow the process that's required by the subdivision regulations, which is we submitted our general impact statement, which reaffirmed that there's no development planned on the lots being created, and we saw that the board would not seek to impose the development impact statement, which is the process required in the subdivision regulations.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
Melissa Bible, 178 Fifth Street. Looking for maybe some clarification and fully acknowledging, I have some of the worst visual spatial skills around. So this request has multiple lots, and one of the lots is the Orchard Hill apartment development, correct? Within this.
No.
Yeah, there's eight, there's eight lots, and one of them is the apartment complex that's being sold and under contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Wood.
Two of them, it's on two.
Okay. So is there an ability to zoom in on that road that shows where the wood development is on that road? So you have that circled, you have that circled road, okay. So that, you have that circled, you have that circled road, okay. So the wood development, is it on the far left? Is it in the middle? Is it in the cul-de-sac, in the road to nowhere? What is, where is it?
It's off the end of the cul-de-sac, to the left on the plan.
It's right here. I'll try to point it out to you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to see it pointing. Okay? It's right here. This is the access road to the backland to the 17 acres. Okay? And we're talking about, what's in right over there?
So we're talking about another, another road and lots?
That's correct.
With the cul-de-sac at the end of that?
Yes.
Okay. Because we know all the industrial work that happens in industrial, like cul-de-sacs. I don't know if I've ever heard of an industrial cul-de-sac. So, okay. So we're going to have that development that's already been mentioned, and then this is the second one with eight separate lots in addition to the one lot that's in the upper left.
Right.
For lack of better.
Seven total lots. Two of them include these parcels over here.
In the caveat, there's another one over here.
Okay. And where is Leominster Shirley Road in relation?
What's that?
The Leominster Shirley Road, where, like, Skyview School is.
Where you're down.
Oh, Skyview?
Prospect Street.
It's up off of Prospect Street. It's not, not on this map.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Liz Macarola, 75 Harvard Street, if you'll indulge me, I don't see what the downside is to determining what a maximal build-out would look like on these proposed lots. To me, that would be the point of the whole process. I know from the applicant's perspective, it's to lock in the zoning, but the point of the development impact study, from the point of view of the planning board, would be to understand what you're approving. And without studying what could go on those lots, I don't think you know what you're approving. So to me, it is not responsible to approve this without a development impact study showing what the maximal build-out could be. And we all know that's residential. And we don't need to make assumptions, because there are rules about what's allowed, and we should look at what we would be potentially allowing to happen based on our existing ordinances, what that maximal build-out would look like, and what the impact to the city would look like. To me, that is responsible forward-thinking planning, and it is not based on an assumption.
Okay. Let me try to explain something. Number one, I'm not a lawyer, so.
I'm not either.
But, but, but we try, we try to, you know, and if I'm, one of the things that we have with, let's call it the original plan of 17 acres, we've gone through that since, you know, March of our first meeting, sometime in March, and we've been at it for a long time. And they've given us a number of extensions, because we've had a lot of questions that come up. One of the things that this board has to deal with is the developer has also rights, okay? And one of those rights is they can, we can request extensions, but at a point where he believes that it's unreasonable or, I don't know what the reason is out, okay? He'll say, no, I'm not going to. At that point, this board has to make a decision, and we can't delay it. And if we do vote against it, or if we just delay it, it's become what they call a constructive approval. So in other words, they have the rights, they can go right off into it, and at that point, if there are any conditions that we have, or we want to develop, they're out the window. Okay? So that's the thing that we're up against as a planning board, is that we have, a developer has a right, and then we have to follow through those rules, the set of rules that we have of this constructive approval, okay? So we can't, so that's where we stand today. So there are conditions. So trying to tie that in and say, oh, we got to wait for the 17 acres before we get a, this preliminary done, and we can, we can ask for an impact statement for that, because that is allowed. In the meantime, he'd get a constructive approval and go ahead with the project, and we couldn't do anything about it. So that's a, you know.
I understand all of that.
That's a problem I have, okay? The caveat, and if I said something wrong, Mr. Attorney.
No, you've made that very clear. I mean, I don't, I don't mean to speak for you, sir. I'm clear on all of that, and I feel like sadly the ship may be sailing. So what my point is, is that for these remaining parcels, we ask for this development impact study, you know, as well as the 17 acres, I think we ought to understand what that's doing and have that information for planning purposes, but we should also be looking at the remaining lots, which apparently currently have no proposed projects, but we know what could be allowed. And we should look at that and really understand if our city can handle those impacts. And that's my point.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just sorry. Once again, to be clear, I'm here for the board's approval for a waiver-free subdivision. Nothing more. Creating new lot lines, that's it. There's no proposed project. I could not, the time for a development impact statement, should one be required, is not even during this preliminary. It comes later in the process. Also, as was stated, as the board's well aware, in a multi-use two-zone, you can do anything, as we know from housing, you can do manufacturing, warehousing, you can do retail, you can do hotels, you can do, I mean, a myriad of things, all by right. So it makes absolutely no sense to do a development impact statement on something, I have no idea what's going to go in. We had a lot of speculation from folks here tonight that apparently know better than me what's going to go on my land, which I've owned for over 20 years. So certainly I'm not in any rush to be doing anything up here. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, questions, what was that, the seven-year, was that, you said the?
Seven months.
Oh, seven months, seven months, yeah.
Between a preliminary plan. Just on the, on whether or not, putting aside the questions of what you would ultimately request the development impact statement to show, there is some ambiguity between two sections of the regulations as to whether or not you can, you know, one seems very clear. You have to file it with your preliminary plan unless it's waived. I agree that the later section, which counsel referenced, is a little ambiguous as to how this process plays out with the development impact statement. I think both are reasonable, and in that case, it's left up to the board, and the board's decision on that controls whether it's unreasonable or arbitrary, which I don't think either one of those would be. So just to clarify, I think you do have the power to, if you decide, request it at the preliminary stage, I think there's valid questions as to what it would actually look like, you know? I think there are some things in that that govern the land, that relate just to the land itself, which could be answered even without a project. I can't sit here and tell you that you can't require some sort of hypothetical, you know, but I can't tell you that you can either, based on, based on the way it reads.
Yeah, I wouldn't know what that.
Yeah.
Just to clear this up, just, I just had a, would you be willing to waive the seven-month wait on any change in zoning? I think that's what it is.
It's, so it's seven months, it's eight years, I might have said seven years earlier.
Oh, years.
It's two, it's two separate things, okay? It's two separate things. If a preliminary plan is filed, and a definitive plan is filed within seven months, and that definitive plan is ultimately approved, then the zoning is frozen for eight years. That's just the way it works. That's how the statute works.
Okay, if it's approved, then it's.
So MU2 would be the underlying here, because it was approved under MU2, for example. And they filed a definitive within seven months, it's held for eight years. If they don't file a definitive within seven months, then it's going to have to fall under the new zoning.
Whatever, whatever's hoped for.
If there is, you lose the freeze, you can file it earlier, and this goes to, a little bit to what I said earlier, a preliminary plan doesn't really mean a whole lot. It can be denied, and the definitive plan can be approved and vice versa. But the key thing for the applicant, if it wants to take advantage of the freeze, is to get in within that seven-month window.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just want to pick up with what counsel mentioned in terms of the process. With a preliminary plan, it is just that, the word is preliminary. With the board, the actions the board has this evening are to approve the preliminary plan, to allow us to go on and prepare and submit the definitive plan, or to approve it with conditions or modifications, or to deny it. Any one of those, we still move on to file the definitive plan. And as Mr. O'Scott was saying earlier, there are no plans to develop on the remaining lots, and we know that when development, if it, if and when it moves forward, it will be subject to site plan review. That can happen at that time. So I think, I maybe differ a little bit from counsel on the process. I think it's quite clear in Section 12 of the subdivision regulations that the process is that with a preliminary plan, a general statement of development impact or intent comes in. From there, the board reviews that. It may, may require a development impact statement, it doesn't have to. That those words "may" are also used in Appendix A, which is the requirements of the development impact statement. If the board does require a development impact statement, that gets filed with the definitive. Section 8 of the subdivision regulations also requires, that's the much more detailed submittal, where there's drainage reports, there's a butters list, there's all sorts of things. If required, the development impact statement comes in with the definitive subdivision plan.
Okay.
Just to add what I said earlier, if it's denied, the other thing generally what happens is you tell the applicant why you denied it, just to sort of close that loop as the purpose of the preliminary plan. So when they file their definitive plan, there's some understanding as to why the preliminary plan was denied.
Okay, yes.
Hi. Sushal Fuzefra, City Councilor here in Leominster. Through the chair to Attorney Parata, I have a question about the constructive approval. Now, that doesn't apply to the two preliminary subdivision plans, right?
Preliminary subdivision plans generally can't be constructively approved. The concept doesn't really apply. It does apply to a definitive plan.
Just a definitive.
Okay, good, thank you. And I guess, secondly, in listening to the conversation back and forth, I don't know why, if there's no plan, there's no detail, there's no information for this preliminary subdivision plan, why would you approve a road with nothing proposed on it or proposed near it?
Oh, we've done that, we've done that before. Okay, I mean, we had.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll take just, you know, we had one, it was 40 years ago, over on Pierce Street, where the developer came in and showed us a plan for 45 houses, okay? And, well, they never sold the 45, and then they got down to 12, and then that didn't sell, and it was too expensive, and then finally the city bought it. So, you know, you never know what's going to happen with a, but, you know, there was a preliminary plan of a huge development in North Leominster, I don't know, 25 or 30 years ago, and with a, you know, preliminary plan. So we've had a number of preliminary plans that have just, they do it, they can create lots, okay, and then market different lots. And that way, you can, they have an advantage to sell on it, because they know what they have.
Right.
So they already said, we have a preliminary, but preliminary doesn't hold a lot of water other than, like you said, it locks, locks the zoning in for seven months.
Right. Right. I mean, there's, which still, I haven't changed my mind, I mean, it makes no sense to me that a board would approve something that you have absolutely no detail on, especially this.
Well, we have the key, and we have the road, but we don't have to, see, because the ordinance, that we're working, the area that we're working on has multiple uses, okay? It's not just residential A or residential C. It has residential, it has industrial, it has commercial. So there are multiple uses in there, so that's what makes us so difficult to say, what are we going to have? Like, it could have a hotel. I don't know. And how do you, I have, I'm having a problem myself. How can I ask for a definitive? I mean, I can come up and spend the money, and pretty much I'm saying, okay, come up with a pie in the sky definitive plan and spend a lot of money, but it doesn't hold water, because you came back two weeks later and say, I didn't get that, I'm not going to do that, so we're going to go do something different. And I'm going to come in with a definitive plan that is totally different, not even close of to what the preliminary plan was. And that's the problem I'm having. A preliminary plan doesn't hold a lot of water.
Well, then don't approve it. I mean, exactly.
But they come in, they come in for a request to approve, so that he can create lots, so that he can do something. I don't know. Okay? I don't know what his plan is.
Okay. Well, with that said, I'm going to go back to something I read at the last planning board meeting. This is from the planning board website, and it's under overview, and it talks about the planning board's mission. "The mission of the planning board is to preserve and enhance the quality of life for individual residents and the city community as a whole, to provide foresight and direction through an open, informed, and inclusive public decision-making process, and to ensure reasonably planned growth and development of land and its use in a manner that preserves the city's unique rural and historic character." That is a statement from the planning board website, and a statement that characterizes the city of Leominster. You've got an opportunity tonight, you can approve something with zero information, or you can say, you know what, come back to us when you've got some more information, because we'd like to be able to evaluate something in a real and thorough way.
Thank you.
That's what these people are asking for. That's what the residents of Leominster are asking for. Thank you.
I'd like to, one other point, and counsel, and counsel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but under, and the subdivision control laws is governed by statute in Massachusetts. And under 81 S of the, Section 81 S of the subdivision control law, the applicant, when it's a residential zone or for a residential purpose, the applicant may submit a preliminary plan. However, if it's going to be, in the case of a non-residential subdivision, any person submitting his definitive plan for approval shall first submit a preliminary plan. So that's more of a reason why we don't know what's going in here. It's a mixed-use development. It could be for residential, or it could also be for commercial uses or industrial uses for that matter. So that's another reason why I'm assume, I'm not going to use the word assume, that's another reason why.
You believe.
The petitioner, I believe that the petitioner's filing a preliminary plan because he does not know what's going in. It could be residential, in which case it was within his discretion to file a preliminary plan, or it could be industrial or commercial, in which case he was required to submit a preliminary plan. And so, you know, that's another reason why we can't, I don't know how an impact statement is going to help us if and when he files a definitive plan, then it's a completely different plan, at which point we would require one, and we have in definitive stages. And now we're starting all over again. So that's, that's another thing to keep in mind, is the reason behind why a preliminary plan is being submitted.
Okay, go ahead.
Dave Rollins, 49 Braverman Circle. I've heard some things that I think are maybe not accurate, and I just want to make sure that I get clarity on them. First of all, the Leominster subdivision regulations clearly state, either in a preliminary or a definitive subdivision, you can ask for a development impact statement. So it's, I heard that you don't have to ask for it in, or it's not required or not done at preliminary. This body has the ability to ask for it, whether it's preliminary or definitive. This is, and we talk about preliminary, this isn't your standard preliminary stage subdivision. Let's be honest here. The reason that this subdivision application was presented was because there was an ordinance to change the zoning by city councilors and 120 neighbors. They put that in. Shortly after that, then a subdivision was put in, and I believe, if I'm, I could be wrong, that upon be wrong, that upon the submittal of a preliminary subdivision, that's when the eight-year freeze of the zoning takes effect. Now, he has seven months for which to do the definitive, which he can do, but at the submittal of this preliminary, which was right after the subdivision went in to change the planning, and we know what it is. You can just look at the application. It's minimal at best, and he did it to protect the zoning so that the new changes, to reset the zoning back, would happen. So we should be honest about that. This is a very unique, this is a very unique preliminary because you already have a lot in here that's at site plan approval. So this is not your standard preliminary. And I agree, don't speculate about what could be, but I will make this guess. It's not going to be industrial, because in 25 years of mixed use and multi-use, there's never been an ounce of industrial, and there's never going to be an ounce of industrial, because we just lifted the restriction that said residential was limited to one-third. Now, it can go all residential, and what developer who wants to maximize his profit is going to build industrial land, we can maximize super-high-density residential. So my guess is that, but I'm not asking you to guess. I'm just saying, you have enough here to ask for a development impact statement. Forget the other. Waive the other lots. Just get a development impact statement for what you know you have. And you know what value that is? Because when he comes back for the next 12 acres, or the next 18 acres, and he comes back for Phase 1 of the 300 lots or the 400 lots, because remember, he has the right of density of 800 units on the remaining 37 acres. You'll have an idea of what the impact is because you've got a real, serious development impact statement for the 18 acres. Forget the other stuff. Don't speculate. Don't guess. The law allows you to do it in the preliminary. This is a special preliminary that only came about because of the zoning changes. You have a real, detailed, serious project, get a full development impact, and then use it to extrapolate for when he comes back for Phase 2 and Phase 3 and Phase 4. Thank you.
Okay, yes. I'm trying to wrap this up. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, very quickly, because I just wanted to comment. Haley Bish, 219 Harvard Street. Building on what Vice Chair Carroll said, if the preliminary subdivision application is only required for industrial and commercial uses, can we waive the seven-month zoning freeze for the residential? Is that feasible? So that way, it's not frozen for eight years, and they can use the same zoning that the city council is trying to revise?
I would defer to legal.
I don't know.
I don't understand your question.
So she was saying how, from my understanding, it was the preliminary subdivision application is required for industrial and commercial.
Correct.
Only a definitive subdivision application is required for residential.
But an applicant may require preliminary for residential if it chooses to.
The applicant.
Correct.
So, in this case, we can't request for residential to be omitted from that zoning change? Because...
No.
No, it doesn't work that way, as I've said a few times now. Once the preliminary plan is filed, if a definitive plan is filed in seven months, approved, the zoning is frozen for eight years from when the time the preliminary, and it's, plan is filed.
Regardless of what the zoning...
Regardless of what anybody in any local town or city does. That's a state statute. That's, and its intent is to protect developers. That's the intent of it.
Not benefiting the residents, okay.
Well, just on that point.
That's a statute.
Just a point of interest, okay? Back when most of the zoning, this was written, it was written by developers.
Right.
To protect developers, back a long time ago.
It wasn't that long ago.
Oh, it was, but it's true.
And the other thing, and that was a good ques, once I understood it, as I think I said before, also, the denial of the preliminary plan also wouldn't affect the freeze. It's, the question is whether the definitive plan would ultimately be approved.
Okay. Do I have anyone else?
Can I read the...
Go ahead.
Department head reviews on, yes. Fire department approves. Board of Health, no additional comments on proposed road, approved. Building inspector approves. Assessors Department approves. DPW approves. The Department of Public Works recommends that a traffic study be performed for this proposed subdivision and provided for review in the definitive submission phase. Police Department, I recommend a traffic study take, be taken into account for proposed future uses along with the current proposed housing development and other Pioneer Park Drive subdivision that would use the same road. Conservation Project appears to be in close proximity to jurisdictional resource areas under Water Protection Act. Please contact Conservation Department to review.
Okay. We've got, two more to go.
Point of clarification, I think there was a later letter from the Police Department. Director Woods?
Oh. No, that's the site plan, site plan, site plan.
Do you get this one?
On this project?
Oh, yes. From Captain John Frere. Let me just get my date straight. Hold on. His first comment, this is dated, okay, hold on.
I've got too many papers here.
The email is October 15th, but what I want to make, I want to be clear about, oh. This was October 6th, what I read, what I read earlier. So October 15th. Please cancel the current request for traffic studies and put us down as approved for now. We will request the studies at the appropriate meeting when a use decision has been made, so we know what kind of study we need, and we can more accurately control the scope and intensity. So that's, I'm assuming he's, if you just get that word, he means at the definitive stage.
Yeah. Okay.
And then I had two comments.
Go ahead.
I mean, you need to either require the development impact statement, or they have to have a waiver. So we needed a written waiver request from that. And then I requested that they display all proposed buildings on the preliminary subdivision plans, display all proposed building setbacks from the proposed property lines, because proposed lots 2 and 3 are part of the 86 Orchard Hills Park Drive site plan application that is before the board for consideration tonight. So you need to make sure the buildings are set back appropriately.
Okay. Do I have anything else on this?
Um.
Carol?
I, I don't know. I don't necessarily agree that we need a waiver for a development impact statement at the preliminary stage. That's not how I read this site plan, Elizabeth. It says the planning board may require developer of a subdivision of more than, that's actually more than one, yeah, more than one building on a lot to submit a development impact statement.
Said may require. So it's not...
I think it's within our discretion, and it's on both.
I'm looking at a letter in front of us with a communication asking about making a definitive impact statement a condition on the approval of the preliminary.
That's right. We may require.
Require at the definitive.
We could.
Yeah.
Okay. What it is, so that, so that's what the letter says. The request, not the requirement.
But we can write, tonight is a preliminary. We can approve the preliminary with the condition that the definitive will include it.
They, I think they have to hire someone.
They would have to hire somebody.
Or we, with everything. Impact the entire development.
Yes, it's everything.
I think, I think it could be through, I'm going to ask Jason that question. I mean, Justin, sorry.
I'll be Jason.
Okay, you'll be Jason. Okay, Justin, you'll be Jason.
I'm tired too. What was the que, well, I didn't, I couldn't overhear.
Everyone's talking about a development impact statement.
Yeah.
And maybe in terms of like...
What does that encompass?
That's what I said earlier. I mean, I don't know A to Z what's in it. I know there's an attachment to the, to the subdivision regs that talk about it. I looked at it briefly. There's some things I think an applicant can do irrespective of what the actual structures on the building would be, certain things like soil testing and things like that. I think that it would be, as I said earlier, you'd have to sort of craft what that would look like in a situation where the development is unclear. Oftentimes, I'll say, these type of studies are done where a special permit is also needed, so an applicant's before the board on both things, subdivision and a special permit, is a much different situation. As I said earlier, I can't tell you, you can't require it, but I can't really tell you, you can. It's, in my opinion, it's ambiguous enough that it's left up to your discretion, and as a board, unless your discretion is totally unreasonable, that would carry the day.
Thank you. Okay.
So on the timing issue, so, as I said earlier, there's a, what's the section that you cited, Elizabeth? 6? There's a section in the regs on preliminary subdivision applications that seem to say you have to file this when you file your preliminary application. I agree with counsel that there's a later provision that when you read them together, kind of makes that questionable, whether the process is that the board will make a decision at some point as to whether or not it's required. Again, as I said earlier, if you came down and said, no, we think it's required on a preliminary plan, I wouldn't say that that was unreasonable. If you came down and said, it's required on a definitive plan, if at all, I wouldn't say that was unreasonable either. I don't mean to put it in your court, but there is some ambiguity in the way it's written, in my opinion.
So I think that this, okay, a motion would be to accept a definitive with a proviso the development impact statement be...
No, because they've, if it's required at all at the preliminary plan, it's not required to make the application complete because you can waive it. That Section 6 says it has to be submitted with the preliminary plan unless it's waived. So, the question is whether or not you feel you even have the power to require it now, or if you feel like you do and you want to waive it, or if you feel like you don't have the power to require it until the definitive stage. Would be, that's how I read it.
Okay.
We can do it anytime we want.
That's what, that's how I read it, yes.
Yeah.
Has anyone asked the applicant outright yet if they want to provide a development impact statement with this preliminary?
They've asked for a waiver.
Have we asked?
Well, in my opinion, they don't need a waiver.
Yeah.
Because it's within our discretion.
Just a point of clarification. I think it's important to look at Section 12, which talks about the procedure for development impact statement, and that's, that is the procedure. And there's a section of the subdivision regulations that's actually titled the development impact statement. That's, that section talks about a preliminary plan being filed with a general development, or a general statement of intent, which we've done. We're here in front of the board with the preliminary, with that general statement. It then goes on to say, if the board wants to require a development impact statement, yes, you can. And that is further mirrored in Exhibit A, which are the requirements of a development impact statement, which talks about how the planning board may, may require it. So it's, I think it's, I think it's quite clear that Section 7, earlier in the subdivision regulations, you know, maybe a developer might elect in their own volition to do this, but we thought it was better, where we do have no planned development on those other lots in the subdivision, to come in, explain that to the board, that the only development that's proposed in this, in this preliminary subdivision is a 440 linear-foot subdivision roadway. And to say that with that information, the board is within their, their ability and their rights to say, no, a development impact statement is not required. I agree with counsel that if the, if the board wants to say, yes, a development impact statement is required for the definitive, the definitive can also require a development impact statement, and we'll have to figure out what we, what we study, because we have no plans, so it's a little circular. I think another way to do it...
We have potential for 1,000 residential units, right?
If residential units are developed. It could be a retail use. It could be an industrial. It could be a different use.
Right.
I think another way at the definitive stage that you could put some controls on, I'm sorry, I can stop.
What I would say, you know, yeah. I'd like to go on, but I just want to, we could, it could be 1,000 apartments. It also could be a residential, a commercial project. It could be an industrial, yeah. Industrial, I all agree. We haven't seen any industrial, but, but we've seen commercial, and so there's a good possibility, a commercial or residential or a combination too, but we have, or it could be a hotel. We don't know.
Can I bring up, can I ask a question to Justin? We have a, we have the next, is a preliminary subdivision application on Pioneer Drive. Is it possible to defer to determine whether or not we're going to continue the Orchard Hill Park Drive extension until after we do that one? Is that possible? Do we have to make a decision now, whether to continue it?
The subdivision application you're talking about?
Yes, because now we're about to hear on the preliminary subdivision on Pioneer Drive.
You can continue those as many times as you want. You can never vote on the preliminary plan if you want to. There's no...
My, my point is, I, I don't know the pleasure of the board yet on this one. So, for example, we could, we could close, what I'm going to just call the 645 meeting, and then open the 650 meeting. But they're kind of, they kind of go in hand-in-hand. So I'm wondering, can we just defer a decision of whether to continue or to close the 645 meeting, hearing, meeting, until we hear the 650?
Sure. You could move to continue. It's just an agenda item. It's not a public hearing. So you can just, you could vote to move on to the next preliminary subdivision plan, if that's, if I'm understanding your question right.
Yes, but then, but then could we go back and close it if that's the board, if that's what the board decides to do?
Yeah, you can go back and close.
It's an open public meeting.
Yeah. You're not really closing anything. You're voting to end discussion on it, when you're, when you're done discussing it and ready to vote on it.
Okay.
See, it's not a hearing. It's a public meeting.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's where we're making a difference.
Then I'm saying we open the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I think I had a gentleman standing here for a while. I don't, you know.
Stephen White, 35, scenic drive. Just wanted to make it a comment. There was reference to, well, it's just a road. We don't know what's going to happen. Let's play back to when the infamous $2 million state-funded road went in. Was that similar? We didn't know what was going to happen, and now we have 300 apartment buildings going in there? So again, I think it's warrants caution here, because the very same thing could happen. And that's what we want to try to prevent, you know?
I can't comment on the road. I wasn't part of that.
Yeah. So I don't know how that got approved, what we thought that was going to happen with that, but we see, we see how it turned out, so, you know, we probably could expect similar here.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other discussion? Okay, I'd like to close this hearing.
But that's my question. If we close it, I just want to defer any action on it until we do the next one.
Okay.
Because there...
The motion is to continue.
I think, if I remember, I think it's to move the question might be the proper motion, or to move that agenda item to the next agenda item, which is really what you're doing.
Yeah, the motion would be to move to the, move it past.
I make a motion to move to the next agenda item, which is the 650 meeting on Pioneer Drive.
Right. Have a motion made in second to move to the next agenda item. Open public meeting for preliminary subdivision application, Pioneer Drive. Are you all in favor? Both saying no? Sorry, guys. Get a little, open public meeting for public subdivision application, Pioneer Drive. Proposed road extension map, 369 block 1, lots 1A, 1B, map, 386, block 4, 25. I'm going to ask people out there, please, you know, if you, unless you get something new, there's all the same general information.
You can't...
You know, I really appreciate it. We're trying to move on. Go ahead. Make your presentation on this one. Yeah, I, I really appreciate it. We're trying to move on. Go ahead. Make your presentation on this one. Yeah, it's a different company, engineering company.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, again, Chris Rainier from Goldston and Stores, here with Greg LaScotty again, and I'll defer the presentation to the engineer that put together the subdivision plan for another parcel of land in the city.
Thank you.
Dan here with Haley Ward. Just give me a second. I'll get the presentation set up and I'll.
Okay. Get that discussion tonight. We can't do it. Go ahead.
All right, again, Dan Sheen with Haley Ward, 510 Mechanic Street. Let me serve. What we're proposing here before you is 150 linear foot roadway. Again, this was designed very similar to meet all the design requirements by the subdivision rules and regulations. Very similar process. I don't want to rehash a lot of the same things here. The biggest difference between these two lots, or I should say, these two projects, is mainly the existing stormwater infrastructure that's present on both parcels here. Just wants to cooperate with me. Apologize. So, existing here already is there's a significant stormwater basin, kind of highlighted on my cursor here. This is on the back of the existing lot where that subdivision street will kind of come out of. As well as parcel F, which is off to the north, there's a substantial stormwater basin existing as well. The only other real major difference, obviously, is the extent of the wetland system itself. We will go more further into detail when we go through a definitive plan review, but broad strokes here, that's really the gist of what you're seeing here. I'd be more than happy to answer any technical questions or anything of that nature, even go into more detail, but just for the sake of brevity, it's kind of a lot of the same stuff that you've been hearing before already.
Right, thank you.
How long's the roadway?
150 feet.
So eight, you're basically making three lots, right?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, just if I could as well.
Go ahead.
As Dan pointed out, so there's a large detention basin in the back that was built many years ago when we did the rest of the project. And it was built, basically sized to handle future drainage from this project and some of the other land I own across the street. And then the other land that's off locust here on this plan to the right is another large detention pond, but that, that services the Orchard Hill Park Shopping Center. So at the end of the day here, the majority of this land is all wetland and unbuildable. I think we ended up with about, was it less than five acres?
Yes.
Just, just over five acres of upland usable land, so very minimal project. Let's say it 150 foot waiver-free subdivision on, and we have about five acres of usable land. Of that five, two of it, as you'll notice, is owned by Crowley Construction Corp., who joined in the subdivision petition with me, Mike Crowley. Thank you.
Thank you.
FMH, just to kind of clarify what Greg LaScotty was just saying as well. If you include those stormwater basin areas, the size of usable land even gets much less. You're looking at about 2.7 acres of upland area that's not as part of that stormwater basin.
Okay, thank you. No. Okay. Do I have any comments from the audience on this particular project? Oh, good.
I'm gonna read, um.
Go ahead. Read the letters, please.
Department review forms for Pioneer Drive. Building approves. Board of Health approves. Assessors approves. DPW recommends a traffic study be performed for this. Proposed subdivision at the definitive submission phase and concerns with proposed crosswalk locations and other vehicles speeds and site distance along Pioneer Drive. These comments may be addressed during the definitive subdivision phase. Conservation site appears to have multiple jurisdictional resource areas under the Water Protection Act. Applicant would need to file with the Conservation Commission or follow up with an agent. Fire approves and. Police seek a traffic study at the subdivision, at the definitive subdivision phase.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other comments and letters? Elizabeth, we got anything? No?
We had one letter from Haley Brady, I believe.
Yeah, go ahead. Do you have Haley's?
I'll read it.
It's dated November 3rd. It says, letter for the board three.
Yes.
I have it right here. I'll hand it to you.
In regards to the open public meeting for preliminary subdivision application Pioneer Drive, proposed road extension. This filing is the biggest joke of all. Missing data, incomplete information, manhole's not located. Nothing is seriously being built here. Once again, this is an attempt to lock in the zoning for these lots. Everything here tonight is egregious, but is filing, but this filing is particularly insulting. Haley Brady, 200.
I don't need things like that. Okay.
Counsel, is there anything missing from the plan? Just a. Is there anything missing from the plan on a preliminary?
Nope, it does follow all the site requirements for a preliminary plan content.
Right.
Again, I think in reference to some of that incomplete data, could have been because we have notation for things such as not found. Pretty much what's meaning by that was there was a sewer manhole that appeared to have been paved over during the time of the survey, and as well as one of the drain manholes that kind of extends back out was also, you know, buried. We utilize, you know, what was, you know, best used, used for previous as builds as well to kind of locate those, to show them in a general manner of where they would go and where they should be. So I think, you know, in that aspect, we do cover everything that is required here.
Okay, thank you. Do I have anything else? Do I have a motion? Motion we ought to close this?
Well, we have to, I.
Oh, yeah.
I move, I think we should do them in order, so I'll, I make a motion to go back to the previous hearing.
Okay. I have a motion, uh, depris. Okay, let's, I have a motion to go back to 645. Okay, open public meeting. This is for Orchard Hill Drive extension. What's your wishes, folks? Oh, no, we gotta close it.
Well, that's the.
That's the motion.
That's the, that's what's.
Yeah.
We have to discuss.
We close the preliminary?
Yeah.
It's either we're gonna close or we continue it. If somebody's gonna make a motion, what they want to do.
I'm not making a motion, because I, I think we should do the study.
Well, we can require the study.
But then we'd have to keep the hearing open.
Yes.
A point of clarification to the chair. The, the subdivision regulations provide that within 45 days of filing the application, the board will either approve, approve with modifications, or deny. And councils advise the board that if they were to deny, they could say why they were denying, such as for a development impact statement, if, if the, if the board felt that that was something they wanted to see at the definitive stage. So, looking back at the, the planning director's memo, I believe, the 45 days runs on November 10th?
November 14th.
November 14th, okay, so.
That's when it ends.
But, but that's, this is, we're at the preliminary stage. This is, it's a very preliminary stage. That is the definitive where more detailed information comes in. So that's, that's where we're, we're at procedurally. Approve, approve with modifications, or deny. Thank you. If that's helpful, I hope, I hope it is.
You could also continue it.
Wait, as long as it's.
Well, you continue it to the next meeting, right, which is the.
I make a motion.
Why you want to continue it? What more information we're gonna get, so?
Well, we just said we can continue it. I, I also agree that, that here's two more pieces of the pie to have a statement on, an impact statement on. That's, that's my stand on it. And you gave us the power for it. So, you know, you said that we can request, it says it in our book, that we can request the development impact statement for this property at either stage, preliminary stage or definitive stage.
Is that your motion?
My motion, that is my motion at the preliminary stage. That's why I would like to continue the hearing. Right?
No.
Why?
No, you make a motion to.
Continue to hear. Based on, that's what I just, didn't I just say that? Based on requiring a preliminary, a development impact statement.
I can't, like, speak for what you're trying to do, but you could make a vote to require it. You could make a vote to continue it, to further think about whether you want to require it. You could make a vote to do both. You could make a vote to continue.
That's okay. I would like to continue it to, to figure out if we, I want a development impact statement, so, Justin, however you word that works with me, and that's my motion.
I can't make the motion for you.
No, I understand, I understand, I understand that. I want to continue this hearing, and I want, in order to obtain a definitive impact statement. That work?
Sure.
On this, right.
We're just talking about Orchard Hill.
No, we're just talking about.
No, we're talking about just this road. It's not on Orchard Hill.
That's correct. We're talking about the, we're talking about, we're talking about 645 public hearings.
Right.
That's what we're talking about. Lots.
Yes.
I'll read it. Map 369.
That's right.
Block one lots two, three, and four. Map 386 block four lots one C, three, and five, and map 463 lot 11. That's my motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Screw the pooch.
Try the second.
To continue the hearing.
To continue the hearing?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Can we do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Patrick Perla. Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
No.
Tom Karrigan.
No.
Jason Parre. Dean Valier.
Three, three.
Uh, we have three, three. John, you're the chair. You have to make the swing vote.
Yes. Okay.
So now we have to figure out where to continue to, because.
No, this is 650.
All right, we want to do 650, we might as well, so we can block them together. Open, let's do, I make a motion to continue this hearing until we get a development impact statement on map 369 blocks one lots one A and one B, map 386 block four lot two F.
Okay, do I have a second on this? Who's second is it?
Do I have a second?
Same.
Continue the hearing. This is for the, the next one.
It's on the, on the short street. Okay, roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
Caravatoreso.
No.
Tom Karrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parre, Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza.
Okay.
Let's open up the next one.
Seven o'clock.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're a little confused. If you could just, and, and maybe you could help counsel. So, our hearing, and the board needs to make a decision within 14 days, 45 days of the application, the hearing has been continued to some indeterminate time. To prepare a development impact statement, which will not happen by that time period. It will not happen by the 45 days. It's just a function of, there's not enough hours in the day and days before the continued hearing. The proper vote, I think, would be to require a development impact statement with the definitive plan. Otherwise, we need to request a waiver at the preliminary plan from the requirement for development impact statement, and the board could vote to deny the preliminary, I guess, for the lack of development impact statement, but one will not be ready in, what, by the 14th? That's 11 days from now?
We didn't, we didn't set the date yet, did we? Oh, you're 45 days.
We only had so much time, Sal.
He has 45 days.
He has 45 days.
Yeah, I, I think the proper, the proper vote would be to whether to require a development impact statement with the definitive plan.
I think that.
So, the way I understood the motion was that you were, and I think I asked this, are you continuing it to, in order to think about whether you want to require the development impact statement at this stage?
Exactly.
I, I thought it was, well, it was your motion, so you tell me what it was. No, it was your motion.
No, my motion was to continue it so that we could require that. Now, whether we require it, it says in the book, we can require it at either the stage. If you're telling me that you guys can't do the work by the 14th, then we can take that into consideration. But it will be required, so we would still have, require for the definitive stage.
We can still make a decision at the next meeting.
Yes, we'll make it, there you go. We'll make the decision at the next meeting.
No, it's not. The next meeting's November 17th.
Is that within the 45 days?
It's not within the 45 days.
When's the 45 days start, Elizabeth?
Well, there's two subdivisions and they had two different dates.
Yeah.
So the one for Orchard Hill Park Drive, that expires November 10th, and one Pioneer Drive expires November 14th.
If we ask the developer for an extension, can we, can we ask for an extension? If he gives you an extension?
I defer to legal.
Sure, you can ask him for an extension. As counsel was explaining, and as I explained before, if you ask them for a definitive, a development plan, and they say, forget it, we're not gonna do it.
Yep.
And you could deny the plan, that has virtually no effect on anything going forward.
That's right.
But you.
So he, he has no.
They, they're still gonna come in with a definitive plan, and you're still gonna have to make a decision at that point.
They don't have to have it.
I know, I know.
So.
Well, they can, they can force it, but we don't have time now, is what you're saying. Well, I understand that, Tom. Well.
Nothing.
Can we get an extension?
There's no, as I said earlier, there's no.
Excuse me. Can you give us an extension to the next, next meeting to take in?
That's all we need, Greg. Give us an extension to the next meeting.
Make a decision on whether you're gonna.
Yes.
Okay, I would advise at that meeting, if you're gonna require it, you've had thought about all these things, about what it's gonna look like, what's, is it gonna be worst-case scenario? Is it gonna be best-case scenario? Because then that would really be cutting it close.
We're willing to extend the time to consider the preliminary subdivision plan to the next available hearing solely to discuss what, what form of development impact statement is required at the, at the definitive stage.
At definitive point.
With no testimony about anything else. That, that, that is what we're extending for.
Okay.
That's good. So I'll amend my motion then.
Well, you don't have.
I don't have to? No, I, I'm asking a procedural question. I don't have to.
They, they, we've, no, we've requested them, and they, they've agreed with a condition. And I, can I accept that condition?
Can we make sure that's okay with legal?
What's that?
Can we confirm that with legal?
So, yes, I don't believe you need to, again, it's not a public hearing, so you don't really need to do anything other than vote to continue it, but what they said was, they're basically telling you they're not gonna give you one at the preliminary stage.
Right.
So what they said was, if we come back in November, it's just gonna be for you to vote whether you're gonna want one at the definitive stage or not.
Right. And what, what we want it to look like.
Correct, correct. That doesn't mean you necessarily have to go with what they're saying, but.
That's right, and that's all. No, no other subjects. That works.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the other option.
I don't know. I think we need to talk about this.
Sal.
Why don't you rescind, why don't you rescind your motion?
I'm not gonna. I want a couple more weeks to think about what I would like to see on it, if anything at all. Now, that doesn't mean I want to see any. Now, that doesn't mean I want to see anything, what I would like to see on it. If questions come to anybody else's mind, I still believe there were four people here that voted yes, and I think they would have something going in their mind, too. So, let's avoid the illusion of collusion.
You know, I move on.
I'm closed.
Okay.
There you go.
I'll accept the condition.
Thank you. Is that, so, do we have a date that we're continued to?
No.
November 17th is the next meeting.
Okay. Seven o'clock.
Do we need a time for November 17?
Yeah, we need a time.
We have items through 645, so 650 would be the next.
650? November 17, 650.
So moved.
Motion made, in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, motion carries.
That was for Orchard Hill Park, and then Pioneer is also 655?
Correct.
Yes. 651, take them together.
I have a motion for Pioneer Drive. Motion made, in seconded, for the 17th and 651. All in favor, say aye. Post say no, motion carries. Continuing of public hearing, City Council Petition, 9.26 Susan Shalfo Zephyr, Brandon Robbins, Counsel at Large, Ward One Counselor, Robert M. Tossi, and 10 registered voters, request to amend the zoning on pertaining to MU2 zoning.
Do you need a cord or anything to plug in?
No, absolutely not. No, this is very straightforward. Thank you very much, Susan Shalfo Zephyr, City Councilor at Large, here in Leominster. Oops, sorry.
Robert Tossi.
Brandon Robbins, at Large Counselor, here in Leominster.
So, we're here tonight just to, this is going to be brief. Ask you guys, will you have the petition? There were three of us, city councilors, over 110 residents, you know, who joined the petition, signed on to the petition. So, we, the petition is basically just reversing the January 13th change that was made in the MU2 zoning. That was made by the city council at January 13th, 2025 meeting. And the details, and I think the implications of what those changes were all about, was really not evident or obvious or even really explained to the city council at that time. So, that's really what we're doing. The density, I think somebody had mentioned earlier, was increased actually by 75%. You know, the 12.4 by right to, I think it's 21 something, 21.8. So, that's a huge, huge change in the density. The buffer zones were changed, 50 used to be, 50 feet from the property line used to be the minimum, it's now the maximum. The elimination of a special permit requirement. And there are a number of other things. But again, it's just, it's reversing the MU2 zoning back to what it was, which still had, you know, significant advantages, you know, for the developed. There's only one MU2 zone in Leominster. And at this point in time, you know, we don't know how, you know, that could change, you know, in the future, so we just don't know about that. So, that's basically what it is, so I'm happy to answer questions. Counsel Tossi?
Yes, I think this is an emergency. I think we need to get this done, we need to get back to the way it was, because this is, this is ridiculous.
I'm not going to spend too much time reiterating the same points, but I think it was made pretty clear earlier tonight and at countless meetings before about the just lack of information and how rushed we were on the city council to get this done. And I think the least that we can do is put the zoning back, even in light of some of the things that were talked about in the last hearing.
Right, we're not looking to make it any more restrictive than it was. We're just, we just are, this petition is asking specifically just to go back to what it was.
How come you voted for it?
She voted against it.
I'd like to. No, Sue did, but everybody else voted for it.
I'd like to answer that, because we weren't presented with the information that we needed to make a decision. Like, we're getting all the information now.
But why'd you make a decision if you weren't given?
Because we didn't think, Tommy, we didn't think, we didn't know that it was going to revert into this disaster, Tommy.
I think the other thing, too, that has been mentioned multiple times, is the push that we have to fix the housing. And I don't think anybody disagrees that we need housing in Leominster. I think there, there, it's, it's what we've talked about numerous times before this as well, about responsible development. And, you know, taking this, this really congested part of Ward One and shoving in tons of units is going to really impact it. So, I think that, you know, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr asked for further time. That, we were told that wasn't even an option, basically, to get more information. So, we had to take some sort of vote.
I don't understand why you had to take a vote.
Because there was a motion made and a vote had to be taken.
Right.
Anybody can say a motion.
Do you think we would have voted for this? You think we would have voted for this if we knew this was going to happen? Come on.
So, what are we proposing that we're going back to?
Where it was?
I've got a pile of paper in front of me, I'm just trying to figure it out. Are we removing multifamily housing completely from?
No, 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 absolutely not, no.
Let me explain, let me explain the, I'll give you a snapshot of the original zoning. Original zoning was one-third, 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 commercial, residential, industrial. There was a condition, there was a special permit requirement. Okay, and there was a requirement that, that before, before you did more than one-third, you had to do some of the, you had to do the commercial and residential. So, they had to be. Industrial. Okay, so that, that being, so that in, in a thumbnail with all the verbiage that's in there, that was the original zoning that was written back around 2002 or '03 timeframe. I'm not exactly sure, but, you know, that timeframe, been there for a long time. History on that is nothing has ever happened with the industrial piece. We've never gotten a bite for anybody on that.
Right, the only thing.
Let me finish, I was on the committee.
Sorry.
Okay, and I was there when it first started. So, there was no bites, okay? It's a, both the commercial and now the industrial, you know, commercial has been very successful. And it only, I don't think it's one-third, I'm not sure what the total is. It's someplace shorter than the total of one-third. And then you had the, and then the residential piece is coming up now. Now, what's happened is a, so with the new ordinance, with the, what happened with the, I'm going to say primarily the industrial piece, there is no activity. We don't see any activity, we haven't had any bites for the activity. And primarily, the history here is, you know, Fort Devens came in, and you can develop so much different, cheaper Fort Devens than you can there, that I don't see a foreseeable future of an industrial piece, that is piece of land. This leaves commercial and residential. What happens is, I'm trying to, trying to give all the proper information. If this goes forward, it has no effect on the 17 acres whatsoever, because that's still part of the 13, the original subdivision, and where it was written. Okay, it's had no impact. It may, it may not have any impact on the other two things we discussed tonight, because we have no idea what's going in there. Okay, let me finish, and then the third part is, in essence, it puts, I'm saying in essence, a total stop to, you know, to large and residential, because the requirement to have one-third industrial is not going to happen. So, in essence, a third of the land becomes nonusable in the foreseeable future. And that's where they had, that was part of the problem. We have a lot of discussions, because also people have a right to develop their land, and where do we develop it? So, I don't want to say that the information, a lot of information was given out to the city council, to a lot of people. There were city councilors on the committee. I don't know if they transferred the information back to the city council or not, but we stand here with, I don't, Elizabeth did a good letter on what the, the steps that were taken and what we did. So, I'd like to.
Can we read the, can we read the mayor's letter first?
Yes.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
They've triggered the mechanism to get this back to the city council. Whether we vote to recommend approval or we do not vote to recommend approval.
Well, listen, I want to get just the information, that's what we're going to do.
The city council is getting it regardless.
That's right.
And then they can make the decision.
They make the decision.
So, it doesn't matter if we say, we don't recommend this, or we do. They've triggered the mechanism to get it back to them, and if they want to deal with it, they're going to have to deal with it.
I don't know. I have no idea what the. Well, we got a hearing, so I've got to go through the paperwork that we have.
That's okay.
Okay, Sue?
Yeah, one other thing that I just wanted to mention, too, is what we, this does is restore the special permit by the planning board for multifamily and apartment dwellings under MU2. That, it used to be special permit, planning board and/or special, special permit, SPA. And that, so, and the change was to yes.
The difference goes SPA to CPA.
So, this goes back to you guys, it gives you guys.
The change of one letter, it's kind of interesting.
Okay, but this, so what this does is it restores the planning board's opportunity to look at this kind of development with a special permit requirement, which I think is really important. Oh, I understand.
That's not affected, that's grandfathered. And there is some constant discussion on that. But I don't, I really don't know. It's, as far as, as far as I'm until, my best, my best guess is has no, this has no impact on the 17 acres. Am I correct?
So, the statute that governs these protections was just amended less than a year ago to trigger protection for site plan approval. Generally, where a application is made to a board for a vested right, which is what this site plan approval is here, I'm sorry, I might have said subdivision approval, site plan approval, here, because as we were talking earlier, it can't be denied. Our opinion as a firm is that new amendment gives the protection to that site plan application once it's made. We're in a position now where presumably you're going to have to vote on it later tonight, because it's been closed and there hasn't been an extension. So, therefore, that issue wouldn't even matter. It would either be approved or denied before the change.
Yep. You had something, go ahead.
This is dated October 18th, from the mayor's office. Dear Ms. Wood, I wish to address the planning board on the matter of the housing committee as it relates to efforts to bring new housing into the city of Leominster. I appreciate your reading my letter into the record, since I am chairing the Leominster School Committee meeting at the same time as the planning board meeting. I tend to doubt that right now.
Doubt that right now.
As far back as 1969, when the state of Massachusetts enacted 40B legislation, legislation in an attempt to jumpstart housing development, communities have been constantly trying to adapt to changes put forth by the state government. For the past 30 years, Leominster has done well in working with the state and private sector to build affordable end-market rate housing while benefiting from grants for infrastructure surrounding each project. Old Mill Buildings on Adam Street, the former Carter Junior High Building, 142 Water Street, and 60 Summer Street have all been rehabbed as part of the effort, creating hundreds of new units. Most recently, the Journey Home Project in North Leominster was completed, which will allow affordable housing to help families get back on their feet. We have done equally well securing infrastructure funds matched with private economic development projects across the city. In 2013, the city of Leominster adopted new comprehensive zoning regulations after an extensive public process that examines every line of our zoning. In recent years, the state legislature and governors Baker and Healy have been pressured into dealing with a deepening housing crisis in our state. At least two housing bond bills have been passed recently that override local zoning. Those initiatives include the MBTA regulation, which mandated that cities and towns change local zoning to allow for additional housing near train stations or face the loss of millions in grant funds. Another enables property owners to build accessory dwelling units where they were once prohibited by local zoning. These are just two of the many state regulations the city must review and comply with. Last year, the, last year saw the release of a housing plan for the Commonwealth, a Home for Everyone report, which stated that the Commonwealth would need to create 220 units of housing between 2025 and 2035. In the Monarch's at Regional Own, the report called for 6,400 units. Given the new regulations from the state, and that housing creation is clearly a priority in Leominster, the city formed a housing committee. Everywhere I go, housing is the topic of conversation. The housing committee was formed to look at all issues surrounding housing, including the cost of building, new state regulations, and avenues the city would follow to create new housing. A cross-section of the community was asked to join the committee, and it was open for anyone to come to present ideas and concerns. In the end, it was the purpose of the housing committee to take all input and make recommendations to the Leominster City Council on matters involving the creation of housing. On August 31, 2023, the housing committee recommended that members of the city council of Leominster be invited to participate in the committee. On the September 11, 2023 council agenda, the mayor requested two members of the council serve. The meeting was postponed due to the flood. The request was brought up again on September 25, 2023. Only one councillor volunteered to be part of the committee. In February 2024, councillor Brandon Robbins requested to receive the agendas and minutes for the housing committee, but did not attend meetings, and it is unclear whether or not he shared these documents with the other members of the council. On August 28, 2024, the petition to amend the MU2 zoning was placed on the city council agenda. The decision whether or not to approve this change was and is solely under the jurisdiction of the city council. The housing committee, the planning board, and any recommendations requested from any city departments were just that, recommendations. It was the responsibility of the Leominster City Council to review and research this petition and make a decision that is in the best interest of the city. On January 13, 2025, the Leominster City Council voted to approve the MU2 change by an eight-one vote. Many accuse, many accusations have been made that the process to change MU2 took place under the cover of darkness. I offer the following. The housing committee met over one year with at least two members of the city council receiving the agendas and minutes. The MU2 petition first appeared on the city council agenda on October 28, 2024. The MU2 petition first appeared on the planning board agenda on 11/4/2024 for a recommendation to the city council only. On 11/25/2024, the city council established a hearing on December 9, 2024. On December 2, 2024, the planning board held a public hearing to make a recommendation to the city council. On December 9, 2024, the city council held a public hearing and continued the matter while waiting for the recommendation of the planning board. On December 16, 2024, the planning board recommended approval of the city council. On January 13, 2025, after the continued public hearing, the city council voted to approve the petition eight to one. On January 27, 2025, the city council voted again to approve the changes to the MU2 district under first reading of an ordinance. On, on February 10, 2025, the city council voted a third time to approve the changes to the MU2 district under second reading of an ordinance. Throughout the 2024, and throughout 2024 and 2025, our consultants and planning director Elizabeth Wood appeared before the city council regarding the MU2 petition, the MBTA, MBTA adoption petition, as well as other zoning related matters. Although they appeared many times before the city council, both Ms. Wood and the consultants made clear that they would take the time to answer any and all questions for as many meetings as it took. On January 13, 2025, the city council, the only body with the jurisdiction to change the zoning, approved the changes to MU2. Their vote was reaffirmed at the two subsequent meetings. To be clear, the housing committee was a group of people that came together to try to help with the lack of housing in Leominster. It is not a government body. It gathered ideas and suggestions and made recommendations to the government body making the decision, the Leominster City Council. Thank you for your time, sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Next letter dated October 17th from the Office of Grant Administrator. Dear Ms. Wood, I apologize for not being able to attend this meeting in person, but I have a longstanding commitment to appear on a panel hosted by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs in Worcester. I appreciate your reading my letter into the record. As you know, I have served as the city of Leominster's grant administrator for the past 18 years. I manage millions of dollars on behalf of the city, including the American Rescue Plan Funds, COVID Relief Funds, and grants for the city's 18 departments ranging from park renovations to paving, sewer, water upgrades. First and most important, I would like to address the accusation that grant funds were misused. The Mass Works grant requires a private match in the form of projects that promote economic development. In this case, the match was one building, the 234,000 square foot industrial warehouse building that is detailed throughout the grant. I have attached the pages of the grant, including the commitment page, which confirms this. Numerous people, including a city councillor, have stated that the 37,000 square foot building that appears on a potential site development map within the grant application has been replaced by housing, and therefore, the city misused the funds. I've attached the Sentinel article on this subject. I've explained multiple times that the only building that was part of the grant match is the 234,000 square foot building. The funds were not misused. Secondly, at several meetings on social, and on social media, accusations have been made that the city provided no documentation when requested. On August 25, 2025, I received an extensive Freedom of Information Act request regarding the Mass Works grant for the Orchard Hill Drive Extension Project. I complied with this request with 140 documents, including the full grant application. It took 21 hours to compile. After the request was complied with, the person who requested the information announced to the City, Leominster City Council on September 22 that no information had been received. This is simply untrue. The impact of grants on this city has allowed the city to use other funds to pay off our pension system, allowed us to be far ahead of other communities on infrastructure projects, allowed for the development of parks like Prospect Park and the new Skate Park, assisted with the purchase of thousands of acres open space, including the new Pierce Street Open Space Parcel, allowed for the addition of affordable and market rate housing in Old Mill Buildings, which would have otherwise been torn down, and are currently helping the city to repair 57 damaged city sites from the flood of September of 2023. For 18 years, my grants have been audited by the federal and state government, along with our own audit firm. I have no audit findings, I've had no audit findings, including on, including on the complex $20 million of American Rescue Funds just completed. On August 4, 2025, I appeared before the city council to discuss grants. I told the city, I told the members of the city council that I am proud that the city has a strong reputation for spending grant funds appropriately and efficiently. We have reached a point where agencies reach out to us and encourage us to apply because of the level of trust in our team. Issues are often and understandably driven by passion, but we will never know the impact of recent statements made on social media, at meetings, and now in the newspaper alleging grant misuse, all based on inaccurate information. I have given my life to the city through my time working for our members of Congress, our state senator, and now for the mayor as the city's grant administrator. I hope that moving forward, a more civil and factual discussion can take place involving our grant programs that have brought hundreds of millions of dollars to the city of Leominster. Thank you. Sincerely, Wendy Beeks, Grant Administrator. Finally, dated October 20, 2025, from the Law Office of Peter A. Campabasso. Dear members of the Leominster Planning Board, this letter is sent on behalf of MP Crowley Company, Inc., owner of Lot 1 Pioneer Drive Extension regarding new business item 5.1. Lot 1 is located in the MU2 district. MP Crowley requests that the planning board advise the Leominster City Council to leave the zoning ordinance as presently written and not amend the zoning bylaw pertaining to the Table of Uses or the Table of Dimensional Regulations for MU2 District as Petition 9-26 requests. The primary purpose of the MU2 district is to provide for the coordinated and mixed development of institutional, multifamily residential business and/or industrial uses. The city's Housing Committee made significant efforts to review the zoning bylaw to address the city's need for housing. The previous city council petition 15-25, which requested amendments to the zoning ordinance for the MU2 district, was the result of those efforts. The planning board did recommend, and the city council did adopt, the recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance for the MU2 district with the intent to promote residential development. Petition 9-26 is inconsistent with and is contrary to Petition 15-25, which was intended to address the city's need for housing. It is difficult to understand what amendments Petition 9-26 is requesting as it does not provide alternative use or dimensional regulations. It appears to simply request replacing the current dimensional regulations. While the petition may well be intended, it does not suggest what amendments would better address and serve the city's housing needs to petition, needs as Petition 15-22 did. MP Crowley respectfully asks the planning board to recommend the city council not to amend MU2 Table of Uses and dimensional regulations and keep the ordinance as currently drafted. Thank you very much. Very truly yours, Peter A. Campabasso.
Okay.
Then, did you want me to read the Director's Report?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, this is four pages, single space, just to set the tone. I know it's late. This Petition 9-26 is a request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the MU2 zoning district. You will recall, on December 16, 2024, the planning board voted 7-0 to recommend to City Council Petition 15-25, a petition to recommend a zoning amendment pertaining to the MU2 zoning district. The planning board is advisory only, with the city council having the final say on all zoning amendments. On February 10, 2025, during the second reading of the ordinance, the city council voted 7-1 to adopt Petition 15-25. I will provide the facts to the planning board at the, it was originally going to be on the October 20th, but it's tonight, so the board can make a recommendation for Petition 9-26. The current Petition 9-26 will undo the sentiment of Petition 15-25, which was put forth after a lengthy, well-researched public process and was vetted via three public bodies, the Housing Committee, the Planning Board, and the City Council. Before I get further, in all the effort that went into this prior petition, 15-25, I wish to outline why the MU2 zone was amended in the first place. Then I will outline the public process that was carried out. Next, I will inform you of what could happen if the most recent petition, 9-26, is passed. Here's the history. Dating back to 2012, the MU2 zone was allowed for mixed-use development, including multifamily housing. The purpose of the MU2 zones, starting in 2012, was described as follows. To provide for the coordinated and mixed development of institutional, multifamily residential business and/or industrial uses. Per the dimensional chart in 2012, the density requirements allowed for the construction of multifamily units to the density of one unit per 3,500 square feet of lot area by right. With a special permit, the density was increased to one unit per 2,500 square feet of lot area. As you can clearly see, multifamily development as a concept in MU2 zone is not a new idea. Fast forward to current times. A housing crisis was declared by the former governor Charlie Baker and reaffirmed by Governor Mara Healy. Leominster, along with the rest of the state, is facing this crisis. Severely affected are young people who grew up in Leominster and want to stay in Leominster after they move out of their parents' home. Also severely affected are seniors hoping to sell their current homes and downsizing. Every prospective home buyer in between is affected as there simply is a shortage of all varieties of housing. Prices are rising, and housing is becoming unaffordable as this shortage persists. Here's the public process. In order to address the local housing crisis, the administration for the city of Leominster tasked me, the Planning and Development Director, with forming a housing committee starting in August of 2023. In order to get a broader way of representation and opinions, a variety of people were invited to serve on the committee. I invited planning board members, city councillors, realtors, developers, city staff, and the mayor to join the committee to work towards solutions. The authority of the Housing Committee was advisory to the planning board, city council, and city administrators only. Early on, I applied for a district local technical assistant grant, a D L T A, to receive funds for a consultant to help the Housing Committee with its work. In April of 2024, we were awarded funds to be used to consult with Montezet Regional Planning Commission, MRPC, for services. The staff from MRPC, including Planning Director Karen Chapman and Principal Planner Joseph Boyle, guided the city on how to address the housing crisis. They assisted us with the state-mandated MBT zoning changes and also began work on creating other solutions as to create, how to create more housing in Leominster. The Housing Committee continued to meet and throw out ideas to the planning board and city council. A number of reforms came out of this, including allowing upper-story dwelling units by right in the BB district and a proposal to change dimensional requirements in the RB and RC zones. During the city council and planning board's review of the later proposal, it was made clear by policymakers that there was little support or enthusiasm to change the zoning in the city's residential districts in a manner that would meaningfully increase the potential for new housing growth. The message was further emphasized by a visit by the mayor to a committee meeting in which he indicated that pursuing reforms to allow more housing in business districts was a more viable path. In response, MRPC staff began investigating options for increasing the residential development potential of various business districts in the city. One of those first proposals before the Housing Committee was to facilitate residential development in the multi-use 2, MU2 zoning district by allowing residential uses by right, softening some internal dimensional requirements, and by eliminating the requirement for additional business development before the residential development could proceed. The MU2 district had originally created, what, to set aside an area of town for intensive development necessary to meet the city's needs. Initially, this included a vision of large-scale commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential. When this zoning was developed, Leominster was still enjoying the commercial building boom that made it the region's primary shopping center. In this pre-housing crisis area, the city acted protected district from being built out for its potential residential use by requiring that it be mostly used for business and industry, deliberately capping its residential potential. A sizable amount of big-box commercial development was built under this original zoning. By the 2020s, however, the city situation had changed. The demand for commercial space had significantly declined, owing to the growth of online shopping and working from home, while the housing shortage that first began in greater Boston has spread to the Montezet region. In the contemporary era, residential development has become a much higher priority for Leominster. The MRPC developed a number of strategies for promoting residential development in Leominster's commercial districts, including rezoning some commercial districts to business B in order to promote the redevelopment into mixed-use districts, redrawing the boundaries of some commercial districts to exclude existing homes so they would be conforming uses within residential districts, coordinating with owners to develop, development plans for declining regional retail areas, including residential development to revitalize them as walkable mixed-use neighborhoods, allowing residential development to proceed in the MU2 district. Of all of these reforms, redesigning the MU2 district to be a location where more intensive residential development is most likely to lead to significant number of units becoming available in the near future. Making these changes was deemed appropriate for a number of reasons. The city of Leominster had already set aside land for intensive development. New residential development is unlikely to have impacts on nearby areas that are greater than office or industrial plant uses envisioned under the pre-existing commercial industrial zoning. The district is geographically separated from existing residential neighborhoods. Its business development potential has been significantly eroded by the real estate market. Some key changes that were posed to the MU2 district by the Housing Committee's are as follows. One, delete the following. The multifamily housing component of the mixed-use project may not commence until the non-residential portion of the project is at least 60% complete, taking into consideration buildings previously constructed as part of a mixed-use project. Remove the requirement for special permit for increased density, multifamily housing developments. The density was also increased from 2,500 square feet per unit to 2,000 square feet per unit. There has been much consternation and opposition stating that the special permit requirement should not have been removed. This was deliberately removed as a way, a way to remove hurdles for developers wishing to do multifamily developments. It was not an error. The requirement for a site plan for developments, including producing four units or more, was also, was retained. With the site plan process, proposals are advertised on the planning board agenda, which is posted in City Hall and on the city website. Abutters are not notified during the site plan process, but open public meetings are held, and the developer is required to follow a strict, rigid site plan criteria. As stated earlier, a lengthy process was followed for the passage of the original petition 15-25. The mayor's office collated a timeframe of the approval process, which clearly shows all the parties involved. Petition 9-26. As you are aware, there is a current site plan development proposal for our 308 multifamily development at 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive. It also, is also scheduled for an open public hearing for tonight. And this application was originally submitted on March 31, 2025, after the passage and approval of Petition 15-25. With the introduction of Petition 9-26 to amend MU2 zoning, staff has sought a legal opinion as to what would happen to the site plan for 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive were to pass, and then Petition 9-26 were subsequently, were adopted by city council. On 9/8, 2025, Attorney Brian Riley advised the following. Once the site plan for the project is issued, a subsequent zoning change will not be applicable unless construction of the project does not commence within three years of the approval. Massachusetts courts have held that grandfathering protection applies as soon as a party has vested right of an approval. If the developer wishes to expand or alter the project in the future, a special permit would be required, and the applicant would need to demonstrate that the proposed alteration would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In the end, the previous approval of multifamily development in MU2 zone was a long process. We followed with all the city guidelines, and final approval was received from city council. The board and city council and the mayor put a lot of effort and hard work in enabling more housing to serve residents of Leominster. If at any point councillor members needed more information regarding the proposed petition 15-25, they could have requested that, and I would have been more than happy to research and provide answers. At the January 13, 2025 hearing, I was presented, I presented Petition 15-25. More information was not requested at the council, and the council voted 8-1 to approve the petition. I stand by the efforts and the process that were taken to initiate the passage of this petition. Any barriers to housing put into place after such as Petition 9-26 will be moot since the site plan application for 308, it's less now, units is already underway. It is not the best interest of the city to approve Petition 9-26 and to make a new approved housing development a legal, non-conforming use. I want to remind the board that we are merely making a recommendation to the city council. The city council makes all final decisions on amendments to the zoning ordinance. That's it.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a few comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, talking about grants for infrastructure, yes, the city has gotten a lot of grants for a variety of infrastructure projects. And the Mass Works, I'm glad that the grant administrator did bring up the Mass Works grant because that was a $2.1 million state grant to build the road to an industrial building that promised 300 jobs. Now, people will say, including the mayor and the grant administrator, well, that industrial building hasn't gone anywhere. It hasn't gone anywhere that we will still provide those jobs, that that grant, you know, paid for the road to get to. Well, that may be true, but the only thing that we, or I have seen on paper, is the 308-unit subdivision for rental apartments. So that grant was explicit and detailed that this was for industrial development. That rose for industrial development. I'm just going, and that's all I'll say about that. The, the MBTA, MBTA, right, you know, housing law. The city council did a lot of work on that. We had at least two huge meetings after the MRPC consultant, you know, had done some work on it, made recommendations, and the city council came up with a plan. The initial plan was all going to be in Ward 1. The initial plan was all going to be in Ward 1. The Ward 1 councillor, most people in the council said, you know, that's not going to work. We can't put, I don't know how many units, it was over 2,000 units, on Nashua Street near the M B T A station. They went back to the drawing board, the City Council, and came up with a plan that spread those M B T A units throughout the city, and the state approved that. So there's been a lot of work that the City Council has participated in that has expanded housing potentially for people in our community. I've read all of the Housing Committee meeting minutes. I have looked at the agendas, and I don't recall any kind of discussion about any detailed discussion about the M U two changes. They're not in the minutes. I wasn't at the meeting, so perhaps the conversations took place and they just not reflected in the minutes. I was at the January 13, 2025 public hearing on petition 15-25, and I have to, I encouraged people in prior meetings, and maybe you remember this, to please watch the January 13, 2025 City Council public hearing on that petition. There was no information. Councillor Tassi asked the Planning Director, well, about the roads, I think, in and out, and about the density, how much, what's the density? You couldn't, at the time, and again, please look at the meeting video, the Planning Director could not answer that question. What was the build-out, I think we asked about the build-out, there were a number of different questions that I asked. Why would the Planning Board give up a special permit for multi-housing or apartment development? To make it easy for the developer? I mean, and that removed, excuse me, that removed the requirement to notify abutters. You know, and posting things on the Planning Board Agenda or posting things online is very, very different than actual abutters getting notified that this is the proposal that is going in your backyard. So that was one, I thought, how, I was very surprised at that. I had a lot of other questions. Other councillors had questions, but at that public hearing, there was very little information. There was no detail. There were a lot of questions, and I didn't get any answers that satisfied me. I don't think other folks got any other, got other answers as well. And I think, I think, people, right, that's right, that's right.
Can I say something? Okay.
Can I just make my points, John? There, there's a lot, no, there, you know, there's, people conflate, you know, the M B T A housing requirement.
M B T A is not part of this.
No, no, it's not. But when we talk about, but again, you know, the Housing Committee was talking about M B T A zoning, they were talking about all other kinds of things, but this M U two, the M U two zoning changes had nothing to do with M B T A law. It had nothing to do with it. Didn't meet the requirements, it wasn't part of it, because that was already decided, that was already done. So I don't want anybody to be misled or misunderstand, you know, how that was. And then I think the grant administrator mentioned FOIA requests, and I'm not sure which one she's talking about, but I had asked a lot about the as-built plans for the road, because nobody has as-built plans for the road.
No.
How was it built? Was it built according to the specs in the grant? I have no idea. Nobody, nobody, not the D P W, not the mayor's office, nobody has the as-built plans. They don't exist.
Yeah, I can't answer that question.
Yeah.
The city, they gotta be in the city someplace.
They're not. I mean, they're not. I've asked, the mayor has said that they don't exist.
I don't know, I can't, I can't answer that question.
Right. So, you know, those are my comments. I may have other ones, and the vote was actually eight to one. I think you said seven to one, but it was eight to one.
Eight to one.
You guys have anything that you want to add?
No, I think you made the point.
Okay. I'll answer a couple of the questions that you came up with, okay? As far as what the build-out is, we don't know what the build-out, just like we have the petition, we have a quandary, okay, with the two new roads that just showed up, is they don't know, we don't know, because of the multi-mixed use, is it one apartment and three buildings, or two industrial buildings, or some commercial-industrial mix? So coming up with a build-out, just as we'd ask for a development impact statement, okay, is near to impossible.
Well, there.
I could say, yeah, there's going to be 1,000 apartments, or there could be, okay, or there could be, you know, 14 commercial stores. You know, I mean, it's in there. So making any statement to that extent would be inaccurate, because you just don't have the facts to do it. Now, you open up potential, and remember, we were, I was part of it, okay, went to some of the meetings, not all the meetings, and there was a lot of push from the state, okay, and this is the pressure that we're getting from the state to take and increase housing. So I think the, my, and I hate to say this, my assumption and my feeling, when I went to the meetings, was that we were acting in good faith to try to come up with housing that's required in the area and the state. Now, what is the right place? To some people, no place is the right place, okay? We've had one house, and people complain about it. So, I mean, that happens all the time. So I want to defend the committee, even though I wasn't there all the time, I was there sometimes, okay? They did things in good faith to try to get something done. Now, whether that information was given properly, they came to the planning board, we looked at it, and we had the same idea of the impetus was that the city, the state is in need of housing. How do we do this? Did I know that there could be 1,000? I didn't sit down and figure it out. I'll be honest with you, okay? I don't know that they could have 1,000 houses or apartments up there, because I was always looking at it as a mixed use, not as a, just a residential unit. So we look at that, but.
No, I understand.
The best information that we have from all the committees was given to the City Council. The City Council was given the information. They have the impetus to dig wherever, I don't know what their processes are, okay, but they made the final vote and went by that vote. And today, we have to stand by that vote.
Well, once the details of what that vote meant and what it means to that neighborhood and to people that I represent, it's completely different. That's why changing it back to the M U two that it was before is not terribly restrictive. Yes, you know, it's multifamily and apartments are not by right, they're by special planning, special permit of the Planning Board. What's wrong with that?
I beg to differ, it would be extremely extreme, because the way it's written today, okay, the potential of industrial development on that land is very, very, very low. Let me finish. In essence, because of that fact, it stops development on that land in its entirety because of that one section, and we realize that, because whether we like it or not, some people like it, Fort Devens and the development, most of the industrial development in central Massachusetts has gone to Devens. Little of it's gone anyplace else. So therefore, our potential, and this is what we were dealing with, our potential, okay, for development of that property was nil to none, whether it be housing commercially because of the requirement of there of the one-third. So we said, and being prudent, say, we want the land to be developed. Lemonster is land poor. One part of our, one-third of our city is open space. So us to grow, every piece of land that we have to develop, we look developed. So that's why some of the impetus was to open it up and to make the change, to get away from the industrial and go to the commercial and residential. Did not know, okay, and what's going to happen from there, I don't know.
Well.
But that was the reason for it.
Well, that make, I mean, there are still signs at that location, you know, I think that there's industrial land for sale. Maybe the city should have thought if there was no, no interest in industrial development, maybe the city shouldn't have taken a $2.1 million grant from the state to develop a road to an industrial development.
Well, I don't know. My guess is on that, that never came to the planning board, so I don't know about that one. But my understanding was that they had a letter of intent, and a company had interest in doing it for jobs, so that's what qualified for that position.
Absolutely.
That's what I would have told.
300 jobs.
Yeah. But because the project failed, and projects do fail, that, you know, that, and it opened up to all the problems, that wasn't, I don't, I don't believe they planned that.
Can you open up to the audience, please?
Yes, I'll open up the audience.
I'll be, I'll be real short. My name is Mary Ann Russell, 265 Harvest Street. I have some paperwork I'd like to pass in, but I don't know who to pass it in, to either the City Council or to the Planning Board.
The Planning Director's.
Yeah, Planning Board, okay. I'll give it to you in a moment. So I went to all my neighbors on Harvest Street, Ridgewood Drive, White Street, Main Street, Central Street, Prospect, the surrounding areas, yeah, wait a minute, Farm Hill Road, Sunrise Ave, and I even went downtown, and I got eight pages of signatures that we respectfully petition the opposed 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive. And I had just told the City Council a couple weeks ago.
Ma'am, we're not talking about that now.
No, no, wait a minute.
We're talking about.
No. I want to pass this in. So the traffic lights down there, I told the City Council that people coming out of Orchard Hill Park Drive, they're running the red lights. So it's very dangerous on Harvest Street now.
Ma'am, we're not talking about, that is done now.
Well, I just want to pass this in. I just want to pass this in.
Okay, to the ordinance that's before us to change. Do you have something to do with, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not, that's not my, the open meeting at that time.
Well, I want to pass it in.
Pass that in, that would be fine.
Dave Rollins, 49 Brayburn Circle, I'm going to make a quick announcement that you're all going to be happy with. This is my workout day, I was up at 4:30, I'm leaving after this, so you guys can be rested short.
I wish I could.
Yeah. So a couple of points. First of all, when I hear a question from the board to the councillors say, why'd you vote for it? Well, they voted for it in part because it was unanimous recommendation from the Planning Board, the experts in planning, right? You guys gave a unanimous, now, are you all supportive of 1,100 units on one side of the street and a subdivision on the other side of the street? That's another 300 or 400 units? That's the density we're talking about. So I think everybody can admit that nobody quite figured out that this thing was going to be this massive thing, number one. Number two, John, I think you're missing, mixing two different zonings. One was mixed-use, that started in the 2003 era, I was involved in understanding that. That was the 30-70 breakout, what that was, that's a whole different beast.
This goes back to that.
Well, no, this goes, this is M U two that came out of the zoning rewrite that was done in 2012. The, what you're talking about, the 37 mixture and all that was mixed-use, that was a separate set of rules, that was allowed on industrial land, the land remained industrial. And if you want to know the truth there, there was four uses, three of them, research, a factory, and an office park, and commercial. That was divine, designed by the guy Mullins from UMass. And if you took any two of those four, you could develop on mixed-use. Then, the company that developed Walmart, similar to what goes on here, modified the ordinance and added four more. And they added, we're confused about this commercial, so can we have a bank, a store, and a restaurant? And guess what? They never changed that you could pick any two. So the developer said, guess what? Now I can do a store and a restaurant under the guise of mixed-use, and I can build on industrial land. And nobody's going to build industrial when they can get the real money in commercial. That was what happened in mixed-use that abused that. Then came the city rewrite of the zoning. I know, I was the legal affairs chair that reviewed that document for months, hundreds of man-hours by the entire council. We went through it. Nobody here that I've talked to said they don't want apartments, that they don't believe in apartments. This is about size and scale. We knew, and the special permit was only for the high density. He had 12.2, 12.4 units per acre. That's about 223 units by right on this lot. Now, you could have put in a 100-foot buffer, but they modified that buffer, but you could have put in a 100-foot buffer. He probably would have had a unit, a complex in the range of 100 units by right with the old zoning. So nobody was, no, we don't want building or housing. There was an incentive to say, let's do something, but we also have to take into consideration the neighbors. Zoning is about quality growth, preserving the integrity of the neighbors, and about the quality of life in the city. And what happens when you give up a special permit for the high density, right, when you gave that up, then the neighbors have no more voice. It's all by right, and it's pretty much a done deal. You can, you can play around with a few things, but it's by right. And that's what happened in the big mistake. And what I say is, the developer, you, I would ask anybody, review all the meetings for the, for the Housing Committee. And there's this, this is this document, again, entitled, "M U two zoning suggestions from G. LaScotti, August 29, 2024." Find me anywhere in those minutes of those meetings where this document is referenced. It is not. It's not referenced in any meetings. It's only in the repository. I read all the minutes, and I said, nothing in there. And then I stumbled across this document on the list. And 13 days later, not a meeting was held, there was no Housing Committee meeting, this consultant hired by this body took those recommendations and put it into a letterhead and took the builder's name out of here. Now, if you're a City Councillor and a developer comes down and says, I want these zoning changes, that's a very different beast than if it's, than somebody from the Planning Board coming down and saying, I want these changes. Because a Planning Director and a Planning Board says, hey, I want to do what is the right motivation for me, protect the neighborhood's quality growth. What does a developer want? The maximum amount of cash that he can generate out of this place. And what happened was, that, that little maneuver there of taking that document and putting it on the letterhead and saying in this letter that we did this well-researched of M U two, and we came up with this, and it's exactly what the developer wanted. There's no research done. They basically went to the developer and said, what do you need to build the maximum that you can build in this place? He gave him his list, his wish list, and he got it all, or 99.9% of it. He got, you have to build out 60% of it of non-residential before you could do a residential. Gone. You have to build no more than one-third, 40 acres. Gone. Now he can build it. You'll never see industrial in there, never.
I agree.
And don't blame industrial on Devens. The reason these guys didn't do industrial, because they maximized their profit by playing with zoning. Initially, it was adding this down here so they could choose a restaurant, and that's how they bypassed the, and they got to sell it at commercial. Now they're doing the same game with residential, right? I can maximize, no more one-third. He got an extra 42 acres of residential by just wiping out that section that said, it's not needed anymore, right? You can go down to buffers, maximum 50 feet, bam, there used to be minimum 50 feet, now it's maximum. So we, so this is a total maximum build-out without consideration of the neighbors. I mean, let's be honest about what it is. It's not about, we don't want housing, but we just want smart, smart, intelligent. 223 units were allowed by right. That wasn't good enough. You realize that changing the by-right zoning from 12.4 units to 21.8, that's, that's the number of units, that's nine units, on one subdivision, that's 55 acres, you add 450 units to this project on one subdivision. Now, when, when the, watch the January 13 meeting, please, please watch that meeting. When the question was asked by the Ward Councillor, how many units does this add? That's not a question of whether you're going to build this or that, that's a density question. It's very simple, it's a math equation, right? The answer to that is not, I don't know, we could do a build-out study and all that, no. The density is, we're increasing it by nine units per acre times the number of acres in a site. So you just added 450 acres. That's the answer to the question, but they didn't get that answer, along with many others. And the fact that this didn't come through with a developer saying that he wanted it, it came through this, you know, preferred channel where he gives it to It came through this, you know, preferred channel where he gives it to somebody, somebody writes it up. Let's be honest, if you wanted an open process, a really open process, then why didn't the developer, why didn't the chairman of the Planning Board, why didn't the consultant that wrote the petition come down to the City Council when that petition was in there and try to explain it? Instead, they played this, they let this poor woman go down, and she was hammered with questions. And I felt sorry for her watching the January 13th meeting, because they, I knew what they did. They left her out there. Why didn't everybody come down? Why didn't the developer come down? Why didn't everybody come down and say, this is what we want to build, and this is what we need to build it? If you go to the minutes of the housing meeting, in September, in October, the housing of the minutes meetings talk about that this is real, it's big, and it's going to happen. And that was in October of 2024, yet nobody showed up on January 13th, 2025. That's what my question is.
Mr. Rollins, you, you're making some very great, some very good points. I'm wondering, is it, is it your, would it be your suggestion that we revert MU2 as it is, go exactly back to what it was? Or is it your suggestion, as you mentioned in, in your statement, smart growth, reasonable growth? Are we talking about, you know, more, putting back special permits?
I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is pass this petition.
Is there an in-between?
Yeah. Well, I, I think the first thing you have to do is set it back. If you get into, let's work out in between, it's going to go down a huge rat hole. Just set it back to what it was, and then have a serious discussion about where you want to go. And the reason I set it back, and now we can talk about what impact, if it's going to be a pre-existing, non-conforming down the road. I don't care. What I care as a citizen is if MU2 is left like it is today, anybody that owns MU1 throughout the city is going to say, I want MU2. In five and 10 years down the road, they're going to say, I want this thing. This is, this is as good as it gets, right? This is it. So even if you, even if it has no impact on this, I would still set it back, because it should not be a precedent in this city that you get 21.8 units per acre by right. That should not be allowed, period. The other point I want to say is, where have we come as a city? 20 years ago, we spent a bunch of money to buy the development right to Cholene Farm, and the justification for spending $4.5 million there was because a huge, single-family development was going to go there of 160 units. And that was a big deal, and we felt good about the city about buying that, preserving open space. Housing shortage didn't happen overnight. It came over time, in part because of the city's policy. We stopped a major development going there. Think about this, just the apple orchards of 70 acres. If you had the same density that you allow up at Orchard Hills, you'd have 1,400 units there. You wouldn't have a housing shortage in Lemonster. But we did the right thing as a city. We bought that, and we preserved that, and we've lost our way now because, in part because of that policy, we have a housing shortage, and who pays? The most congested part of the city, because we have savvy developers here with good lawyers that play the game. I mean, you can forget the impact, development impact statement, because the qualification that he put on here is it has to come during the definitive stage. That's seven months away. Forget it. He'll have this unit halfway up. These guys are huge builders. It's going to have no, it's going to have no impact seven months from now. Give us a development impact study. I've seen this over and over again. You wonder why I'm passionate. I lived it in 2003. I spent my life in 2012. We can do smart growth. We can undo the neighbors. We can do it all. And be on the same page and, and not be crazy and let, you don't let developers write zoning. You don't. It happened, New England Development wrote the mixed use originally, and now you have this one. And he wrote it. He gave it there. Go find the minutes. You won't find it anywhere. It's, but it's not right, because I'm telling you, ask any City Councilor, developer comes down and says, hey, this is what I want, it's a whole different ballgame. Because your motives for zoning are very different as a developer than it is as a planning director and somebody else. I apologize for being long. I believe in this stuff. I'm going to bed.
Do I have anyone else which is to speak?
Just checking a clock to see if it's still good evening or good morning. I just want to clarify, because we've heard, we've heard Housing Committee, Housing Committee, and Housing Committee. When it came to the City Council, there was no City Councilor that wanted to join that, that committee. We were talking about MBTA zoning at that point. That was going to be a main source of our, our job description and what we were going to do on that Housing Committee. Nobody was doing that. I was involved on the state with the Master Municipal Association, very concerned about how MBTA was being looked at in all the different communities. Some were rejecting it. Some were going along with it. I wanted to make sure that we had a say in what we were doing as a council. Nobody else joined. Nobody else responded. Because I was in real estate, because I was on this committee, I offered to be on that committee. My main goal was for the MBTA zoning. It got into more developers and more discussion, but I want to make it very clear that I was off of this committee. Nobody wants to say that. I say, so, I don't do social media, but I get enough emails from people and friends of mine that send it to me and say, you're being criticized, you're being talked about because you were part of this Housing Committee. I was not on that Housing Committee when MU2 zoning changed. I had no part of that. And I will tell you that the MRPC, and he's sitting here tonight, he was doing a lot of that Housing Committee. And Elizabeth can verify that. We had discussions about the City Council. I got a call from Joe Boyle, and that was the beginning of the end for me, saying that the City Council really didn't like the way the zoning was being put together for the MBTA. And I said, how do you know that? We haven't even seen it yet. He said, I was instructed by the Council President and the Legal Affairs Chair to start over again. And we're going to have a working committee of the Council President, the Legal Affairs Chair, and you. And I said, I'm going to tell you right now, that's not going to happen. I'm not going to be one of those three, because it was going to get me nowhere, and I wasn't interested in it. But the main point, and Elizabeth will know, I said I was not coming back to a meeting. Mr. Chairman, you know, because it came, the request came from you and the planning, as the Planning Board and the Director, to ask us to be on that committee. I told you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you, you remember, that I said I was resigning from the committee. I was no part of that. I want it very clear that I was off this committee when we're talking about the changes in MU2 zoning. That's important, and I want it stated that way in the minutes. And, and it should have been in the minutes. If the minutes were there, it would have been in there.
Okay, thank you. Do I have anyone else? It's getting late, folks.
I know.
Good evening, everybody. Joseph Boyle, MRPC again. I'm not going to take up a lot of time here, talking about the process, other than to say I reject wholeheartedly the implication that there was anything inappropriate about it. It followed the same process as the other zoning amendments, which went through this body and went through the City Council and were changed. Especially if you remember, the RB and RC zoning was significantly changed based on questions and feedback and multiple back-and-forths with the council. I will acknowledge, I was surprised that there wasn't similar back-and-forth on this one, but I follow orders. Getting to the substance of this, I only want to make one point. If the prior zoning allowed such potential for multifamily residential and for housing that, to the point that it didn't need to be changed in order to address the city's housing shortage, why hasn't there been any housing built? Why were there zero units built on this, in this location, under the old zoning? Because it was so open and attractive and helped the, to promote the, to achieve the city's housing needs? No. It was important to remove the special permit requirement for the same reason that the state removed the special permit requirements in the MBTA Act and from the ADUs. Because with that special permit requirement there, the neighbors can show up, they can make a lot of noise, and the board can cave to them, and the housing doesn't get built. The use of, the use of industrial zoning that is never going to be built out in a location where it is not zoned for in order to stop the development of housing is a very old practice among people who don't want to see housing built near them in suburban areas. The existing housing, the existing zoning, in terms of the requirements for, that there be all of this business built out before you're allowed to do residential, and in terms of the special permit requirement, had shut down housing development on this site for decades. During that same period that those decade, as that was happening, the demand for the commercial and the industrial, for commercial and industrial land in the city, so that plummeted. Between the resident, between the collapse of the retail market, the office market, and the industrial, there simply wasn't any of the industrial, any of the business coming in to build in that, which was being used to block the residential development.
Mr. Boyle, I, I appreciate that. And I'm trying to get to this particular zoning. Why, the question is, should the city, this, this board, okay, refer back to the petition I have before us? Okay, and that's, yes, you know, all of the information, we've gotten a lot of information, and I consider a lot of it has been superfluous, is that, should we take and, and make this change? And that's what I'm looking at information for. I realize that the, the zoning, part of the reason why is this going to happen today is because the road to nowhere is now there. Okay, and that opened up that backland, and that make, made it feasible. That's a simple answer, okay? That's all part of the zoning. The zoning was put together. The question I have before me tonight, okay, and to everybody, is do we take and recommend, make a recommendation to the City Council? Do we go back, we step backwards, or do we go ahead and leave the way that things are today? Simple as that. Can we move on?
Well, the City Council is going to do what the City Council is going to do, whether they have the votes or not. There's three of you here, not nine, so.
Okay, come on.
Liz Macarola, 75 Harvard Street. The, the MU2 zoning as it was, it offered a lot more safeguards and protections for responsible, thoughtful, and transparent growth than the current form. We've all been here for all of these meetings, trying to find ways to push back against what has really seemed to be an unreasonable development project. And what we've been hearing from your body over and over again is that your hands are tied, you only have so many tools. The MU2 zoning, the way it used to be, gave you more tools. It doesn't mean that developers didn't still have the ability to build. It meant that you had more discretion and more power to be, to facilitate a thoughtful and transparent process that dug deeper into these issues and responded more fully to residents' concerns. That's what we'd like back. The, this is really meaningful to residents, even if, and we know it won't impact the current development project at Orchard Hill Park. But even just the part about abutters being informed of the project. That's the transparency part that's really missing from the new MU2 zoning, and that must be restored. The resident abutters and these additional protections that they'd be afforded, these things are in place to preserve the integrity of the existing neighborhoods and the residents' quality of life. And these directly go hand-in-hand with your mission statement and what you seek to achieve. And as to the question about why is, are the City Councilors coming back now after they've already approved this? I would say that they've recognized a mistake was made, and they're stepping up to right a wrong. And I think that takes a lot of courage and a lot of integrity, and actually means that you should really look much more carefully at what they're saying than to be dismissive of it. Because it takes a lot to do that in a society right now. It is far easier to stay the course and say you've been consistent than it is to stand up and say, I made a mistake. It's on me, and now I want to fix it. So thank you to the three of you for coming tonight and doing this, and I really hope that you take what they have to say to heart.
Thank you.
Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street. Be super quick. This isn't, we kept hearing, it's about special permits. That's why housing didn't get built. It's because of this. It's because of that. It's not about density. It's not about special permits. The reason housing hasn't been built there in 20 years is because there was a requirement to complete industrial first. All this developer had to do was say, hey, take off, take off that. Housing is now our priority. Let's do housing first. And that would have solved everything. He would have still had by-right builds. He would have still had a lot of things. But instead, the egregious part of this is that, that wasn't enough. We need to increase the density to something we, I'm not sure, but pretty sure it doesn't exist in the city. With all this vacant land, it wasn't enough to have that 12-point-whatever by right and 17 with a special permit. You could have removed that one little section, and we would have still had housing. Right now, the easiest course of action is to reverse it back. And then if you want to amend that one small little section that says you don't need to do, you know, your industrial beforehand, you can still do your housing, but restore these special permits, because like, it's, it's a slap in the face. I just dumped my life savings to live into this, in this community. Everything I have to purchase a home and try to build roots here. And they're just coming in and doing whatever they want. You guys should have oversight. That's what you're here for. That's your purpose. Thank you.
Come on, please.
Hi, Carrie.
I have a problem. I got a member that's leaving, because he's going to travel, and I'm really. We got a vote. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I'll be brief. I have a long day tomorrow as well, myself. Carrie Nocer, 95 Smith Street. Speaking in favor of this petition, two quick things. One, what I don't hear about all of this building is how it's going to be affordable.
Ma'am, ma'am, that's not what we're talking about. Affordable is not, but we're talking about this petition now. I'm sorry.
And if I could finish, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. My point is, you're talking about why you shouldn't revert back to the initial way things were. Well, one is you're going to have this every single time, and I don't think it's beneficial to anyone. And two is because, just because we have more housing, doesn't mean that the people in Lemonster can afford to live in it. Thank you.
Good evening, and apologize, I know it's late, but I do want to go on the record. Chris Rainier from Gulston Stores, on behalf of Greg LaScotti and LaScotti Development Corporation. And we're here to speak in strong opposition to these proposed zoning amendments to the MU2 district. Mr. LaScotti, through affiliates, owns and has developed substantially all of the land in the MU2 district, and would be substantially and adversely affected by the proposed amendments. The amendments would reverse recent, well-planned zoning changes and are not needed to thoughtfully regulate development in the MU2 district. We urge the Planning Board to recommend the City Council that the proposed amendments not be approved. Director Woods' memo did an excellent job of summarizing the process to amend the MU2 district. It was also a good history lesson, talking about how development wasn't moving forward in this area for many years, including the approximately 20 years that Mr. LaScotti has owned land in the MU2 district. And this was because of that mixed-use requirement. People here tonight are talking a lot about, oh, we're just putting back a special permit requirement. No, it's putting back the mixed-use requirement, and that was a poison pill that was killing development. We know that more housing is needed in the Commonwealth and more housing is needed in Lemonster. This lack of development prompted the careful and collaborative planning effort that led to the Housing Committee recommending the zoning changes. And as Director Woods summarized, the Planning Board's 7-0 vote to recommend the earlier amendments, and the City Council's vote 8-1 to approve them. The proposed amendments are not good planning, seek to undo recent, well-planned and thoughtful zoning, and should not be recommended for approval. This would create, if, if approved, this would create a dangerous precedent for future redevelopment. How do other, future developers, commit significant amounts of time and money to invest in efforts to seek approvals to develop in the city that they think that zoning to seek approvals to develop in the city if they think that zoning can be reversed or changed so suddenly? Further, development in this area is regulated by site plan review, which this board will know is a rigorous review that involves peer review, that leads to project changes, and allows for comments from members of the public. Simply put, the proposed amendments would undo recent thoughtful zoning changes and are harmful to Lemonster. They would chill economic investment in the city and restrict urgently needed housing production. The proposed amendments are not needed. These existing zoning ordinance provides for a robust, thorough, and rigorous site plan review of development in the MU2 district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't agree.
Go ahead.
Spencer Holland, counsel for Wood Partners. I'm going to try my very best to be brief and only cover ground that has not been covered already on this topic. So, first, there are procedural and technical issues with this amendment. So, we've heard from the proponents of the amendment and from others about the importance of notice. Unlike for site plan approval, notice is a strict requirement for amendments to the zoning ordinance. As was discussed at the prior meeting, only two of the four pages of the amendment were publicly available for publication when the required notice was issued. Now, you may ask why that's a problem now. I think that the fact that the owner of property impacted by this amendment wrote that letter to the planning board, basically expressing his total confusion about what this amendment is doing, illustrates the importance of that notice requirement. That other owner, I think it was MG Crowley, to him, the amendment was completely incoherent, because frankly, without the second page, it is. It proposes striking one provision of the Table of Dimensional Regulations and replacing it with nothing. So, the notice requirements have not been satisfied, and when we're talking about an amendment to zoning that is going to drastically impact what one can do with a property, notice is really important. As a technical matter, the amendment begins by setting the requirement for apartment multifamily use in the MU2 district as, quote, "special permit and/or site plan approval with a footnote two." According to the amendment, footnote two states, see Section 2236, Table of Dimensional Regulations. That is incorrect. There is no footnote two in this section of the current version of the zoning ordinance, and the Table of Dimensional Regulations is found in a different section. So, again, I think this, again, illustrates the fact that this is a rushed 11th-hour reactionary attempt, not something that has been the result of careful deliberative processes, as we've heard about in Director Woods' report of what led to the current zoning provisions. I'm going to skip over a lot that counsel for the owner has covered about the harmful chilling effect on, you know, other investors in Lemonster, and we'll just say on that point, you know, the basic assumption that any project proponent can rely on a city or town honoring its zoning ordinance, it is the essential precondition to all development. If municipalities immediately reverse course whenever the voices in the room grow loud enough, that stifles development. Finally, I just want to, you know, point out that for Wood Partners, my client, since the current zoning was adopted, they have conscientiously pursued this project, again, a use allowed of right, a project that aligns with local and statewide priority on new quality housing, and they've done so in reliance on the current zoning. Now, we've heard from counsel for the board, and I would agree, that under the amendments to 40A, this project would be grandfathered in as pre-existing nonconforming. Again, we agree, but that state should not be subject to legal interpretation under a new amendment. It shouldn't be, you know, cast into question, it shouldn't be the, you know, the test case, you know, for, again, this new legislation. So, Wood Partners has invested time, money, has spent the better part of this last year pursuing this project. They've done so in reliance on the basic premise that when Lemonster adopted the zoning provision, it was going to apply it. So, I respectfully ask this board to stand for the integrity of that premise for the city's permitting process and oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. No, we can't do that. We've got to make a recommendation. Yeah. Yeah. Excuse me.
Yes?
Is it about this petition?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I disagree with what that gentleman just said, okay? And unfortunately, it is late, and I, and my thought fell right out of my head.
Sorry. Join me.
I apologize. You're off the hook.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say?
Okay, I'll close the hearing.
Well, I make a motion to close the.
Have a motion made. All in favor?
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Let's go to minutes. Call to order.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Sal Chaconi.
Here.
Caravatoreso.
Here.
Tom Kergen.
Here.
Jason Paray.
Here.
Dean Valier. John Souza.
Here. Minutes of previous meetings, September 15th, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Got 22 seconds, site watch. Minutes on that. You have a motion? Oh, you go there.
You want me to make the motion?
Just on the site watch.
Most do accept the minutes of the site watch.
Except the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Plant submitted, no business. Special permit application for 48 Main Street, map 241, Plaza 1, Scrap, and Old Recycling. What you wish, folks?
Elizabeth, were there any conditions?
The, I think the chairman said he wanted plantings.
Yeah, we'd requested abobities along the periphery of the, near the river.
And the police were asking for a right-hand-only turn.
That was taken care of already.
That was taken care of already.
Yep. So, I think that was the only condition we had. Abobities be planted on the, along the periphery.
Okay. I make a motion to.
Call for, call for, all in favor.
We need to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
With that condition?
With that condition for the abobities and plantings.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. City council petition, 3-26 Glen Eaton, Executive Director, Wanta Chooset Regional Planning Commission, request demand zoning ordinance to replace Article 15 accessory apartments to new Article 15 that complies with recently passed state law and make other changes to implement new ordinance. Plan to make a recommendation. I think our recommendation was to accept with revision A, or revision one?
Revision one.
Revision A.
One. Yeah.
The first one.
The first one, as initially submitted.
Yes.
Going to try to stand up for the city's split setbacks for accessory structures.
That's correct.
Yes, got you.
Okay.
What's wrong, Mr. Brady?
I just thought the hearing was closed. I never saw someone walk up when we deliberated. I've never seen that before.
What's that? Yeah. Thanks. What's the problem? Well, because the hearing's closed and the gentleman. Oh. I see your point, Mr. Brady, but I don't think he added any new information. He was just, he was just clarifying which amendment we were, which alternative we were using. So, okay, did someone make?
Okay, this is on the.
Tom, you make that motion? Second.
Motion, this is for the amendment with option A.
So, you're recommending to city council with option A?
That is correct.
Yes.
Any discussion on that? You're not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Site plan application, Archer Hill Park Drive, map 386, block 4, lot 1C, multifamily resident development. Do we have any conditions?
Yes.
No, we continue down.
Do we have any waivers?
No waivers.
There aren't any waivers, but I did summarize all of the possible conditions.
I will make a motion to approve the project with the following conditions. $150,000 to the city, as agreed upon. A fence around the perimeter of the abutting properties. Verification that the agreement with Lancaster was satisfied. Verification that the location of the bus stop was discussed and satisfied, and with all department head comments.
Have a motion made, do I have a second to that?
Is that everything?
Did you get, did you get everything on the list?
I don't think so.
I think so.
I think there were a few other items. There was something from health, there was something from.
Department.
You went the. Yeah, she did say that.
And then, yeah, and then still have to.
Geographical survey from conservation.
And conservation.
And the big question is, did you want the stormwater management to be re, another peer review on that?
No, I don't think so.
It's been reduced.
Well, that's up to conservation.
No, that's not, that's up to the board.
That's up to, that's up to.
We have, we have to collect more escrow money and we have to, so I need.
Never delay it again.
Well, I think it's just a condition of approval. It's not delaying it, and the hearing's closed.
No, it would be whatever comments were generated from the new peer review would be a condition.
Okay.
If you want that step to be taken. I need authorization to ask for more money.
So moved.
Okay.
Well, we have to do that after. Let's take care of this, this motion first, and then we'll, we'll have a second motion to, for the request for more money. So, the condition of approval. Can I have that list again?
$150,000 to the city. A fence around the perimeter of the abutting property. Verification that the agreement with Lancaster.
I think you want the fence around the, as was previously shown.
As was previously shown.
Yes.
But was it shown in the new buffer? Or is it behind the buffer?
It was outside of it. It was on the edge of the buffer.
As previously shown.
Is the fence going to be moved from where it was?
I don't know. Because they're making it.
30 feet of buffer?
As previously shown.
50.
As previously shown.
No, because it's got to be a 50, right?
No, that's all right.
It doesn't have to be moved. If they have a 50-foot buffer, they have a 50-foot buffer. They put the fence on the 50th foot or the 20th foot, what's the difference?
Yeah, I know, just.
Okay.
You know what I mean, though? I mean, it's going to go exactly where it was before.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
You have to put the fence at the perimeter for the buffer. You're going to be taking down the buffer.
By Mr. Brady's point, for the other gentleman coming up, it's the same, it's, the rules go the both ways.
You let him speak.
They've agreed to put a fence in the appropriate location that makes the most sense for the offense.
The testimony I heard from this young lady here was, the fence was now gone and they wanted it back. So, it's just going to go back to where it was proposed, is that?
No, but, no, because the buffer moved. So, it needs, it was at the edge of the buffer and the buffer just increased. You want, you still need it at the edge of the buffer. Otherwise, you're taking down the trees in the buffer to put in a fence, which defeats the purpose.
Justin?
You can put the fence wherever you want. It's a condition that you're going to impose. You want to put the fence at the edge of the buffer, if you want to put the fence in the middle of the buffer, if you want to put the fence on the lot line, I mean.
On the lot line.
No, I'm just being a little bit facetious. I'm just saying, it's your, it's your, it's your condition.
I recommend that the fence go where they propose it to go with approval from the planning director.
Okay.
Anybody can provide commentary to her prior to that. Verification that the agreement with Lancaster was satisfied, like I had said previously, verification that the location of a bus stop is agreed to and satisfied, and with all the department head comments.
Okay.
You said $150,000. Let's specify that $150,000 is earmarked for sidewalks. Right.
I think they're just providing it to the city and the city is going to have to make their own determination in regards to, we're not in a position to earmark that money for.
Well, I make the recommendation, that'd be for sidewalks.
Fair enough.
I agree.
Because otherwise, we got to put them down.
Okay.
Maybe they will, maybe they won't, but that's what we want.
Yeah, well.
Certainly the intention. Certainly the intention.
Those are your motions, right?
Wait.
Is that it?
Stormwater management.
Those are good.
After we.
For the peer review for the revised drainage. Condition of approval is Conservation Commission approval. Wire Department, as a condition of approval, is requesting the GPS fire preemption equipment and the performance of radio tests inside and outside the buildings for fire and police communications. And the Health Department, the pool will be required to be inspected, permitted yearly by the Board of Health, although the applicant acknowledges this and states he intends to coordinate with the Board of Health relative to annual pool permitting and inspection requirements, and the applicant has stated they are amenable to a condition of approval requiring the same. So, and I think that's everything.
Is that everything? Okay. I have that motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second. I'll call for roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Nay.
Caravatoreso.
Yes, yes.
Tom Kergen.
Yes.
Jason Paray.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
John Souza abstained.
Site plan application, 86 Archer Hill. I just did that. City council petition, 9-26 Susan Schaller, for Zephyr, Brandon Robbins, Council at Lodge Water, one, Council Robert M. Tossi, and 10 registered voters, request demand zoning ordinance, petition MU2 zoning, Plan Board make a recommendation to the council. What you wish?
I appreciate everything that was discussed tonight. If you want to say something first before I say anything?
Please, please.
I make a recommendation not to approve the change of amendment to the city council.
Okay, I have a recommendation not to recommend to the city council approval. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got to make it as a motion.
Right.
He's making a motion not to recommend.
Right. That's a motion made. I have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah. The city council is going to do what they're going to do. I propose an alternate, alternative motion to put it to the city council with no recommendation.
I said the same thing. I guess we can't do that.
We can't?
Can't do that.
We have done it.
We've done it, well, we've, I don't know, we've done, we did that for the other, the other project regarding the fairgrounds slash horse race and.
I don't like reverting it 100 percent. I don't, I don't like shutting them off.
I'd like to ask counsel.
Yeah, no, in effect, when that happened with the racetrack, it was as if you didn't vote, so it pushed the timing out. Does the statute, statute says you have to make a recommendation, one way or the other. Is there anybody enforcing that? Not really, but that's what the statute says you're supposed to do. If you don't, the effect really just becomes the timing. It pushes out so when the city council can vote.
I don't feel like we're in a position to pick apart MU2 tonight and, and offer it piecemeal. I don't think it's fair.
And you can continue that as well.
Well, we could, why don't we continue it if we think that we need more time to review it?
We could continue that.
Can we do that? Can we pick apart that?
Well, we could make, we could make recommendations. We can make recommendations, changes, if we want to have a meeting and make recommended, recommend changes to it.